Yeah, it's nine AM, so we're gonna go ahead and ready. So we're all ready to go. We'll go ahead and uh call our um September sixteenth twenty twenty border supervisors meeting. Uh our uh recommended budget hearings uh for twenty twenty and um as of today, we'll go ahead and open the meeting. As customary, are there any moments of silence today from the board? Okay, seeing none once again. Obviously, uh we just passed the uh um we did it yesterday, but uh we'll do it again today because the the Valley Fire obviously commands that type of um thing. Uh we just passed the tw- the fifth anniversary of September twelfth, the Valley Fire. And uh today we'll dedicate that moment of silence again to uh the Valley Fire. And the victims we lost in it. Okay, Supervisor Spatia, would you please leave us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Sure would. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go right into our number four item, our nine AM recommended budget hearings. And it potentially could be uh could roll over into tomorrow, uh continued into September twenty twenty if necessary. I did also just want to talk about some timing. I was thinking today, I know we had a request from Supervisor Crandall to take a lunch from one to two. Um and I'd like to be able to accommodate that, you know, for him. There's a meeting with that he'd like to go to, so uh if we could, if we could uh take our lunch from one to two o'clock today, um that's uh kind of the calendar we'd be on. So I just wanted to make that announcement at the beginning here.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Simon.
Okay.
There's a meeting with the Congressman Garimandi with the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. It's the only day we can get with him and uh would hate to miss it. We're talking about the Lake Pillsbury Scott Dam situation, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, would you consider a suggestion that was a slight alternative to that?
I Oh yeah, go ahead.
Hope to reach you this morning, but I just wanted to propose a slight alternative. Would you consider making the lunch break from twelve thirty to two? And the reason I ask this um is first, it would enable Supervisor Crandall to also have a meal break instead of just a meeting with the Congressman. And it would also give um yourself and staff an opportunity to review the agenda for next Tuesday, which we were not able to do yesterday because the meeting was a long one yesterday. So would that be something you would want to consider?
Uh y- yes, that that seems like a good proposal. Obviously, that will um push some things most likely, but uh yeah, I am fine with that. Yeah, I think that works out well. Because this could be a
Yeah, it's this, we ha- we have to expect this to be a full day, so.
Okay.
Um, thank you.
All right. All right, so our first item of business obviously is to get right into our budget here. I want to thank admin and all the staff for bringing this forward and working so hard on a yearly basis. But we're gonna go to our uh timed item, which is nine AM recommended budget meeting. So Carol, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're all uh excited to be here. I'm speaking for the administrative office, but there are also a large number of um your department heads and key staff. I see that we have thirty seven participants in the room here with us. That must be a record for budget hearings, don't you all think?
Absolutely.
We're glad to have everybody here. Um and so what we're going to start with, as we usually do, are just uh some introductory remarks, some updates on our finances, the outlook for the coming year. And then we'll turn it over and begin a long string of the hundred and eighty or so budget units we have uh with our department heads and their key fiscal staff according to the schedule that was attached to your agenda packet. We'll follow that schedule uh for the most part, although there may be a an occasional exception depending on other things the department heads have going. Uh we're trying to be flexible with everybody and get them in here at times that that work best for everybody. So presented today for the consideration of your board is the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one final recommend budget. And um and it would be an understatement to say that the COVID nineteen pandemic uh has made the budget preparation process this year quite unusual. It has been completely unusual. In late March, your board approved staff's recommendation to make changes to the budget hearing cycle. And in the process of doing that, we flipped the more extended budget hearing process that for the last couple of years we have done in June. Uh we flipped it to now, September instead, simply because we were in the throes of the pandemic in June. It just wouldn't have been possible to uh to support that effort and to have all the information we have today to really make this process complete. Um, we have also reported to you several times since then in May and and again in June on the the financial impacts resulting from the COVID crisis. And during the course of these hearings, we'll update you on all those areas of concern as well as we go through the course of the next day plus. Uh since the COVID, since since those briefings in May and again in June, we have begun receiving the Federal CARES Act funding and also the state realignment backfill funding. Um that has alleviated some of the concerns we reported to your board. Um you, your board also ratified the certification I was required to send in to the state to begin receiving both of those funding sources. And as you know, the realignment backfill funding uh will enable critical law enforcement and social services programs to remain in place. Um the the realignment funding is a is a source that was impacted by statewide uh the statewide drop in sales tax collection. So the state uh backfilled it for the losses the county would have incurred had they not. And the CARES Act funding will help us with our disaster response costs. And as you know, we're also setting some funding aside to help uh local businesses with weather the impacts of the disaster. At the time your board contemplated the recommended budget back in June, you considered imposing ten percent cuts to county uh general fund departments. This was in anticipation of the negative impacts uh resulting from the pandemic to county finance. And absent the CARES Act fund and the realignment backfill, we would certainly be facing dire financial circumstances with likely reductions in staffing and the many services the public relies upon. And although we weren't uh forced to take it to that level, out of an abundance of caution, general fund departments have been held, for the most part, to the same net county cost in fiscal year twenty twenty one as they received in twenty nineteen twenty. And we'll be explaining that to you as we go along the way. Uh as I said earlier, all of the uh revenues to watch is what we called them uh back in May and June when we reported to you are going to be updated as we go through this day. Um probably one of the most important things to note is the work your board has done over the last few months to form the Economic Development Task Force, which will begin meeting very soon. Uh admittedly, the arrival of the LNU wildfire, complex wildfire, has impacted staff's ability to get that started. But we are literally on the verge of launching that. Is the it's the intention, at least at the start, for that group to meet every two weeks as it begins to prepare to address its mission. As we go through the course of the day, the administrative office is gonna take kind of a tag team approach. You'll be hearing from a number of us. Um you'll hear from Stephen Carter, Susan uh Parker, Patrick Sullivan, and Michelle Scully. Um in the introductory remarks, it'll primarily be Stephen and I. And then later on, when we go through our budgets, uh you'll hear from all of those folks. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Stephen. He's going to give you uh some overview information about the budget at large. Go ahead, Stephen.
Good morning, Board. Stephen Carter, Deputy CAO. So to kick off the county budget overview, which is part of the fiscal impact narrative, fiscal year twenty twenty one final recommended budget for all county funds totaled two hundred and ninety-two million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and three dollars, which is a very large number. Um that's compared to fiscal year nineteen twenty adopted, which was two hundred and fifty-eight million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-four. That's a difference of thirty-four million dollars, one thirty-four million, twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine. Um, as you can see from the governmental funds section, a little over two million is in general fund. Um, quite a bit of it is in special revenue funds. And that increase can be attributed to certain departments because we're talking about the appropriations. So roads increased their appropriations by a little over four million. Um disaster response recovery increased their overall appropriations by just over seven million. Um building and safety also increased theirs by about one point four million. And a few other departments are within the million dollar range. And then the increase for capital project funds, which went from almost ten million to fourteen million, is almost all attributed to the CBG capital projects. And that increase was just barely under four million dollars. That's for um the cop water project, which we passed through to cop water. Um the special districts and other agencies increase can be attributed to Water Shed Protection District, which is just over eight million dollars extra year over year, and Lakosan Southeast Regional System, which is just over a million. So now foc- listing on general fund, um total appropriations for twenty twenty one are sixty-three million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine, which represents an increase of one million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen, or about two point seven seven percent compared to fiscal year nineteen twenties adopted and mid-year combined, which later on I'm I'm gonna talk about the numbers where mid-year is not included, so we can tell you, so I can tell you exactly what's been increased. So going to that, um the increase over the past three fiscal years compared to fiscal year eight, nine budget, which if you if you look at it, has been pretty significant since seventeen eighteen. It was fifty-six million and now it's sixty-three million. That's a pretty good increase, but you also have to take into consideration that the CPI, um Consumer Price Index, has actually increased by thirty-four point eight nine percent in that um since eight, nine. So we are still far under our buying power of eight, nine. So I'll go ahead and then explain the difference in the general fund appropriations. I switched the numbers over to um the difference between nineteen twenty adopted and twenty twenty one final recommended. The difference is two little, two million, four hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-five. The reason why that has changed from the the prior number is the prior number had the mid-year included, which mid-year generally increases it. That can generally be attributed to planning. The Planning Division Budget Unit twenty-seven oh two, which has increased by almost one point six million. But the thing you have to pay attention to as well is a hundred thousand of it is general fund discretionary revenues. Everything else is covered by other revenues, so not general fund money. Geo-medical services, so the medical services that is a major contract for the jail, were increasing the budget by two hundred and eighty thousand, and that's due to an actual increase in the contract amount. And then the Sheriff Coroner, Budget Unit twenty-two oh one, their appropriations have gone up by six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-four, of which only two hundred thousand is actually general fund discretionary revenue. And the reason why the extra discretionary revenue was given, um proposed to be given to the sheriff is that covers the BOs approved eighty-twenty um insurance coverage for the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association that was approved by your board. And the final difference comes in with Public Works Budget Unit nineteen oh three in their admin, which there's zero general fund discretionary revenue in that budget unit. The change there is they, the department had um combined budget units, so took some staff from other budget units who brought it into nineteen oh three, brought them from other non-general fund departments in. So it's not really a massive six hundred thousand dollar increase overall in the budget. It's just a reallocation of where it's located. And as noted on page one, the county cost for um fiscal year twenty twenty one was fixed at nineteen twenty levels with only a couple adjustments, and those ones are the ones I stated right above. So all the departments are actually doing business by reducing staffing, maintaining salaries, and absorbing the additional cost of merit increases and promotions, which are normally um part of their net county cost increase year over year. So moving on to the general fund discretionary revenue, the largest pot of money in the discretionary revenue would be property taxes. Property taxes have still not quite reached the point of eight, nine before we had the big crash. Um we're estimating twenty twenty one property tax to come in around twenty-four million, um hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Last year, we received twenty-four million, eight hundred and eighty thousand. And the reason for the decrease mostly is because there were um supplementals that were larger than normal, which are at hit and miss, whether you receive them or not. So like Calpine was sold, so there's the transfer fee. That was about four to five hundred thousand dollars alone. And something like that happens very rarely in our county, so didn't include those revenues. Um and then under the governor's, so there's some possible effects to our property tax revenue. Under the Governor's Executive Order N sixty-one dash twenty, um which is in response to the pandemic, penalties and other charges for delinquent property tax payments are suspended through May twenty 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 one. So that leaves a gap on our possible receiving the revenues from our property tax. The teeter fund that we have does guarantee the the money will be given to the tax entities, but we also fund the teeter. So there's a possible gap in funding there, which is why um sorry, um we know we're, I'm gonna get to where um and under the general reserves that we're gonna request the Audit Controller be given the authority to temporarily utilize a portion of the general reserve to manage the resulting cash flow um impacts, which may or may not occur depending on payments of property taxes. Moving on to sales tax, I actually have some updated numbers on this since the memo was written. Um, sales tax revenues received for the period of July and August twenty twenty one actually equaled one million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and four cents. And the reason why that's a larger number than I had at the memo, time of the memo, is the Prop one twenty-two, the August amount hasn't hadn't been received at that point in time. So if you combine those two and you compare them to fiscal year nineteen twenties, July and August, to give you an apples to apples review, nineteen twenty, we received one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars during that time period. So in twenty twenty one, we've already received twenty-six point five percent more sales tax than we did at this point. Oh, hang on, someone's calling me, sorry. Sorry about that. So we've already received in the first two months, twenty-six percent, twenty-six point five percent more than previously, the previous year. So we're still on watching this very closely because it's volatile. That could be just a blip, but we'll we'll continue watching watching it probably for the next few years to be safe because that is our second largest discretionary revenue source. And then moving on to the transient occupancy occupancy tax um or TOT. For the first couple of months of the year, revenues have totaled a little over sixty-six thousand dollars, which is is pretty small. But fiscal year twenty twenty one in comparison, we had only received seventy-three thousand. So it's a decrease of ten point three percent, which is a large percentage. But nineteen twenty, we received over six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which was over a hundred thousand more than we expected because of the activities um that have gone into going after certain rentals to pay their TOT taxes. And like sales tax, the TOT revenue is a source that will require continuous monitoring for impacts resulting from the COVID nineteen. Um and then moving on to cannabis tax, I'm sure we're gonna go into this a lot more when we go over Budget Unit ten seventy-two. Patrick Sullivan Sullivan will be the tax administrator will be going over it. But cannabis cultivation and resulting tax collection has picked up considerably during fiscal year twenty twenty one. And that's mainly due to the planning divisions approving an in- an increased volume of early activation permits. While it's likely that most of these early activation permits will be ultimately granted a permit and creating a reoccurring annual tax bill, at this time only twenty percent, less than twenty percent of the square footage, which is how we bill or for the taxes, has actually attained that status. So there's still in flux on until they have actually fully acquired their permits. Um, tax bills will continue to be generated as cultivation sites are approved or modified. Approximately three point one million, wh- which has been collected at this time so far in fiscal year twenty twenty one, which is a large increase over fiscal year nineteen twenty, where the entire year we only received four hundred and eighty-six thousand. So this is only the first installment. Patrick will go over where that number has actually changed since the memo as well. So the second installment for fiscal year twenty twenty one is due December thirtieth. During these hearings, your board will consider the proposal of the interim Community Development Director to create a unit of staff dedicated to cannabis cultivation for permitting and code enforcement. At least initially cannabis tax will be relied upon to front load the costs because permits do eventually fund and cover them, but you have to create the permits to bring in the revenue. And I'll let Scott talk about that later. And um Steph also proposes the use of cannabis tax to cover the cost of a dedicated code enforcement officer position. And as your board approved before, um in recent months, your board approved the Cannabis Tax Internal Grant Program, CAN Grants, providing departments the opportunity to apply for a hundred thousand, up to a hundred thousand dollars of cannabis tax revenue with the priority given to proposals that support law enforcement, environmental protection, water quality resources, and youth programs relating to drug and alcohol use. We we did um include these within the final budget. And the table below on page four four breaks out what they are. So behavioral health for street outreach services requested a hundred thousand, and they state that it'll be self-sustaining after its initial funding. Um, health services wanted the eight thousand dollars for substance-free baby and childhood. Um, public services asked for Lucerne Harbor dredging to increase it by a hundred thousand. Where we currently had only two hundred and fifty thousand, so that increases the overall to three hundred and fifty thousand for that project. And then the library also asked for drugs and alcohol educational community resources for people to check out. And county council requested fifteen thousand for cannabis reviews, which has increased their load in the her office. And then moving on to geothermal royalties, um this isn't always at odds on whether it's gonna the funding source is gonna come through or not. It is not known to me that it it, we should receive it this year like usual. Um, it generally comes about when there's a change in leadership in in the White House. Um, the royalties provided, there's a state and a federal piece of the royalties. The state support funds are projects that have to be directly related packs of geothermal development and water quality initiatives. And the royalties provided by the federal government um do not have the same restrictions, so they support the general fund. There's a large pe- piece going to parks maintenance and preservation, and then positions in community development for like a resource planner um and things like that. And then moving on to structurally balanced, this year we are in fiscal year twenty twenty one structurally balanced, which basically means we have ongoing revenues that cover our ongoing expenses. Now, if you looked at our, the budget, it actually shows that we're relying on fund balance carryover or fund balance available to cover some expenses that are above. Um, so we don't have the exact revenue to expenses. What those are is the F B, the fund balance available is one-time money, and it's going towards one-time expenses. So if you remove the one-time expenses, we would balance structurally. And then moving on to the reserves and contingencies, our contingencies, um in fiscal year nineteen twenty, we restored them from previous level to previous levels, uh which totals four million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty. There was a number of years before that where it was one million or lower, which is not a very good practice. That helps with cash flow, or if there's any un- unanticipated situations that the board has to come up with funding, this would be a source. And then general reserves, last year, the general reserves were increased to nine million from seven million. The balance is approximately fourteen point one six percent of the total recommended general fund appropriations. So in if if the worst case happened, the general reserves can be called upon and cover the county for approximately two to three months, um which is a goo- a good amount. And then as noted on page three, property tax subsequent to Governor Netton, I think I already actually said that, signing of the executive order N sixty-one dash twenty, we're requesting a resolution to authorize the Audit Controller um for the board to grant her authority to cancel up to five million in reserves to cover any disaster-related expenses, which would be part of the pandemic as well, which is related to the property taxes and teeter possible um impacts. And then moving on to capital assets, this year we we do have quite a few, quite a few capital assets. The total capital assets that I have for this year is fifty-six million, five hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight. A few of the larger capital assets reside in roads, which you would expect for bridges and and road repairs of li- little under twelve million, five hundred thousand. And then in water resources, Middle Creek Restoration Grant of fifteen million. And we also have the courthouse and jail phased two roof replacements. That was in there last year. We're moving forward to where they both should be underway this year. But we have two million set aside for that. And now the the South Main Water Project. So that one has two point eight million in it. Um, and Jail Tower Control Remodel is one million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy. This year, um part of the F fund balance available, the one-time money, we're requesting to move four hundred, about four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars there so that we can actually complete the project that's been going on for quite a while. Um, then next up is the county workforce, and I'll turn it over to Carol.
Thank you, Stephen. So as your board well knows, our challenges associated with the attraction and retention of qualified employees persist. It's it's still continuing to impact virtually all county departments. The countywide vacancy rate continues to average over twenty percent. We lose key staff to neighboring jurisdictions offering higher wages. Um, the HR Director, Pam Samak, pulled some very rough data for me on what our turnover is looking like at this point on a countywide basis. And here are the figures for twenty twenty thus far, or at least this is dated uh September tenth approximately. By that date, we, in twenty twenty, we had hired a hundred and twenty new hires, eighty-five percent. Excuse me, eighty-five of those were full-time employees, thirty-five were extra help employees. So out of those a hundred and twenty, um not necessarily So out of those a hundred and twenty, not necessarily the same individuals, but in that same time period, we have I had a hundred and five terminations. So the net really is only about fifteen employees there. That is kind of a sobering statistic. Last year, for all of twenty nineteen, we hired two hundred and thirty seven new people. Our turnover rate wasn't quite that bad last year. We lost a hundred and sixty seven full time employees and forty eight extra help employees. So when you say termination, it's not always for a bad reason. Many times it's, it's for a great reason, such as a long career ending in a well deserved retirement. But, but we're still having a, just a tremendous amount of turn turnover and churning in our employment ranks. As you know, in light of the totally unprecedented pandemic, the twenty nineteen class and compensation study had to be put on pause so we could take time to assess the financial impacts of the pandemic. And during this time, our labor representatives have indicated their understanding that we are truly in extraordinary times. And they've been patient with us. That is greatly appreciated. Subject to your board's direction, we look forward to the resumption of labor negotiations very soon. In countywide, the final recommended budget provides for a total permanent workforce of a thousand and twenty point two five, so a thousand twenty and a quarter full time equivalents, which is a net increase of four point five compared to this time last year. Oh, excuse me, compared to June, when we brought you the recommended budget. The additions or changes are point seven five F T E full time equivalent accountant auditor one, two. A supervise, a full time accountant auditor supervising in auditor controller's office. Half, a half time position victim advocate one, two. One full time civil unit coordinator and one full time deputy sheriff and sheriff coroner, coroner, excuse me. Also one full time deputy sheriff sergeant in marine patrol and one full time heavy equipment and fleet maintenance lead worker. Those are the changes. In the general fund, permanent positions are funded with general fund discretionary revenues. There are a total of three hundred seventy one point five allocated. That is a net increase of twelve and a half positions over the recommended budget you considered in June. And it is mostly the result of moving the seven positions from the building and safety budget unit twenty six oh three code enforcement and adding four cannabis related positions to, to planning, as you will hear about later. So if you go to page seven of your overview memo, you will see where those positions and changes shake down in the various departments. In lieu of our hiring, we have, we have an informal hiring freeze in place. And under that, I am continuing to review the requests of departments to fill positions before we take steps to fill them. As you recall, at the time of recommended budget, given the uncertainty of our funding from, as a result of the pandemic, the decision was made that we would broaden that informal hiring freeze from just general fund departments, as has been in place for many years, to include all departments. The level of review ensures that positions covered do indeed have a long term reliable funding source. And we're processing those very expeditiously, trying to make that happen quickly for departments because we're keenly aware of their critical staffing needs. And certainly a huge demand on, on our budget for the future. And in fact, it's been impacting us over the last couple of years as well, is the rising minimum wage. And so you'll see the chart there at the bottom of page seven that illustrates what the minimum wage impact means for us. It's, it's going up a dollar each January. And what that has happened, what, what that has caused is it's impacted the low end of our salary scale because many of our positions, the salaries have been surpassed by minimum wage. And so you'll see what happened in, in January first of this year. Excuse me, what's coming in January. So it's, it's going up an hour each time. And then we gave you a, a dollar each time. We gave you an example of how this is impacting the office assistant class, which is one of our lower paid classes. Step three of the office assistant classification pays thirteen dollars and nine cents an hour. So you can see that minimum wage will quickly surpass that. And that is not the entry level wage for office assistant. Steps one and two were long surpassed by minimum wage. So to keep pace with minimum wage, the salary for that position would be, need to be raised by seven percent in January twenty twenty one. And, and basically another seven percent the following year. So those minimum wage impacts are affecting everything. And, and if we're not able to address it on a broader scale, it impacts the compaction of our salaries because with minimum wage creeping up on the low end of the salary scale, pretty soon the entry level employees are making as much as their supervisors are almost as much. So Stephen, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, the next item would be CalPERS and how it's affecting us. I put on a chart here, the actuarial percentage for both the was the the U A L, the unfunded liability as well as our normal cost. So the, the actuarial for seventeen eighteen was fifteen point five, six, seven percent of.
I think Stephen has frozen.
Uh, it looks like he's having some internet issue.
Related to.
I see the.
Can you go back about thirty seconds? You froze.
I froze?
You did.
Uh, about two seconds.
Thirty seconds. Just go back to the beginning of.
So seventeen. Was.
And he broke again. Okay, so it appears he was dropped entirely.
So he's, he's still here, he's muted. Stephen, I recommend turning your video off for the time being. Uh, let me.
Let's unmute him also.
Yeah. It looks like he disconnected again.
Stephen, do you have audio?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
All right, I'll, I'll try again.
Yeah.
I'm gonna switch gears here in a minute. So CalPERS, there's an actuarial version of the percentage they estimate that would have to charge. And then what the county has actually charged and the difference comes from the unfunded liability is a lump sum. And we have to cover that no matter what. So we go off of our estimated payroll and make sure that we charge a large enough percentage to cover that amount. If you notice from seventeen eighteen to twenty twenty one, there's actually a six and a half percent increase in CalPERS, which is a large increase. Fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, it's estimated that we're going to start going down finally and start leveling off. Now, with that in mind, the pandemic has also affected the the market. So the CalPERS preliminary net return on investments for the twelve month period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty was only four point seven percent when the actual required assumed return was seven percent. And the difference will be reflected on our June thirtieth, twenty twenty actuarial evaluation. This needs to be made up by entities like ours. And that means that our rates are going to be slightly increased starting in two years due to the effect of this. And we cover it over a twenty year period. So starting in two years, instead of it being twenty five point six, it might be twenty five point seven or twenty five point eight percent for CalPERS. And on that note, I'm gonna switch it over to Carol since I'm having technical difficulties for closing remarks.
Okay, thank you very much, Stephen. So we will wrap up this portion of the presentation and get ready to start going through department budgets one by one. Of course, we'd love to hear your board's questions and comments about this portion before we shift gears and do that. But now is the time that we have to extend our gratitude to all of your county department heads and their key staff. They are truly an extraordinary group. They keep coming through for us again and again, even in the wake of more than one disaster at a time. Despite all of the severe limitations and compounding disasters, they are just extraordinary. They stand up over and over again. So thanks to each and every one of you for your dedication, your flexibility, the level of cooperation you demonstrate to us. Clearly, we wouldn't be here doing this today without you. And then I also have to extend some very heartfelt thanks to the staff in the administrative office, especially to Stephen Carter, who we refer to as our budget offer officer because he truly is. He, he is the driving force behind all of what you have here today. And the other person that works very quietly behind the scenes and gets a heck of a lot of work done is Sarah Schukert. I want to make sure your board is aware of what a vital role Sarah plays in all of this too. So thanks to both Sarah, Stephen, all department heads and key finance staff. So that completes our presentation.
Thank you, Carol. I know early on I was having some difficulty unmuting myself and supervisor Sabatier, I thought that I saw you had raised your hand at one point. I don't know if you could go back to that thought that you had, but I just wanted to ask.
I, I appreciate that and I did have a question and believe it or not, I decided to just write it down and wait. Because I figured we were gonna get to this question answer portion. I, I do have some questions. There was a mention of a twenty seven eighteen earlier on. And maybe Carol, I might be putting you on the spot since Stephen's not back yet. This was during his conversation. He mentioned that in eighteen nineteen, there was some backfill of, of property taxes or sixteen seventeen. I'm sorry, that was a asterisk. But I thought we were getting six hundred and sixty six thousand dollars a year as of last year for also a new backfill. And that we would be getting that for up to three years. Are we still getting that as well?
No, that ended a couple of years ago.
Okay.
We got property tax backfill for several years from the valley fire, but not recently.
Okay, I was mistaken.
I am back, by the way.
Go ahead, Stephen. You, you, I'm sure you can answer that precisely.
So the reason why there's an asterisk, that was a large backfill of over a mil, I don't remember exactly the amount, but it was over a million dollars. And you are correct, we just, Kathy Sederlin, the auditor controller, just submitted the last request for the three year backfill. But the general fund's only going to see about two hundred ninety three thousand of it. She claimed about six hundred thousand, so it's a much lower amount. It doesn't affect it the same.
Okay, okay. I'm glad I was partially right at least and not just making stuff up, but appreciate that. Then you mentioned for the cannabis that last year we collected four hundred and eighty six thousand and that doesn't make sense to me. Was that for the first bill to compare it to the three million or was that for the entire year of, of taxes collected?
For nineteen twenty that, I'm looking at it right now.
And the reason I say that is the year before we did less, not more, but yet we have one point, approximately one point two, one point five million dollars. And that four eighty six makes no sense. If it's.
There's multiple years worth of tax that haven't been used.
Yeah, but it's for, we've been getting more and more and more. So I was just curious to see, because I thought it was more around the eight hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand mark for the entire nineteen twenty season that we received taxes on and just the forty six just kind of stood out as a number that doesn't make sense.
Okay, so I'm in our accounting system right now for account ten dash ninety five, which is other taxes cannabis within fund oh six four budget unit ten seventy two. And for nineteen twenty, total received four eighty six, one ninety three, twenty seven. And, but if you go to the prior year, which was eighteen nineteen, it was five hundred and twenty six thousand, sixty, and sixty seven dollars and forty one cents. And then the year before that, which was seventeen eighteen, was two hundred and sixty seven thousand, five hundred and ninety three oh four. So if you add all those together, that's what we have available now because we haven't really tapped into the tax from those three fiscal years.
So we made less in nineteen twenty than eighteen nineteen. That's, that's, that's very curious to me as far as I, I guess I'll have to go look again and see what was approved and what was not approved because that, that doesn't make sense that we walked backwards on the number of acreage that paid taxes. Because it would seem to me that we were, have been moving forward the whole time, but I'll have to look further into that. Also, I just wanted to talk real quick about the county workforce. And I know there, there's, there's no fault in the way that it's described. But the way that it's described in this document, I just want to make sure the public is aware that we're making a comparison from the original budget that was brought to us in June twenty, for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget. And the difference between then and now, not the difference between last year and this year. And I think it, it's important to always know the difference between last year and this year as well, not just the updates on the budget itself. Because we didn't really go through it with a fine tooth comb in June in comparison to what we're doing right now. And so just wanted to make sure that people realize that that twelve point five increase is correct only for the difference between June and now. There's been more of an increase of staffing due to some of the approvals made by the board to add more and change things throughout the fiscal year between July first of twenty twenty and, or twenty nineteen and June thirtieth of twenty twenty. I just wanted to make that statement. And also for the CalPERS, just a quick question, the percentages, are those both an impact to the employer as well as the employee? Or are we looking at the impact solely to the employer?
For CalPERS employer.
Does it impact the employee's paycheck at all and what they're putting in?
No.
Okay, that's important. Thank you.
And I want to go back to one of your previous questions about cannabis and the funding going down. So our tax administrator, Patrick, is reminding me that that change was heavily due to the change in billing cycle on cannabis where we used to pay, um, charge in advance. And now we charge in the rears. So there was a gap period and fiscal year nineteen twenty is part of that gap period.
Gotcha. Okay, I appreciate the answer.
And I have a feeling he's going to go into that more when you talk about budget unit ten seventy two.
Thank you very much.
Hey. All right, Carol, thank you very much for that opening presentation on the, on the budget here. And I think we're ready to continue moving forward.
Okay, no other questions at this point?
I don't see any.
Then we'll get started with our schedule. So I want to thank everybody for showing up and department heads and staff. If you are going to leave and come back at the time of your budget, I will try to, those of you that are coming up fairly soon, please stay. But if you are ways down the list, we will try to foresee when your time might be coming and I'll send you a text. Pay attention to your phone for a text. So with that, Stephen, let's go ahead and get started. Let's introduce budget unit six one three one.
Okay.
I see that we have Carmen here and I believe Shawna is here as well. We can have them turn on audio and video if they have it.
Okay, first up is U C C Cooperative Extension Budget Unit six one three one found on page E two eighty six. And the total appropriations requested for fiscal year twenty twenty one equal two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eleven. And I'll turn it over to Carmen.
Hi, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for having us here today to present our budget to you. I am here today to represent the UC Cooperative Extension Department. We are a little unique department and I think our department showcases the collaborative partnership between UC, which is University of California and Lake County. Our department houses several programs for the. Our department houses several programs for the community, most notably the 4H Youth Development Program and also the Master Governor Program. These are two important outreach programs for our community, and we do a lot of direct education, work with many volunteers, and also collaborate with various community partners within and across counties. We are definitely adapting to the changing times now, so using a lot of things like distance learning and are constantly involved in efforts to ensure that we are serving our clientele. Besides that, we also work directly with others in, for example, like the agriculture industry. So our retired homology advisor, Rachel Elkins, is currently working on a callback so she can continue to serve the clientele of farmers and growers. Our livestock and natural resources advisor, John Harper, does work on sheep research. And we also have our forestry advisor, Michael Jones, who works with various community partners related to wildland fire safety and fire recovery in Lake County. I work with the 4H program, and I work with various partners to serve youth and families, including after-school providers and colleagues throughout California and from other states to continue to provide the best service in youth programming and pursuing extramural funds for our program. We also recently had some retirements in our department, but we are already in the process. We have the process in place to keep them filled. We are currently just waiting on UC's processing timeline. Our office manager, Shawna, who's also present on the call, and our 4H staff assistant helps a lot with the day-to-day operations of our office. They are basically the face of our office, and they keep it running with the support to like logistical and financial accounting operations. So with that, that is kind of a brief summary of our department and what we do. I like to think that we're small but mighty. And then our office manager, Shawna, like I say, is also present on this call to help answer any questions that the department has. So, thank you.
The one thing we should add to this one, Mr. Chair, because there is a net, there is a county cost, county general fund contribution to this budget. Like your general fund budgets, this budget has a net county cost, which is the same as it was last fiscal year. So the 213,511 is exactly the amount contributed last year by the general fund.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much for that report, and thank you for trying to stay within the same budget that you had last year. I did have a concern, though, and I don't see that you receive specifically the revenue. So I'm guessing this just, again, goes right to our general fund, and we go ahead and fund this. Don't you provide assistance for 4H, or does 4H receive their funding separately?
Do you mean for the 4H program staff position?
No, for the youth animal care 4H program? Or maybe that's not the right definition of it?
Shawna, do you have, because Shawna is more familiar with the budget, and she probably is more familiar with the questions. So Shawna, if you're on the line. So I don't know, she's, I mean, I see her here, but she's not here.
One thing I can weigh in on that a little bit, maybe it'll answer the question. The 4H program itself is actually mostly voluntary. There is a position at UC Cooperative Extension that is funded through this budget. But the program itself, and, you know, the uniforms are paid for by the kids and their parents. And there's actually a store there, or there has been, up at the Cooperative Extension office up there, where people can bring in used, slightly-used uniforms, and kids can come in and pick those up. So it's not a, the portion of it that actually directly involves the kids and their animals, their projects, is not, it's not funded. There's no funding necessary other than what parents put in themselves.
Right, right, right. And that's why they get some of them.
And I guess maybe I can also explain a little bit. So like, for example, the, so I have 4H responsibilities also. And that is kind of, I guess, the UC's portion of the 4H funding is me. And then, like Rob said, we do have a lot of volunteers. And the funds that the county provides does help with some of the 4H programming, primarily for the 4H programming and then master programming, master governor programming as well.
Okay. And the reason I bring it up is because at our RCRC meeting about two or three months ago, the funding for, that helps support 4H, which is probably just for the staffing in the counties to provide the organizing of it, it was kind of stranded in the state. They were battling whether or not to allow the funds to come out. And I just wanted to kind of check in if those funds ever were received because I think it's a great program, and I want to make sure that at least the coordinating of it through the UC extension is being fulfilled and that we got those funds.
Yeah, so there is some, so UC did have some budgetary problems, and there were some financial cuts. But we have processes in place to work through some of that. So for example, like we have our UC 4H Foundation, and we've been working with them. One of the things that actually we got this year was we were a part of like a rural county initiative. So we were one of those, and they provide like matching funds. And so we were able to come up with the amount, and they matched that amount. So we were successful in that. And then a couple of other things that we do is also, we get external grants and extramural fundings to cover up for some of those cuts that were made.
Okay, well, I'm happy to hear that at this moment in time, it's where it should be. I just want to make sure that this is one of those programs that continues. So thank you very much.
So I want to add to that because, Bruno, I really appreciate that, that you're watching out for that because this is not the first year that this has come up. It's always one of those things where, you know, it's, it could be on the chopping block on tough budget years because, you know, my suspicion is, you know, kids don't vote, so they're not, they're lower on the list than some of the other projects. It's always put back in there. But I, you know, as, as a, you know, somebody who's been actively involved in 4H for decades, I hope the board continues to watch this every year and make sure that either the funding isn't taken out or the state advocate for that, or find a way to fund it. Because it's, it benefits hundreds of kids in our, in our county. And it would be, it would be really disastrous to pull it out of there for the benefit that we receive from it, so.
I see it as our best workforce program we have in the county.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and complete support, you know, got to experience the last couple of years. And 4H program here in Lake County is just strong, and it is building the next leaders throughout the state as far as I'm concerned in our county. So, yeah, funding this program and making sure it continues should always be a focus of the Board of Supervisors for our youth. And I completely agree. Any other, any other questions at this point? Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, we just had two people at Upper Lake that there was a post about them getting a diploma for, and being involved in 4H. So I understand how important it is as well. I just also wanted to highlight that on your top bullet for the accomplishments in 2019 and 20, I noticed Mike Jones, Michael Jones, we experience, we have meetings with the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, and he's usually there and provides a lot of input for us. So I just wanted to highlight how this group contributes to that committee as well.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions at this, at this point for Carmen? All right, I think the way we're going to move forward then is we're going to go ahead and prove each budget unit as we go through them. So what I'd like to do now, if there's no more questions on this budget unit, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public for public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board for action. So Jake, I don't see any hands up on this item, but go ahead and open up the room and see if we have any public comment.
Okay, I will open up the floor here. I've sent out a unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and close the room. I will bring it back to the chambers. I don't think we have anybody in there, but I will confirm. Thank you very much, Supervisor Sabatier. But we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action. So this is how we're going to move through today so we have the opportunity for public to give their input, if they're here. So bring it back to the board. Carmen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank Carmen as well, and I move to approve Budget Unit 6131 for the UC Cooperative Extension.
Is there a second? Thank you, Supervisor Scott. Johanna, if you could do the poll vote?
Yes, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carmen, thank you much.
Yes, I wanted to extend thanks to Carmen and Shawna, too. They just do a fabulous job over there. We're grateful to you. And so,
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, as we transition to the next set and give our Behavioral Health Department an opportunity to click on their video, I just wanted to note that as we introduce these budget units on their narrative forms, you'll see something a little bit different from prior years. This is a department that participated in the economic development workshops your board have had. So as you will see on their department overview form, we have essentially pasted in the economic development project descriptions and needs that they communicated with you during those workshops. So you'll see that replicated for all departments that were key participants in that process because economic development is such a high priority. So Stephen, if you would go ahead and introduce?
Okay, next up is Mental Health, Budget Unit 4014, found on Page E236. And it'll be presented by the department head, Todd Metcalf. The overall appropriations being requested this fiscal year are $15,370,207. All right.
Thank you, Todd. Hello, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the Director of the Behavioral Services Department. As Stephen said, our budget information is found beginning on Page E326. We have three budget units, one for mental health, which is 4014, and then two other units for substance use disorder services, or as it says in your handout or in the booklet, alcohol and other drug services, 4015 and 4018. So I'd like to start with our mental health budget unit 4014 and our accomplishments this last fiscal year. As outlined in the department overview, we were able to utilize a $200,000 homeless mentally ill grant to help with construction costs at the Hope Center, the soon-to-open transitional housing facility in the city of Clear Lake. These monies were originally intended for outreach and referrals for individuals experiencing homelessness. But since we really don't or didn't have a permanent homeless facility in Lake County, I was able to convince the state that this was the best use of the funds. So I'm excited that those monies are going to a project that is going to help address housing and homelessness in our county. A couple of unanticipated expenses that hit us last year were the installation of alarm systems in our clinics in Lucerne in the city of Clear Lake. And it was long overdue. Those alarms should have been installed. When I came on board, I was kind of surprised that we didn't have an alarm system. And I don't know if many of you know or not know that we did have a couple of break-ins and some confidential breaches of information. It's all been reported to the state. But the alarm systems were in response to addressing those issues. And so that was, those were a couple of unbudgeted items. In addition to getting the generator set up in our Clear Lake Clinic, which is great now. We can, we can maintain operations during a power outage. And also, the roof repair and installation in our Clear Lake Clinic went a little over what we had originally anticipated. So we took a bit of a hit around those. But good news is our Clear Lake Clinic roof doesn't leak anymore. So that's a good thing. The No Place Like Home Permanent Supportive Housing Project is slowly moving forward. We applied for and were awarded a grant to supplement our existing Mental Health Services Act housing monies to construct a permanent supportive housing complex that will support our folks that are experiencing mental illness. So we received a grant, it's $558,000, in addition to the almost $1 million of Mental Health Services Act housing funds. And so we sent out a request for proposals. We had a sole bidder, Rural Community Housing Development Corporation. So they have been awarded the project. And so I'm working with the CAO's office. Thank you, Susan Parker. We're going to start working on putting together resolution to get this, get this project moving forward. Because it's, again, it's a key component to the homeless and housing issues we're dealing with in our community. We also opened our Family Peer Support Center, Middletown. This was based upon stakeholder feedback from Mental Health Services Act meetings. And I know you guys heard our presentation yesterday around the activities and programs in MHSA. And this is a result of that, that the community identified a need for behavioral services to have a presence in South Lake County. And so we successfully opened, and then, of course, COVID-19 hit, and we had to close, but we reopen again. So it's exciting for us to be down in the south part of the county and providing mental health services as needed. We were also just recently awarded a four-year, $2 million early psychosis intervention plus program grant. It's designed to support early identification and treatment of serious mental health conditions. As you've heard me say here and there, you know, studies have shown that early intervention leads to much better long-term positive outcomes for individuals experiencing mental illness. And I, I kind of want to brag about this because we submitted this late last fiscal year and were awarded, only one of five counties in the state were awarded this grant. So I'm excited to get this going. And again, it's a four-year project. So you'll probably be hearing me talk more about this as we move it forward. And we also continue to work with law enforcement to transform community response to behavioral health needs. So moving on to Budget Units 4015 and 4018, these are our substance use disorder services and programs. We had a successful opioid summit a couple of months ago, and I want to thank Supervisor Scott and Supervisor Simon for being active participants in that summit. It was a great success. I got a lot of positive feedback from it. There were a lot of other organizations involved, but we were honored to have both supervisors be guest speakers in the summit. And so I just kind of wanted to give you guys a shout out for that, and it was a great success. Our substance use disorder programs are currently partnering with Hope Rising to utilize the services of an AmeriCorps volunteer, a VISTA volunteer, that stands for Volunteers in Service to America, to help us navigate the state organized service delivery waiver that will allow not only our department, but our partner organizations to be able to bill for additional substance use disorder services. So we're still, I mean, I talked about this a couple of years ago. It's kind of been a moving target, this organized service delivery waiver. And, but it's time for us to get serious about it. And so this VISTA volunteer is going to help us put this together for our community. I also need to mention something about the Activities of the Housing Continue of Care, which really kind of touches both or all budget units in our department. I put in the department overview that we had received approximately $700,000 worth of grants in the last fiscal year, and my math wasn't right. We've actually received a little more than $2 million worth of grant funding through the Housing Continue of Care for our county. Carol mentioned earlier something about the CARES Act funding. We are also hoping to receive almost $700,000 through the CARES Act that will be coming through the Housing Continue of Care. And once those funds are received, we'll be putting out a request for proposals to do something with that. And again, that's around housing and homelessness. So it's exciting. I also want to mention that the COC helped extend funding for the COVID-19 homeless shelter. Um, I also want to mention that, um, the COC helped extend funding, uh, for the COVID-19 homeless shelter. Um, I do want to say that the, the, the COC now has a very robust board. Um, and we are in the process of implementing, um, a homeless management information system. It's a database, uh, that will allow the Continue of Care to apply for funds that, um, we, um, were never able to apply for before. Um, apparently the Housing Continue of Care never had a system like this in place. And so we're missing out, um, on funding opportunities, uh, that can come through, uh, the COC to the county. So I'm excited that that's, um, that that's, it's, it's gonna be a huge benefit to us, um, in order to bring more money into the county and address the housing and homelessness, um, in our community. Um, I'm sure, uh, I'm one of the earlier presenters, but I'm sure you're gonna hear this, uh, throughout. I mean, the overarching theme here, um, is the effect of COVID-19 on our clients, um, and our programs and services. With, with that said, um, I can say that COVID-19, um, has helped us, uh, successfully transition, um, to a more telehealth service, um, oriented program, um, than in-person visits. I mean, we, we continue to also have staff members, uh, working remotely, um, and it's, it's successful. And, and we are, we're coming up with some best practices around, um, electronic form signing, um, and processing. I, I also want to mention that the transition to telehealth services for our Substance Use Disorder Programs, um, in, in particular the DUI program, um, is a big deal because the state of California, uh, didn't allow this. When this first started, they were demanding and mandating that we provided these services in person. And, um, now they've allowed us to provide these services via telehealth or telephone. Um, and so it, it, there is some process improvement, um, we're, we're finding around, um, the effects of COVID-19. We, uh, we continue to offer, um, in-house training in, in all of our programs and services to staff, uh, within the department. Um, these trainings include topics such as, uh, motivational interviewing, suicide prevention, uh, how to deal with the perinatal population and homelessness. Um, requests for training in the department have been a recurring theme ever since I've been with the department. Um, when we do exit interviews and folks, um, when folks leave the department. It's, it's an issue, um, that's, that's ongoing that, that we really need to get serious about addressing. Um, in, 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 you know, and this speaks to our department's, uh, workforce development plan, um, where we, we truly strive to grow our own, um, and are working to create, uh, career path tracks for staff to move up and around the department. Um, and you've heard me say before, I mean, we're, we're planning to, to turn our department into a, a, a training ground for folks that really want to, um, to, that, that want a career, um, in, in the behavioral services field. So we're, we're continuing to work on that. Um, as Stephen, uh, mentioned, uh, we applied for and received a hundred thousand dollar cannabis grant. Um, this is to establish street outreach services for unhoused individuals, um, that may have mental health and substance use disorders. So, um, we were excited about that. In, in summary, um, you know, our goals and objectives for this upcoming fiscal year now, um, mostly in light of COVID-19, are, are pretty much, um, fiscally focused, which I've been pretty much ever since I've, I've, I've taken on this role. Um, you saw in yesterday's Mental Health Services Act presentation, um, the trend of, of, of where funding is going, uh, for departments such as ours. Um, this, uh, this current fiscal year, um, it's kind of static, status quo. Next fiscal year kind of looks okay, but it, it really looks like things, um, are gonna bottom out, um, in fiscal year 2223. So, you know, we're, we're preparing for that. Um, we're still continuing to deal with, um, you know, uh, recruitments from the state, from past fiscal reporting. Um, we're in the middle of a, of, of an appeal right now with the state. We're on a lengthy phone call, um, with the state on Monday. Um, we're facing a six hundred thousand dollar, uh, recruitment from the state, um, again, based on, on cost reports from the past. And, um, in, in my zeal to get caught up in these cost reports, I hadn't, I hadn't anticipated that maybe some of these reports were erroneous. Um, and, 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 and what, what's difficult about this is as we go through this, is that the staff that prepared and, and, and put these things together, um, are no longer with the department. And so we're trying to piece things together, um, in our justification to, to argue, um, with the state to say, well, these, these are legitimate, uh, billable services, uh, on these reports. So good news kind of is, um, at least we're halfway through this latest six thousand dollar appeal. Um, we've actually managed to explain away about three hundred thousand dollars worth of it. So, um, that's good, um, but we're still in the middle of this. And, and Chrissy, um, you're here in the meeting. I didn't know if you wanted to speak anymore about that. Um, because we did, um, at, towards the end of last fiscal year, we had a couple of, a couple of other, um, uh, state recruitments, recruitments, recruitments. See, I'm thinking workforce retention, recruitment, recruitments, um, that, again, were unanticipated hits, uh, to our budget. So Chrissy, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything about it. You don't have to. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but, um-
Alright. So, last year we had about a million, a million dollars recouped from the state due to cost report settlements and audits. And like Todd said, with our appeal that we did, um, on Monday, we were able to get about three hundred of that. Um, on Monday, this state is, um, they're meeting to hopefully get the A87 allocations recouped back for us. Um, this CMS came down and audited the state and said that they weren't directing their admin costs and indirect costs the appropriate way. So, um, now they're coming at the counties and all the counties have teamed up to go back at the state and tell them, this isn't fair. We've been doing it this way for twenty years. Um, and these cost reports are from 1112. So, um, we were able, like you said, able to get three hundred thousand. We're hoping to get at least another two hundred thousand back from them. Um, the 1213 cost report, they're looking at recouping another six hundred thousand from us. Um, and again, with, uh, next week's meeting that the state and the counties are having, they're hoping that that will be, um, reversed back to us as well. So, um, as long as we keep pushing the state out and not accepting their final audit reports, they won't take that money from us until we finish our appeal process with them.
Thank you Chrissy. Um, I'm glad you pointed out that, I mean, we're not the only county. We're not the only, uh, behavioral health department that's going through this. So, um, it's, um, it's challenging, but we're, you know, we're nimble and we're, we're, we're working around it. So, of course I'll keep you apprised, um, a- as we move forward through this fiscal year. Um, as Carol articulated earlier, um, wages and salaries, uh, do continue to be an issue for us. Uh, the staff leaves us, you know, for similar positions, not only in county, but out of county, um, that pay higher, uh, salaries than we do. I, I am anxious, uh, for the Classification and Conversation Committee to resume, um, so we can address this issue. But it is, um, it, it, it's still a problem for us. Um, I also still plan to convene an ad hoc committee, um, this fiscal year to, um, to talk about, as I've said before, bringing our folks back home. Um, I, I want to invite the, the hospitals, um, health and social services departments, um, and any of their interested parties, um, to discuss the potential for the development of a, of a, of a board and care, um, psychiatric health facility or, or some kind of crisis residential facility in our county. Um, as I said, you've, you've heard me talk about this over and over again. But, um, you know, this speaks to, um, economic development in our county. And, and, you know, I've, I've, I've run some rough figures. Uh, we spend annually almost two million dollars a year, um, in, in, in sending folks out of county because we don't have facilities and services here, um, uh, to serve them. Um, and that two million dollars also doesn't include the, the cost of travel time for staff to go visit, um, these folks because we are mandated to do so. So I, I'm, I'm serious about this and, and I don't expect to have a solution, um, soon. Um, this is probably a three to five-year plan, but I want to start discussions. I have folks interested in wanting to be a part of these discussions. And so, um, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna move forward with that, uh, this year. Lastly, um, again, in light of COVID-19, we're finding that we really need to, um, increase, uh, media exposure to educate the community on what it is we can and cannot do. Uh, we need to make our website more user-friendly. I mean, it's, it's pretty good the way it is now, but it needs to be much more user-friendly, um, and interactive because, you know, we're, we're referring folks, um, to online resources. And, you know, I don't see this, this pandemic going away anytime soon. And it's definitely the direction we have to go, um, and somehow support, um, our folks that, that, that need the services. Um, but a lot of it is still gonna have to be done remotely, um, and online. Um, and with that, you know, I just, I do want to thank all the behavioral services staff, um, in, in doing the work that they're doing. Um, I believe we're doing a lot of good in the community. Um, and, and, uh, as everyone has said, these are unprecedented times. So it's, it's time to take a look at things differently, um, and think outside the box. And how, how can we use th- this pandemic to our advantage? And as I mentioned earlier, um, we are coming up with some, some better or best practices out of this and streamlining, uh, some processes that weren't very streamlined before. So, um, with that, I, 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 I thank you Board of Supervisors and the CAO Staff Office, um, for allowing me to speak about this. And, um, I, if there are any questions, have at it.
Alright Todd, thank you very much for the presentation. Go ahead and turn it over to, uh, uh, the board, um, for questions or comments at this point on, uh, this budget unit. We have any? Su- Supervisor Scott, then I'll go to you Supervisor Brown. Go ahead Supervisor Scott.
I don't have any questions for Todd, but I just would like to thank him. I, I've spent a lot of time working with him on the different committees that I have, and I just appreciative of all his hard work and his staff's hard work. And, and mostly, um, the COC. I don't think we, we realize as a county how much money has been left that we haven't, we haven't been able to receive because we did not have a working COC. Um, it has taken about three years to really put that together to be able to accept this money. And we're gonna see some great things and some amazing projects that are gonna come out of, of this money. It's, it's not little money as Todd is saying. It's millions of dollars that's going to be coming into this community to help the most vulnerable. And Todd is doing an amazing job trying to figure out, um, what he can do with that to, to help. So I just want to thank Todd, um, for all that hard work. And I was really excited to see the street outreach program. And, um, I'm really hoping that we do approve that. Um, and I think that's gonna do great work, um, with some of the things we were talking about yesterday with helping the police out. If we can have our street outreach, go out and, and assist these people instead of, um, having the police, that'll be a win-win for all of us. So just thank you Todd and, and your group of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor Scott. Um, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, thank you for that presentation, Director Metcalf. Um, I see a lot of energy decreases and travel decreases. Are tho- are those because of COVID-19 and the utilization of, uh, technology now to do the visits with, uh, uh, your clients and to, uh, uh, not necessarily be in the office? Is that, uh, the case?
A- absolutely. And Chrissy, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it, yeah, that, that's, I mean, that's a positive outcome from this.
Right. And, and I lo- I love the positives that you're actually getting more, uh, visits done with your clients, which means you have more billable, uh, uh, bills that you can send out to the state for reimbursement. When before you would sit in an office waiting for, um, a visit that would never come. And so now you paid for somebody for an hour's worth of work that didn't really do much for, uh, helping out a client. Uh, so I think that we got, we, we have some very positive stories specifically from your department for what's been happening. Because of COVID-19, it's forced us to look at things differently and maybe continue them in a different way in the future. Uh, for instance, the DUI online. Who would have thought that doing something online for people who have a revoked license would be a better way to go? I mean, it just seems logical back then. For some reason, it just took us COVID-19 to finally do the right thing. Um, so I mean, it's things like that. Uh, I, I do have a, a question for the budget as far as you have an increase in staff. It looks like you went from eighty-three point seven five on, uh, 4014 to eighty-five point seven five. Uh, this is from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one. Um, but then also, a- and, and I'm seeing a decrease in your salaries. And I'm just wondering if you can explain how you went from a lower amount of staff to a higher amount, but yet your salaries on that budget went down? Was that because you were budgeting for unfunded, uh, positions? Uh, just a, a question.
I, I think that's part of it. And, and Chrissy, I don't know if, if, if you can articulate, uh, that? And if you can unmute yourself? Oh, I guess she can't.
She needs the ability, she needs the ability to unmute herself. There you go.
There you go. Um, so these are positions that we don't plan on filling this next fiscal year. Um, we still want to keep those positions in our budget. Um, but with, um, the COVID, we just plan on not filling these positions this next year. And there are positions that hadn't been filled. Um, they were unfilled, so we're just not gonna, this next fiscal year, fill those positions.
But, but, uh, so, uh, I'm still confused because we added allocation of staff, but yet it, the salaries went down and I don't-
At mid-year, we added a staff member for the COC. Um, we added positions for the COC at mid-year, I believe. Um, and that's where those positions came in from.
Okay.
Um, but then there was like OA positions that we, our offices, we don't have clients coming in. We don't need to fill those positions. Um, so we have a, a lot of positions that haven't been filled that we're just not gonna fill.
And, and that segues right into my next question. What is your vacancy? Uh, it looks like you have, uh, eighty-five point seven five in 4014 and twenty-three point five in 4015. So that's approximately a hundred and nine, uh, total, uh, staff. What, what level of vacancy are we looking at for you specifically?
I can tell you that in just one second.
I'm not good with math. If we were fully staffed, we'd have a hundred and thirty, um, staff. So, whatever that percentage difference is between a hundred and nine, a hundred and thirty, that's where we are. I mean, it's, it's looking a lot better than it had. I mean, when I inherited this department, I think we were at a thirty-five percent, uh, vacancy rate. So, we're, we're doing okay. Um, but, but as I mentioned before, I mean, w- we're still struggling with, with the, the rates of pay that just aren't-
Sorry Todd, we're currently at, um, for our mental health, we're currently at eighty-four percent. Um, all, um, and seventy percent for, um, our substance abuse disorder services. Seventy-five percent altogether for our whole department.
Okay.
Okay. So we're in line with everyone else.
So you're at about eighty out of a hundred and eight or something along there?
Um, we have thirty, I think, thirty vacant positions currently.
Gotcha, gotcha. That's a, that's a big one right there. That's important, especially for, we just had a discussion yesterday about the importance of, uh, finding ways to provide those services to, uh, varying groups in the community. And, and thirty would make a huge difference. Um, let me see what my other questions were. Uh, training. I don't see an appro- I, I, I believe when I spoke with admin, uh, last year, that there's seven hundred and fifty dollars per department, I believe, that's set aside for training or something along those lines. I forget what the actual amount is. I might be making that up. But I don't see anything in here for training. And yet I'm hearing you talking about training to help your staff increase their, their knowledge and their skill sets and maybe even, uh, be able to move up, uh, the ladder i- into a new position or things of the like. Uh, I don't see that in here. I- is that, um, separate and outside of the budget? Or is that something that needs to be implemented?
It just, it falls under a budget, it falls under one of our budget codes. Um-
In all likelihood, you would pay that out of twenty-three eighty, Chrissy?
Yeah.
If it's your professional services?
So yeah, for, it, and that does fall under our training. We have about fifteen thousand dollars set aside for staff this, this year for training.
Okay, okay. And, and just, uh, uh, I'm sure it's not the last ti- first time you've ever heard this, but, uh, the idea for those thirty vacancies, um, I know they have a very robust program over, uh, Woodland Community College. In fact, a lot of your staff come directly from that program, especially, uh, I, I don't know about the behavioral health, but definitely the, uh- but definitely the uh uh the S U D's program. And uh maybe an internship. That way you can help get more people in the door before they're done and able to get the full job. And maybe that can help with some of those thirty. And also, just wanted to check in because of the recruitment, because the recruitment is 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 really hurting my heart right now, because that just makes things that much more difficult for you. Uh are are you currently meeting all of your requirements for state reporting? I know you've been behind and you've been slowly trying to catch up. Are you up to date or are you still getting there?
We uh we currently just uploaded sixteen seventeen cost report and eighteen nineteen is due, and they're currently working on eighteen nineteen. Our substance abuse program is current. They've been current. It's just our mental health side. So we are still in the process of catching up there.
Are you one year behind? Are you two years behind or are you closer?
What? Currently, we're one year behind.
Okay, okay, which is better than what it was.
The state is still working on twelve thirteen.
Yeah, they're way behind.
The state further behind than we are.
But but as you know, if they're behind, nobody holds them accountable. But if we're behind, they make us pay for it. It's un- it's it's unfortunate, but that's just the way it goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that question, Bruno. And you know, I, one of the things, obviously, I'd just like to talk about, um, you know, uh just really give you a uh, you know, praise on in your department, uh since you've taken over, Todd, is the um the catching up on the reporting and everything that's happened. And I know when I first came on board and uh was appointed during the mental health board and uh talking with you on uh what the task that you had with the uh our catching up with the reporting uh is is just um some great work for all your departments, some of the changes you've made uh to do that. But I want to thank all your staff and everybody because uh when I came on board, I know you were talking about eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. You know, there was a lot of stuff that needed to be done. So just want to definitely uh give you guys the credit for working through that. Uh it's it's not complete yet, and I know you'll work until that's done. Uh but um it's just very important because, as you said, Bruno, anything that we they g- they can recoup from us, obviously hurts us on the services we provide in the county. And it's just so important. So um ultimately, uh you know, goo- good job. Keep up the great work. And I just, I just want to talk about that um, you know, from my point of view, that uh the hard work's been done and uh we're making some great progress. So thank you and all the staff for everything that you guys do. And that, you know, that's the most important part. Um that fiscal part uh being responsible there so we can serve our clients in the county. So thank you very much.
Well, and thank you Supervisor Simon. I'm glad you mentioned something about the mental health board because that's finally uh coming together. Um as I mentioned before, our our C O C board um i- is is very robust. And we're getting some great folks on the mental health board. Um there's finally some new life um being pumped into that group. And so I I actually have a meeting this uh third, uh tomorrow, Thursday. Uh and uh I'm very excited about the direction that that board is going as well. Um I'm hoping to get them on a on a Board of Supervisors agenda so they can present the work that they're planning to do. Um so that's that's finally, that's one of the, one of the 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 final pieces to this puzzle um in my department that I've struggled in 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 putting that group together. But I I'm I'm happy with the folks that are that are on that board now. Um I believe there's an applicant, another application that'll be coming your way. And finally, we will have a a quorum that we can, we can finally start moving this thing forward. So um I am excited about that as well.
Uh Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, uh um Director Metcalf, I just wanted to state that uh yes, you, one thing I appreciate is that there's always, you're always, uh whenever I discuss with you things, you're always looking for ways to improve. And I appreciate that because we could always be good or doing great things, but there's always room for improvement. I appreciate you making those statements and always trying to live up to that. Um and I just wanted to state that when you can, when you uh form that ad hoc committee you were talking about, I'd like to be a part of those meetings if at all possible.
Be careful what you wish for, but I'll put your name on the list.
Thank you.
Supervisor Arthur, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, actually, uh thank you very much. One last comment I forgot to make, and uh Supervisor Crandall kinda hit it right there. Love the creation of that ad hoc committee. Any money that we can keep local and any community members we can keep here local is all a win-win for us. And absolutely, let let's get that going.
Thank you. It's it's time to have some serious discussions about it.
Indeed.
Okay, uh a- any more questions? Uh Supervisor Brown, I don't know if you had any. Okay, um so seeing no more questions at this point from uh.
I've got nothing.
There you go, Supervisor Brown.
Yeah, I just want, you know, we're we're gonna have that discussion later or hopefully we've built uh about the uh jail and that type of thing. But that's not really a budget item. So thank you.
Okay. All right. Um with that, we're gonna go ahead and uh open it up to the public for uh public comments. Jake, if you could open the room. I don't see any hands up from any participants, so.
Yes, I will um unmute the Zoom floor here. I've sent a unmute request out to the floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
You have any public on if you'd like to make comment at this point? Time is now to do that. Okay, hearing none. Jake, go ahead and close the room back up and uh no one has come into the chambers at this point. I don't think Supervisor Sabatier is saying, okay, excellent. Uh we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action on this budget unit.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve budget units forty-fourteen, mental health forty-fifteen, alcohol and other drug services, and forty-eighteen alcoholism program services.
Second.
All right, Johanna, there is a motion and a second. If you could please do the roll call vote.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Todd and Christie, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, moving on to child support services. Director Gail Wo- Wo- Woodworth will present budget unit two-one-one-two, found on page E ninety-two. And you can find the appropriation summary at the bottom right of that page.
Welcome, welcome, Gail.
Good morning to all. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'm Gail, Director here at Child Support Services. Um first thing I do want to do is talk about some accomplishments that we have done this past year that have really um assisted us going into the whole COVID event. The first one was um our streamlining of our incoming mail. For about ninety-five percent of our mail, we image it and task our workers. So the mail isn't um moving from hand to hand, and it's really worked out um really well. So and it helped us be ready for teleworking. And the other thing that we did, we really looked at our workflow of our review and adjustment of current child support orders so that we could get those modified in a quicker fashion. And again, that really came in handy um as we went to teleworking and all the issues that have come up with um COVID-19. Um as a state and federal-funded department, we've been directly affected by the state's impact of COVID-19. In this budget, you're gonna see that the state reduced our funding by about fourteen percent. It's over three hundred thousand dollars. Um we anticipated some reductions starting in twenty-one, twenty-two because of the state's new budget allocation methodology. But we didn't anticipate any cuts in this current fiscal year. And so, you know, a cut of fifty-six million dollars to local child support agencies was really a big hit. And it was really interesting because child support was one of the few, if not the only, safety net programs that was cut by the state. In the state's new budget allocation methodology that was completed earlier uh this year, we knew that over five years, we would, we would have um cuts to our program. But we had already, you know, left positions unfilled and looking in the future to um retirements and um just natural attrition. We felt that we were going to be ha- able to handle those cuts without um having to lay anyone off. And unfortunately, this year, we did eliminate five um positions in our budget, but none of those were filled. So that worked out very well. Our biggest concern for this coming year really, or this year we're in, is catching up on our court cases. We were really fortunate that our court began filing, refiling our documents and having court much quicker than the majority of counties in the state. So we were only shut down for about two months. And um so some some were are still um having very little done. So I'm I'm really thankful to our Superior Court for getting us going on Zoom court. Um but we do have a problem that because of COVID and the unemployment issues, um our modifications haven't increased greatly. And we are now scheduling those cases out into January, which normally we wouldn't be further out at this point in time, November. So these are, those modifications really are our biggest problem um that's that we're dealing with right now. And I think, though, with those change that changes that we made last year, it's really helping us along. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Okay, um for the board uh board members, we have any questions for Gail at this time? Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you for your presentation. Uh I am saddened to see that you uh eliminated five unfilled positions. Granted, they were unfilled or else that that would be a much more sad situation. Uh but still saddened that that's what happened because of the cutbacks from the state. Um my question for you is the department collected, uh you wrote here on your department overview, collected four point seven million in child support, of which three point six million went out to custodial parents. Uh where does the uh leftover go? Does that uh roll over for you specifically? Does that go somewhere else?
No, that's to reimburse the state, the federal, and the county for their welfare costs. Because it's actually recruitment of um welfare expenditures.
Okay. So it it does have a very allocated situation of where that money can go uh once you receive it?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Everything else looks good to me. And again, I I wish we didn't have to uh cut anything, but luckily you were able to without any uh major changes. But uh hopefully it doesn't continue for far too long.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. And uh I know that um CSAC and other things, you know, that's uh where we'll make our voices heard, obviously, to help push that in the other direction. So I know we have our supervisors that are on those boards. If there's anything that needs to be communicated uh for many of the agencies, please do that with our Board of Supervisor reps. And I will continue to fight and push. And uh yeah, hopefully it will not continue in that direction here uh for 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 extended time. So uh Gail, thank you very much for your report. Any other board members at this point? Uh have any questions on this budget item or for Gail?
Thank you, Gail, for your report.
Okay, hearing none. We're gonna go ahead and open it up for the uh for public comment. Jake, I don't see, you probably have a theme to this today, but Jake, go ahead and open up the room, please.
All right, I'll open up the Zoom floor here. I've sent out an unmute request to the floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and uh close the room up and we'll bring it back.
Right.
Instead of asking every time to Supervisor Sabatier, I'll just wait until you let me know if someone comes into the boardroom. So we'll just go ahead and uh at this time uh close public comment and bring it back to the board for action on this budget unit.
I will definitely let you know. Mr. Chair, I move to approve budget unit twenty-one-twelve for Judicial Child Support Services.
Second.
Motion and second. Johanna, if you could please do the roll call?
Yeah, Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Hi.
Supervisor Scott?
Hi.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Thanks.
So now, Public Services Director Lars Ewing will present the Buildings and Grounds, Integrated Waste Management, Parks, Parks Improvement, Quimby, Museums, and Museum Improvement Fund budget units, starting on page E forty. And you can find the total appropriations at the bottom right of each page.
Okay. Good morning. And uh after we're done with uh with this budget unit, we will take a uh five-minute break, uh comfort break for everyone. So Lars, go ahead.
Okay. Uh Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. I appreciate the uh the time here. Make sure that I'm I'm showing up on camera and and audio.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Sure.
Okay, so uh the 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 way I want to present this, I I have the six budget units. Um I'm I'm gonna uh go through through all of them. Uh it as you, as you please, you can approve them at the end or or individually. Uh but generally, they're they're grouped in in four areas. Uh first is Buildings and Grounds, Facilities Maintenance. Uh next would be Integrated Waste Management or Solid Waste in the landfill. Uh next up would be Parks and Recreation. That also includes uh the the Quimby um budget unit. And then lastly is is Museums, which includes uh two budget units, one for museum operations and the other for museum improvements. Um uh across the board for for the department, staff-wise, which I I I um what you're gonna see with each budget unit, uh I kinda group them in into uh three or four categories. Staffing, revenue, services and supplies, and and capital assets. And then just, I'm gonna touch on some of the highlights within each one, try not to um uh to go into into too much detail, but I I the highlights of of this budget year. Um across the board, within Public Services, um vacancies is a is a very common theme uh that that's discussed. Um we, I I I'm very happy with our vacancy rate, I think is a is a simple way to put it. Um it, most of the vacancies that we have uh right now are, we anticipate to fill them if 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 we um af- at the end of the budget, when it's approved, we will have vacancies because of of new positions. Um but of of the thirty-nine positions that uh that we have, uh uh permanent full-time positions, um uh of those thirty-nine, uh we only have two that um uh that we're, I I would even say, having trouble filling. And and I I think that's even even in extreme. They've they've been vacant for a a few months, and we've had maybe one failed recruitment. So um so I'm 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 very pleased about that. Um so diving into Facilities Maintenance, which is on on page E forty of the of the budget book, Buildings and Grounds. Staffing-wise, um we have seven permanent staff there. Two of those are are actually new allocations. Uh one, a new facilities maintenance worker and and technician, uh and then a a new position of a a janitorial supervisor. Um uh up until now, uh all the janitorial work has been done uh by extra help um and and overseen by the um uh the Facilities Maintenance Superintendent. So we're establishing one janitorial supervisor to to help with um with the supervision of those staff. Um the the goal there is is really to reduce reliance on on extra help uh for steady-state operations. And that's something that that um uh is is a common theme across the board with with uh all my budget units. Uh revenue-wise, um we we just just as an FYI, we we receive about um a quarter of a million dollars in uh facilities leases. Uh ranges from telecommunications on the courthouse roof and and Guard Street. Uh we also receive about the same amount of money um anticipate this year from uh the courts uh for the courthouse roof, their cost share of of the of that project. Um so primarily, facilities maintenance is is reliant upon um uh upon the general fund. Uh some highlights in in Services and Supplies, which is a little over a million dollars. It's it's generally for plant operations and maintenance. Uh there is a slight increase um in in enhanced cleaning, um uh which I I only highlight that uh because of COVID. So uh additional supplies is is really what that what that boils down to um this year. Um uh which which I'm I'm focusing on the upcoming budget year. I'm I'm not gonna go back in time too much here, but but uh one of the highlights that we had of last year was was uh facilities maintenance staff really stepping up and helping um get the facilities ready for um uh for our response to to the pandemic. Um also, uh we will be replacing two uh two new trucks um uh pre- that are currently department-owned. And we will uh anticipate getting the 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 two new vehicles into the central garage fleet, which uh which does uh there there's a a slight um increase in in our cost um uh to main- well, not to maintain those, but but to to pay for those. Uh but there's a benefit in having it in in the central garage fleet um in in that it's it's uh it's maintained by Central Garage and and it also includes a um a replacement uh uh fund, so to speak. So so we're we're not left at the end of a of a vehicle's life with um uh no way to pay for a replacement. Uh so moving on to capital assets, um a few of the highlights there, Facilities Life Cycle, Life Cycle Management Program is a carryover. Um a- and and I think that's that's a common theme with uh that and and a capital improvement plan. Um uh number of the board members and I have discussed. Number of the board members and I have discussed that, that we, that's, that's something that, that needs to move forward along with the Energy Efficiency Program. Um, and, and we, we have some momentum with that, but funding is, is there for the, for, uh, at, at least the, the, um, Facilities Life Cycle Management Program. Few other projects specific, uh, courthouse museum elevator repair and modernization and, uh, schoolhouse museum, um, electrical upgrade and, and HVAC upgrade. Uh, there are a lot of other facilities, capital improvement projects that are in other budget units, which, um, uh, we'll address it, uh, when, when those come up. So, uh, if, you know, a few of the highlights, like I said, I think the, the, the main thing to hit here is, is to focus staff's time, um, and, and our money on preventive maintenance, not necessarily, um, uh, you, you know, kind of want, uh, projects, remodels or, or certainly, uh, reactionary. There, there is absolutely a, a reactivity associated with, um, uh, you know, an aging infrastructure. But, uh, but if we can get out in front and, and do preventive maintenance, that's, uh, that's always the goal. So moving on to, um, if we can now moving on to Integrated Waste Management, uh, that budget unit. Uh, staffing wise, uh, i- it, it houses, um, not only the, the landfill staff, but it's also the, uh, location of, of the, the administrative staff for the department. Um, so, so office wise, we have six permanent, um, staff, uh, for the entirety of, of, of the, of the department. That's actually a reduction, um, from seven from, from the previous year. Uh, the reason for that is, is, um, uh, proposed combination or elimination, I should say, of, of two existing office positions and the establishment of a, of a new, uh, uh, project management operations position. And at the landfill itself, we have nine permanent staff, um, uh, as well as one full-time, uh, uh, term position that is, uh, s- we are still keeping that through, uh, through next year, uh, next, uh, well, this current, this fiscal year. The intent of that is to help with, with fire debris. Uh, we, we are still waiting on, uh, fire debris from the 2018 fires that CalRecycle i- is managing. Um, and then we have a few from the, the current fires, uh, so that, that, we, we are keeping that limited term position. Uh, revenue wise, um, we, we generate about two, uh, 2.6 million dollars in landfill disposal fees. Um, uh, that, that on average is, is, is based on, um, about 45,000 tons of, um, of debris that comes into the landfill. Uh, that is separate from any, any fire debris, certainly, um, which, uh, has, has assisted. I'll get to that a, a little bit later. But we also receive money from, uh, from franchise fees with the, um, uh, the waste haulers. And the remainder of our revenue comes from, uh, uh, interest generated from, uh, reserve funds, uh, CalRecycle grants and, and, and other, um, miscellaneous, um, uh, revenue sources. Services and Supplies is 1.7 million, around figures. Uh, generally that's for ongoing landfill operations. It's not your capital improvement projects or, or, or anything of that nature. But, um, but speaking of capital projects, there are a, a number of them that are on the horizon. Uh, a- and, and in, in the, in the planning and design phases now, uh, the, the elephant in the room there is the landfill expansion project. We have completed sequel with that and we are currently in the, uh, in the, what I'd call the permit application and, and the, the joint technical document phase. That's, that's basically the, the, the Bible that, that drives the, the operation of the landfill. Um, so that, uh, that project is, uh, is on skid. And funding wise, we do have, uh, funding in reserves. That's actually shown in, in section D of the, of the budget book. So we, we, we are on track, uh, to, to fund that project, uh, largely, as I indicated, because of the, um, the, the fire debris, it's very dense and, and we, we brought in a, a, a good amount of money. I'm sorry, a good amount of, of, uh, debris, which, uh, really, really allowed us to, to fund this, this project. Had that not happened, uh, we, we, uh, it would have been a, a challenge to, to fund this. Other projects that we have on the horizon, uh, landfill gas system expansion, uh, to meet mandated groundwater quality measures that, that, um, uh, the state water board has, has placed upon us. Uh, we currently have a, um, a cleanup or under a cleanup and abatement order, um, uh, with the, the water board for, um, uh, for compounds in, in the water at the, just groundwater. Uh, we have submitted and are working with the water board, so the work plan is, is, is submitted into them. Basically what that's gonna boil down to is, um, is, is drilling additional vapor extraction wells and, uh, uh, and an additional infill extraction wells that will be in the actual, um, uh, the, the landfill itself, not just on the perimeter, uh, to monitor. So, uh, so that, that will, um, extract, uh, the, the, the compounds out of, the intent is to extract the, uh, the compounds out of the groundwater, uh, by removing, uh, uh, gas. So, uh, additionally, we're working on, um, uh, some groundwater separation, uh, work that's separate from the cleanup and abatement order as, as well as work on the leachate. So some, um, some other projects there. Uh, lastly, uh, one piece of equipment that we will be purchasing is, um, uh, is a, a daily cover, a TARP application system, um, and, and, uh, an additional vehicle. It's a, a tool cat, uh, for our, our work at the landfill. Quickly touching on reserves, I touched on, on the expansion funds. Uh, we do have reserves in place, um, uh, for, for requirements that, that we have, both from the state and, and, uh, and our own, um, kind of good, good measures to, to ensure that we can, we can fund, uh, future issues. The ones that are required by the state, uh, we have a closure and post-closure fund, um, uh, for, for if or, or when, uh, the, the landfill is closed or, uh, the state requires, um, funding to be in place, uh, to, to fund both physically closing the landfill, uh, capping it and then, uh, doing long-term, uh, post-closure maintenance. Um, and, and similarly, uh, we, we're required to have a certain amount of money in for, uh, unanticipated, uh, events, uh, unanticipated corrective action or the, the corrective action for those unanticipated events. Uh, additionally, uh, last things that we have in reserves, um, we have some funding in for, uh, for our, for Davis Street, uh, City of Clear Lake's, uh, street, which we have, uh, we, we set aside funding for that. Our, our, uh, portion of, of paying for that. We're also establishing a, um, uh, a, a, a reserve fund for landfill gas system and water quality improvements, uh, similar to what I, what I mentioned earlier. And, and also, uh, equipment and, and environmental liability, which is a, a state requirement. So, um, moving on to parks and trails, um, and parks and recreation. I've, I, I like to add the term trails just to, to highlight that. There's two budget units there that's on, on page E289, um, budget unit 711 and 7073. Uh, 711 is, 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 uh, essentially the Parks and Recreation Operations Fund. 7073 are development funds that, that come in for park improvement from, um, uh, subdivisions and, and parcel maps that, that, uh, trigger payment into, into that. Um, staffing wise, we have, uh, 10 permanent staff. And, and on average, we have about six, uh, throughout the year, about six seasonal, uh, extra help staff. Revenue, uh, largely, um, largely general fund. Uh, geothermal does, um, uh, does play a large part, as, uh, as Stephen mentioned during his presentation. Uh, we also have funds from Mount Canuckdie, uh, telecommunication leases on, uh, Buckingham Peak. And services supplies wise, uh, nothing really significant to touch on here. There is a slight increase, uh, due to, um, uh, enhanced cleaning, uh, and similar to Buildings and Grounds, uh, two replacement vehicles. And so there's a, there's an increase in our, um, uh, in our, uh, vehicle, uh, cost there. Uh, capital projects, we, we do have a variety of them and I, I just wanna touch on those. Funding for these comes from a variety of sources, um, uh, generally our, our net county cost and our revenue, but also from, uh, specifically from Quimby. Uh, we're, we're tapping into that and, and also a specific object code for pathways. Um, so a few of the projects there, Lucerne Harbor Lights, uh, would be, be adding lights to, to the parking lot. Continued work on Mount Canuckdie Phase, uh, Phase Two, um, uh, as we can, um, uh, get some momentum going there to, to, uh, increase what was the long-term vision for that, uh, for that park. Upper Lake, uh, basketball court, we have, we have, uh, unfortunately, we did not for Upper Lake for, um, um, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm confusing that with Hammond, my, my fault. Upper Lake Community Park, um, uh, a basketball court there. But to talk, talk about a few grants that we did not receive, un- unfortunately with, uh, through the state. Um, we, we have, uh, plans, um, and, and the public has, has stated what they want to see at, at certain parks for which we, we, uh, prepared some improvement plans for. And since we did not receive the grants, we are, we're going to, uh, try to, um, tick away at, at some of the, the work, uh, or some of the, the, um, amenities that are proposed for those, those parks, uh, with, with our staff and, and with our ongoing funding. Uh, one of those is, uh, is Trailside Park, um, uh, try to do some trail improvements and, and also a, a well installation project, um, that's actually in partnership with Caltrans and Lake County RCD. Um, and similarly, fitness courts at, at Hammond and, and Kelseyville. Lastly, Rodman Park, um, uh, at Rod, on Rodman Slough, uh, work on the dog park improvement, or actually the establishment of a dog park, uh, as well as some parking lot improvements there. So I, I, I think the, uh, you know, the, the, the main highlight is, is that there are a good number of, of projects that you'll see. Uh, they, they aren't new parks, uh, what we're trying to i- improve, uh, the, the parks that, that, uh, staff does a, a fantastic job in, in my opinion of, um, uh, maintaining and, and beautifying those. And so trying to identify ways that, that we can, we can continue, um, uh, that, uh, that, what has progressed to be some beautiful parks. Uh, so lastly, stepping on to museums, uh, two budget units there. Uh, one for, similar to, to, um, to parks. There's one for museum operations and there's one that has established, uh, uh, the Museum Improvement Fund, um, that's generally a repository for donations. Uh, these are on, uh, page E295 of the budget book, budget unit 7201 and 7202. Staffing, um, uh, we are, we do, we have one permanent curator, um, uh, up until now, uh, till this budget year. Uh, that was it, that was the only permanent staff. Um, we are including, uh, and restoring, I should say, a, a three-quarter time permanent assistant curator. And I, I, I really appreciate the, uh, the support there, um, presuming the board is in support of it. That, that, uh, having three, uh, three museums around a, a geographically separated area is a challenge with, with one curator. Um, so having that three-quarter time, uh, permanent curator will, will be a, a huge, uh, huge boost. Aside from, from those, uh, two, well, one and three-quarter staff, um, it's, it's extra help, uh, that, um, that, that bears the, uh, the brunt of, of, of the work. Um, and I, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't touch on the, uh, the many volunteers and, and the, uh, the, the nonprofits that, that, um, that are, uh, a huge, huge boon and, and have an interest in the museums. Uh, revenue wise, uh, we do bring in, um, uh, we're estimating to bring in about 10,000. That's, that's from donations largely. Services and supplies, not much, uh, different there, um, though there are a couple of, of, of potential projects that I wanted to touch on. Um, one is the, uh, the courthouse museum, uh, Pomo sculpture, the, uh, the, the Lake Pomo family sculpture. Uh, we have received $35,000 or so in, in donations to date. Uh, we have, um, a grant submitted into the National Endowment for the Arts. Unfortunately, that's, uh, we'll wait until, until April to receive notification for that. But we, but we have, um, built up a, um, you know, a, a, a good, uh, good donations for, for that. So I appreciate that from the, um, from the, the, the public, uh, the tribes. It's, it's, um, it's been good to see that continuing. Uh, one other project, uh, well, I should say grant that, that we, that we applied for. Um, i- it's not in the budget, but, um, but there is a, a virtual museum grant application to the, to the federal, um, through a federal grant program. Uh, we're, we're anticipating an October notice of that. So if we get it, it, it would, uh, essentially increase drastically the, um, the, the, the online presence of the museum and, and allow a, kind of a virtual museum visit. Um, this, this was a, I, I credit the, the, uh, curator, uh, for, for the, uh, for the county clerk. He, he's, uh, just taking this and running with it. And it was already envisioned prior to, uh, COVID, uh, and, and so it, it just aligned very well with that. Uh, there are a few facility improvements that, that are going on that are not in this budget unit, but I, I, I mentioned them previously and that is the courthouse museum elevator and the schoolhouse museum, um, in Lower Lake. Uh, an electrical upgrade going from single-phase to three-phase, which will, uh, uh, assist with HVAC upgrades and also a, a, a potential future elevator project that, that would require a, a three-phase power. So, uh, with that, I will, um, I will, uh, wrap it up with, with those, uh, those six budget units and happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Okay, board, uh, any questions for, uh, Lars and the, the six budget units that he just presented? We just spent time together yesterday, so, uh, Supervisor Sabatier?
I was just waiting for someone else to speak first before I did. Uh, thank you very much for that presentation. I, I do have a few question, um, you said you had seven full-time for building and maintenance, but when I look at the, um, budget book, it says eight. I just wanted to clarify and check in to... Look to that, I'll, I, as, as other question, I'll, I'll dig into that right now and we can, we can come back to that. Okay. And then, um, I was looking at the, uh, parks. Love the fact that we have 27 county parks throughout and I, I have some concerns on having only 11 staff. And mainly it's because I know you use extra help for some of those staff. Am I correct on that? That is correct. And so, um, at this moment in time, you said that you were pretty much, um, you weren't dealing too much with any vacancies and you felt pretty good about the, the standing of your, uh, uh, staffing at this moment in time. I, I just know that extra help is not necessarily a long-term fix. It's a short-term fix. And wondering what the extra costs would be to turn some of those extra help into permanent in comparison to what we're seeing on your salaries? Well, I, I, I appreciate you bringing that up and I, and I, I, um, certainly won't disagree that, that, um, more staff would help. You know, no, no department is, is going to disagree with that. Within, um, uh, within other budget units in, in my department, we, we did change, uh, some, some extra help positions into, into permanent. Uh, I, I mentioned them within Buildings and Grounds. What, what we tried to do was, was identify in the, um, uh, the economic environment we're in. We tried to identify the, the, the heaviest hitting positions that, that, um, uh, would, are most in need of, uh, changing from extra help to permanent largely for, for those positions that, uh, that are ongoing and, and recurring throughout the year and are not, and are not based on a, on, on a project need, uh, you know, a time constrained need. Uh, so those, uh, those positions were largely the janitorial supervisor, um, and, and, uh, a, a, a facilities maintenance technician in, um, in Buildings and Grounds. Uh, that's not to say that the parks are, are not ongoing. However, we, we ramp up and down as the season ebbs and flows. Um, and, and some of those, for example, the, the, even the pools, we, we have a, a lifeguard and, and a, uh, it, it comes on board. So, so not every position within parks lends itself well to, to being permanent. But it is something that is, that is, uh, on my mind. And, uh, aside from the fact of, um, uh, having, having permanent, there's some other, uh, other rationale that I, I think it, it would serve well to have them permanent. But it is, i- it's not something for this budget unit that, that we've attacked within parks, but it is, um, uh, something that we wanna do over a, you know, three to five-year period. All right, and, and I'm just, uh, in not asking for an answer, I'm always curious about what the difference would be between the permanent versus the extra help. I know it doesn't typically come with any benefits or anything like that. And so obviously that's a definite added cost to it. Uh, but the, but the permanency, I think, helps us to predict what the future will look like. And right now it's, it's a very unpredictable environment depending on how many jo- how many, uh, what's the unemployment rate out there? What's the, um, what kind of stimulus do we have that's currently active? That's keeping people away from wanting to take on the extra help, uh, so on and so forth. So I just think that's an important part, cause as I read that there's only 11 staff for 27 parks, that ratio, um, that, that's a rough ratio. Yeah, a- and I, again, I, I certainly don't disagree and, and I, I appreciate that, but I, I will, uh, the fact that the parks are in good shape, the fact that, that they, they are maintaining them. Uh, I, I wouldn't wanna add more staff simply because 11 doesn't seem like enough. Um, and, and I, I'm sure my park superintendent would, would be shooting me right now if I, if you heard me saying that, that we don't need more staff. I, that's, you know, it's not what I'm saying. Uh, we could do better with more staff. But, um, but it's, it's, it's not where, uh, where, right now I would see the, the, you know, a, a, a dire need to, to either change those extra help into permanent or, or simply add additional permanent position. Right, right. Just real quick, you said you were, uh, there's a line item for the City of Clear Lake for the, I believe it's 70% that you're supposed to take care of for, uh, Davis and Moss, for the, uh, road that leads to the landfill. I, I forget if it's 30 or 70, I always forget who's supposed to have which number. Uh, that's for future resurfacing, cause you already paid for the one that occurred last year, correct? We, we did pay for the one, yeah, we're talking in, in 4121. Yes, it is a, a, about 70%. That's, that's the, the, the MOU that is established. Uh, it, it pays for both, um, uh, recurring maintenance where, where they, the, the City of Clear Lake would actually bill us, um, uh, for, for...
We lost your, uh, volume all of a sudden, uh, Lars?
I'm not sure. Okay. All right, I'm, I'm back. So, uh, so it's, it's, it's both. It is both maintenance and, and improvement projects. And, and what we're trying to, uh, trying to do is in anticipation of not a, a significant project in the near future, because the City of Clear Lake just did a, 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 a pretty big one. Then, then, you know, that, that would be something that in the, uh, maybe, maybe it's 10 years down... Then, then, you know, that would be something that in the, maybe it's 10 years down the road, we would, we would expect something from the city of Clear Lake. So we build that up. It's, it is in the budget as in 985, Fund 985, within Budget Unit 4121.
Okay. And I appreciate that for the clarification. And then the last one, I'm guessing that's supposed to go to administration, not to you. But I know that I was hanging out with Supervisor Crandall one day when discussing the National Monument and over at Lucerne Harbor. There's still some empty, I don't want to say shops, I guess shops, commercial areas that are on our park. Is that through you or is that through administration?
It is, it is through admin for the, call it the managing of the occupancy there. We help with, within the confines of the facilities maintenance, kind of as the custodians.
Are you referring to the Lucerne Harbor cottages?
Yes.
Yes, yes. We oversee the rental of those units?
Okay, then I'll bring it up during the admin budget unit. Thank you very much for your presentation and the answers.
Okay. Just to come back to the, to the positions, I may just had incorrect numbers when I, in the presentation, looking at our salaries, well, at our Form 4 within the budget. We do have, I have one facilities maintenance superintendent, one lead worker. This is in Budget Unit 1671. And then we have four current facilities maintenance technicians, one new allocation, for a total of five, plus a janitorial supervisor, which is a new request. So it is, it is in fact a lead worker.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, Lars, thank you for that overview of your different budget units and whatnot. I wanted to just, I remember the application for, I think it was the Hammond Park. Is that the, because you mentioned basketball courts, and I know at Hammond Park, they talked about that. Or are you talking about, because you said Upper Lake Park as well. Is that actually the Upper Lake Parks looking into doing, or is it Hammond Park you're mentioning?
It is, it is Upper Lake Park that we had envisioned. At this point, we have not, you know, certainly broken ground. I mean, it's nothing that is, that is set in stone, but the intent would be for Upper Lake, the community there to have a basketball court.
Nice. Okay, because I just didn't want to confuse the two. And thank you for mentioning the Pomo statue. It is a grant, and they will be applying again for that. I had a question about, because this will kind of bleed into the Lucerne Harbor situation, but the question I really have is about the actual pier itself. Is that, does that filled into your parks and recreation? Is that, would that repairs of that actual pier, would that fall into that? Or is that going to be implemented into the actual $350,000 for the Lucerne Harbor project?
Yeah, so that would, well, the responsibility for that pier is certainly Public Services. The Lucerne Harbor dredging project is not envisioned to do any repairs there, dependent upon the, on the cost. It could certainly be something that we would, would or could roll into that project, though I, based on, based on estimates that we have, I don't envision that there's, that there's going to be any surplus money. And since we're talking about that, that project, it is in a different budget unit, so I didn't touch on too much of the funding. It's in 1781 or 1778, one of those two budget units. And we did include, we submitted a CAM grant for that. So we're hopeful to receive funding for that project through, through the CAM business grant.
Thank you, Lars, because I know, like, about last month or so, we discussed how the pier had some issues, and you were already reacting to it. I didn't know if that was a separate unit, because it is an existing, you know, pier issue or something like that.
Yeah, if I recall, it's relatively minor issue, but they did, staff did a kind of a short-term repair, and there is a long-term fix. It's not, as I understood it, it wasn't the pier itself. We're not talking about, you know, wave action that's deteriorating the pier. I think it was a handrail or something.
Right.
I'll follow up with that.
Thank you, Lars. I appreciate that. So that's, that's really all I have. Oh, actually, I did want to add that, you know, with the, Bruno had brought up the 11 workers and then the 27 parks, and then the potential for the John T. Klaus. I'm sure that will pay for itself if we decide to accept that. But that would enhance another park for you to take under your wing.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't, certainly don't want to jump the gun there with that, with that potential park. But I agree with you 100%, the hope is that it can be a kind of self-sustaining park. That might be, looking through rose-colored glasses a little bit, but I don't want to rely any further. If we take on a new park, I don't want to rely any more on, on general fund dollars.
Thank you.
Excellent. Lars, thank you for your presentation. Supervisor Scott, go ahead.
I don't really have any questions for Lars, but just want to thank him for all the hard work and his team for our parks. They are amazing. It's a great introduction. When you drive into Lake County and you see those parks on the North Shore, and you always see people in them using the park, so it's exciting to see. And I'm really hoping we get the virtual museum grant, because I know that the museums have really been hurting and the nonprofits trying to bring money into those. So I'm hoping maybe they'll be able to use those to bring some more donated money into those needed facilities. So just thank you.
Yeah. And, you know, one thing I know since I've come on the board, we've talked multiple times about, want to thank you for, you know, doing what you can at the Lower Lake Museum there. The upgrades in the electrical, like you said, may help down the road for, you know, the elevator situation that we've had ongoing. So it is long-term planning, but, you know, thank you very much for always keeping that in mind as you move through it in your process each year with the budget. So Lars, it's always a pleasure working with you, and I know Bruno touched on it. We have a lot of square footage that your department is responsible for and does a great job taking care of that. And, you know, thank you for your presentation today.
Well, thank you. If I could add one, just one final piece here, and that is, we're talking about the square footage, and it was focused on parks staff, facilities maintenance staff, it is as limited, if not more so, than parks when it comes to that. You know, about 500,000 square feet of facilities geographically spread around the county, where you can't take a beeline, then go from here to the other side of the county. It takes a while to get there. And so on average, it works out to, I think last, last I ran the figures, it was, we were at about 100,000 square foot per FTE. That the getting, bringing in some additional positions brings us down to, you know, I'm hazarding a guess that maybe we're at 75,000 square foot per FTE, somewhere in there. Industry standard is about 50,000. So for time, we were, we were about, you know, doing twice, twice the work of what the industry standard is. We're, we're cutting away at that, and it's helpful. The other part that helps is focusing staff's time on preventive maintenance and work that they know, we know, needs to be done. And I, departments, other departments, there are projects that we need, and that's completely understandable on remodels and, you know, moving walls and windows and such. But if we can focus our time on maintaining the existing inventory, that's where we want to focus. So I won't belabor your time anymore, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lars. Okay, if there are no more questions from the board, we're going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. Jake, if you could open the room, please?
Yes, I will unmute the Zoom floor here. I have sent out a unmute request to the room. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and close the room and bring it back to the board for action on this budget unit.
Mr. Chair, I have motioned to approve budget units 1671, 4121, 7011, 7201, 7202, and 7073.
Seconded by Supervisor Scott. Go ahead and do the roll call, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown? Is he here still?
He's sent by telephone to Supervisor Brown. Do you have audio? Jake, you'll see him, he's just by telephone. Can you make him a co-host so he can unmute himself or?
I can assign him co-host on the phone, but I did send him an mute request, and with that, there is dialogue on how to unmute the phone.
Okay. We'll give him a call. He was coming back into the room a minute ago, so he may have been dropped and needed to re-enter. There he is.
Hello?
Hello? Hello? Yep, hear you. I'm on my phone.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, I said yes.
Okay, and then Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
I had to go from my iPad to my phone, because my iPad needed a comfort break.
Well, we're about to all take one of those. All right, Lars, thank you very much.
Thank you. And now that those are approved, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to talk of you. Just now that those are approved, I wanted to say thank you to Katie Galvani, the Finance and Admin Deputy Director for the Department. This is her work, and she does, does this so well, among many other things for the county. So I just wanted to express my thanks to her. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you may have noticed while Lars was presenting that we posted a little screen there to advise the public who is currently presenting. So we're going to do that with each group of budgets as we go through them. We thought that might be helpful to the public who may be coming and going into the Zoom room to have a clear sense of who's speaking and what they're speaking about.
Okay. Yeah, looks good. Thank you very much, Lars.
Thank you.
Hit all of them, right?
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay, we will take, we're going to take a five-minute break here, a five-minute comfort break. It's 11:22, so we'll come back at, well, let's just come back at 11:30. Come back at 11:30. Take an eight-minute break here. Excellent. So we have everybody coming back. We're going to go ahead and reconvene our budget hearings here at 11:30. And we're going to go ahead and just continue on with our calendar today. Welcome, Scott.
And so Stephen Carter will introduce Scott, and we're going to do his budgets in groups. So go ahead, Stephen.
Okay, so now is Public Works Director Scott DeLeon going to present Public Works Administration, Engineering and Inspection, Road Subdivision Development Improvement Funds, Lamson Airport, Lamson Field Capital Projects, CSA Number Three Twin Lakes, CSA Number 23 Road Benefit Zones, and the ISF's General Garage, I mean, Central Garage, Heavy Equipment, Heavy Equipment Restricted, Heavy Equipment Replacement, and Fleet Maintenance. And they start on page E 65, and you can find the overall appropriations in the bottom right of the pages. Turn it over to Scott.
Great. Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity. As you've noted here, I got a number of budget units to discuss with you, and there are a couple more groups that I'll get to. So I'm going to actually be relatively brief and just be as prepared as I can be to answer any of your questions. I want to just hit on a couple of big highlights. As Stephen indicated this morning in his opening remarks, the first budget that you're looking at, 1903, Public Works Administration had a pretty large increase over last year. And the reason for that is we've, in the combining of the departments, we've moved all of the administrative staff into DPW Admin. We've added both a secretary and an accountant from CDD and Water Resources. In addition, as part of our reorganization, I've created a Deputy Director of Public Works Administration, a Public Works Analyst, and added an accounting technician for, we needed an additional position to handle the increased workload and also to provide succession planning. We needed an entry-level accounting tech. The revenue for this budget unit is obtained through the various budget units that utilize their services. And we go through a fairly complicated analysis, looking at each of the budget units that will be utilizing the services and coming up with a contribution that is equitable and fair from each of the budget units. So that's pretty thorough, but a general overview of 1903. You know, with all the budget units that we talked about, again, I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights. The Road Department is, is struggling. We're doing the best we can with the funding that we're getting. We saw a little bit of a reduction as a result of a decrease in fuel sales across the state. It wasn't as bad as we thought it was going to be, thankfully, but it was a reduction nonetheless. We've done some things with each of the road yards. We've put in $100,000 of asphalt mix allotment to each of their road yards, which is something we haven't done in a number of years. So each of the road yards will have a pretty sizable asphalt allotment. And frankly, we're, we're kind of just banking money right now. The projects that we have are large projects. Our road network is, frankly, has fallen apart. The candidates for some of the preventative maintenance projects that we normally do, chip seals and other types of seal projects, we're having fewer and fewer roads that are candidates for that due to their deterioration. And as a result, our, our projects are becoming a lot more expensive because they're, they're basically reconstruction projects. We do intend to utilize some of the newer technologies. A lot of recycling is being planned, but we're, we're having to kind of put some money aside in order to be able to do some sizable projects. A project I'd like to, or a budget unit I'd like to jump down to and perhaps highlight is our Lamson Field budgets, 3122 and 3123. And just note the accomplishment, frankly, for last year. We got our pavement preservation project, which was over a million-dollar project. We got that completed this year. We had to put that project off last year as a result of the closure of the airport from the Mendocino Complex fire. And the other notable accomplishment was the development of the Pilot's Lounge. That could not have been completed without the contribution from your board and the general fund, along with cooperation of our local Chamber of Commerce and the private property owner that agreed to lease us the building. It is a very popular addition. It gets a lot of use, and it's a fantastic facility. It turned out great. And we're, we're really excited about it, as well as our aviation community. It has a very nice restroom, which was certainly an upgrade from the Blue Room that we have been providing for years. So we're very excited about, about that. If you have any specific questions about some of the budget units in Public Works, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Central Garage, you know, there was, I came to your board several months ago, and there was some direction to look into a lease program, and we are in the process of doing that. We have a couple of leased vehicles in the fleet right now. And we'll be coming to your board here shortly with kind of an expansion of that. And so we're continuing to, to work towards that and with the goal of bringing the costs of transportation, bringing those costs down for departments. And so that's, that's kind of an ongoing test. I'm, I'm planning on doing the trial for at least, at least a year, perhaps two, to see what it really costs us to provide those services and provide those vehicles through the lease. And then I think we'll really be able to know if it's going to be a good program or not. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions regarding Public Works. We're excited about the opportunity here with the combining of the different departments, and we'll certainly get into that as we get into some of these other budget units here in the next cluster or the next group. But DPW Admin is looking forward to the challenge of administration. Uh, but, uh, DPW Admin, uh, is, uh, looking forward to the challenge of, uh, administering, uh, fiscal and, uh, uh, other accounting, uh, services for the various budgets.
Okay, Scott, thank you very much. Supervisor Sabatier.
Yep, there we go. Uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Director DeLeon. I know that his departments, um, for, for no bad reason, uh, just stood out to me and had a lot of red flags, and that was mainly, uh, explained in the movement of, uh, of peoples around in the department. Um, I know that there, there, there's two parts to this, and, and granted, I don't know how to not incorporate other budgets, uh, that we'll be speaking on later about this, but, um, roads. Roads are probably our number one problem that ever comes to us as far as what needs to be resolved in our communities. Um, this is not unique to the county. This is also for the city of Lakeport, for the city of Clear Lake, just, and granted, it's a California-wide issue. Uh, but we are not doing good in our PCI, and we've heard loud and clear from, uh, Director DeLeon that if we keep going at the pace that we're going, we will be at fifty maybe in ten years or something like that. And that, that's just not good enough. And so that's one of those budgets where I would love to see, so, and the deterioration of the roads has a lot to do with our, um, some of our environmental issues that we have, which includes our, our lake. Uh, the, the erosion, uh, if it be, if it breaks down too much and it becomes dirt, uh, this is definitely a huge issue in the city of Clear Lake, which is good to see that they're making some, uh, good strides in fixing their roads. I want to see the county in the same situation. We have an opportunity, uh, and it might even be a short-term opportunity, but we have an opportunity coming up, um, where there's some potential cannabis taxes that could be used, where to me, protection of the roads is protection of the environment. And then environmental protection and water quality is exactly what those taxes are for. So I don't know that it can be used in this year because there's not enough taxes in there. But I know that when I look at the amount of money that we're putting into roads and the potential issue of SB one being a whole lot less than what we've received in the past because nobody was driving for three months. And so it's gonna, it's, it's gonna have a hit on us. Um, and who knows what the future holds as far as COVID nineteen, and if there's going to be even less driving because of it, I don't know. But the fact is, it's hurting us, and we need to take things in our own hands, and we got to change the roads on our own. We got to figure that out. So I, I just want to put that out there. The next one is Lamson Airport. I know that anything we do at Lamson Airport is a costly change. But we've also said as a board that that is one out of the three economic development goals that we are aligning ourselves with. The rest of the county as well has agreed to this, um, for, for, uh, the Lake EDC, uh, goals. And while we've made some advancements, to me, the one obvious advancement is how do we expand our airport? Because the lack of, I mean, there's planes there that can't take off because of the size of our airport. Um, and so how, how do we go about to figure out how to expand the airport? Because that is absolutely an economic development question, but also how much money is required to make those changes. Um, if, if, if we are agreeing to making that a priority, this budget does not necessarily, um, display that as a priority. And I would love to see us making some of those changes happen. Uh, at the very least, at mid-year budget review, and, and with maybe an expanded conversation specifically about what that looks like, uh, not necessarily from the, um, ALUC, is that the, uh, acronym for the, uh, Airport Committee? But not necessarily from ALUC, but also from the board perspective as well, since we need to talk about it in financial terms, uh, and, and future vision terms. So I, I, I don't want any specific changes being made here because it would be too large of a change, and then we have to figure out how to go back and forth. But I just want to say it's something we have to change within the next year if we're going to say that we're going to make economic development, um, be a priority and, and the airport being one of them. Um, so that, that, that's it for now. Other than, um, I appreciate the time again from, uh, Scott DeLeon, from, uh, talking to me about all these changes. Some of them, uh, will lead, lead into some of the future conversations of code enforcement and nuisance abatement and whatnot, so I'll hold the rest of my comments for that. Uh, I did want to ask if it's possible, uh, and, and a quick side note complaint on this budget. Supposedly it's my fault, and I apologize if it's my fault, but it's really hard to look at a budget without actuals. Uh, and to me, this document, which is being made public, is only showing what we adopted last year and what we're looking to adopt this year, but there's zero actuals to tell us what we've actually spent. And I think that we need to know what's on, what's on the ground level of what we've actually spent. And so, um, without knowing that, it's really difficult to be able to make some of the comparisons. And one of the things I wanted to see and, and really hear about, and, and granted, I had my back, uh, door conversations, but I think it needs to be made more public, is what's going on with the CSA twenty-three Road Benefit Zone that we approved at the beginning of twenty nineteen, where right now it still shows that we have a hundred thousand dollars in there, and that was just a loan that we made. It needs to be, um, uh, I think we need to be, uh, in this document, make it more public as to what have we collected in property taxes from that benefit zone, and what have we spent from that, um, benefit zone? And I know we did supposedly eight properties, uh, but it's just that this document doesn't show any of that, and I would love for that to do so.
Okay, uh, any more, any more questions on the budget, uh, units that, uh, Scott has presented to this point? Supervisor Scott?
I don't have any questions for, um, Director Scott DeLeon, but, um, I, I would have to say I was, I was really concerned about our SB one funds when COVID, um, hit our community. So I agree with Supervisor Sabatier. Um, I, I, I do believe we're going to be hit with that, and we need to continue on our, uh, maintaining our roads. That is probably one of the biggest complaints that I do get from our constituents is our roads. So we, as a board, will need to look at ways we can continue to fund that project. So I think that's something that we need to, um, continue that conversation, um, with as a board. Um, I, I'm incredibly proud of the Pilot's Lounge, and so is the, um, community out there. They, it's, it's just absolutely amazing how it's changed, um, their look on our airport. So, um, thank, thank you for putting the work in and getting that done. I was able to go out and look at it, and, and it is an incredible, um, difference from what we had before, and they're able to, you know, print things and, you know, have information about our community when they land there. Um, I've had the opportunity to actually meet a couple businessmen that have flown in, and it was just, um, more impressive, um, to have that and, um, to have our airport. And I also agree that we do, do need to look on ways that we can, um, improve our airport because I, I think, um, as our industry grows, um, I think cannabis will be using, um, that airport. I know there's a facility right outside there, um, and they're interested in, um, using that airport, um, um, more. So I think that those are definitely two things that we need to look at, and just, um, thank you for, for everything.
You Scott, Supervisor Crandall, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Scott, thank you for that, uh, for that report there. And I just want you also, um, ju- just to highlight, uh, I know Bruno had posted and discussed about the, uh, the, the Sulphur Bank Road that you had fixed. Uh, that was a big deal for the fire escape and having another alternative route. And, um, and, and I, I agree with, uh, with both supervisors is we have to figure out, um, funding for these roads, and I'll give you examples. Um, you know, because of the Mendocino Complex fire, not only, um, was there a situation where the Blue Lakes had to utilize their back roads, and I know I've been talking to some of the people out there. I know it's not a high priority, but if there's other ways, um, and I'm thinking other funding that we may be able to move around on our end, not yours, of course, because I know that you're limited. But also, um, I drove up to Lake Pillsbury before this, before they were put into, um, mandatory evacuation, and, and their roads are pretty, pretty, uh, you know, they're pretty bad as well. And I know they get a lot of, uh, they get a lot of big trucks going through for the logging. And so, you know, that, those are two things I think we got to help, you know, provide funding for, um, figure out ways to move that around. And if we can't use SB one funds for it, of course, or, or, uh, but the other thing I was thinking about and mentioning is, and we talked about it in the Middle Creek Restoration, is, uh, promoting different ideas like the, the, the idea I have about Upper Lakes Clover Creek. Hopefully get that funding from the Blue Ribbon Committee to help, uh, prevent the floods in, in Upper Lake so that it limits, uh, the amount of times you have to fix those roads because of the floods. And so those are, those are the ideas I know that I'll be working on with the Blue Ribbon Committee, and it serves many different purposes, but one of them is to help you out in Upper Lake there. So, um, again, um, I understand, you know, you're doing a lot when it comes to these, this work because you have two other, uh, two other hats you wear. So, um, just wanted to highlight that and, and, and thank you again.
Well, I appreciate that. And, and you, you know, with the adoption of today's budget, which I'm hopeful will occur, uh, you know, we've, we've talked about, uh, the management here, uh, in these departments, and, and certainly after we've, um, after today, uh, you know, the addition of some of the staff that I've requested, uh, will, will go a long way to, uh, helping, um, helping at, at least staying on top of, uh, the opportunities. Uh, we, we are doing the absolute best we can with the funding that we have. Uh, I, I'd like to, you know, and I don't want to, uh, throw salt on the wound here, but, but, uh, I, I do need to correct some numbers here, or at least, um, something that, you know, Supervisor Sabatier said, um, our current payment condition index is thirty-seven, and it's not going up. Uh, at twenty-five, uh, you're, you're considered very poor or failed. Um, we, uh, you, you know, with the, with the available funding, uh, from SB one and, and our highway user tax account, uh, we'll be lucky if we're going to be able to raise our PCI to fifty in ten years. That's going to be a, a very difficult, uh, thing to do. Uh, and so additional funding is absolutely necessary. Uh, I made a point or made a comment in my Form One, uh, that, you, you know, uh, there's the old saying that money can't buy happiness. Well, happiness in road networks, uh, money can buy happiness. And unfortunately, uh, that's where we're at. And, um, as, as the longer this goes, the more expensive it's going to be to, to, to help fix, uh, or fix and repair these roads. And, uh, we're doing the best we can. Um, appreciate any consideration, uh, from your board, recognizing that times are extremely tough and, um, uh, but, but we will continue to do the best we can and pursue every available funding, uh, that we possibly can. And, and, uh, we had some email correspondence here earlier this morning, uh, uh, with the chamber and, and Supervisor Crandall. I think you were included in that. Uh, and you mentioned earlier, you're having a, a meeting with Congressman Garamendi today. Uh, the National Forest began a, a, a logging operation following the fire, and you just commented on it, uh, with zero input from, from the Public Works Department. Uh, they're utilizing our roads to haul the logs out. There was no consideration made. We weren't even made aware that they were doing it. Uh, until, uh, we got complaints from the general public that the roads were being destroyed. We went up there, and sure enough, they're, they're using our roads to, to haul the logs out. Elk Mountain Road is absolutely destroyed. It is, it is done. We cannot do anything with it. And frankly, I'm, I'm not going to do anything with it. I'm going to let the federal government figure it out. Uh, we, uh, ironically got a call from a contractor working for, uh, the State Cal OES, uh, complaining about the roads and that the, the conditions of the road were, were damaging his trailers as he was hauling his excavators up there. Um, I told him he's welcome to, to put cold mix in the potholes and fix the road, but I wasn't going to do it. Um, uh, because it's his operation as well that's, that's tearing things up. Um, we need to be, uh, we need to be putting some pressure on our federal and state folks, uh, to help us, uh, with the recovery on, on, uh, following these fires and, and specifically on those roads. So, uh, we're, uh, we're going to continue to do that.
Just for the record, I don't like to be corrected when it's worse, only when it's better.
I, I'm, I, I apologize in advance. I, like I said, I didn't mean to throw any salt on the wound there. But, you know, I, I, the situation is not good.
No.
And, uh, I think you all recognize that, and I just wanted to make sure that we had the right numbers.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Sabatier?
I do have one last comment I forgot to ask. And what, what is your, um, vacancy rate for your departments?
Sorry, I muted myself there, and I had a hard time getting it unmuted. Um, it's very low. Uh, we are, are, uh, I think we're, we're, I think we're completely full in, in, in the office. Where we are low is in our Engineering and Inspection Division. Um, we do have difficulty recruiting, uh, folks with engineering licenses and, and, uh, uh, so, so we do have some vacancies in Engineering and Inspection. Uh, I, to be honest with you, I have not, uh, been really active in, uh, trying to fill those positions. I was waiting to see what the outcome of the class and compensation study, uh, was going to come up with and, and with the hopes that our, uh, positions would be a little bit more attractive. Um, and, and so I, I really haven't been pushing that, uh, too hard. Uh, but our Road Department, uh, we're almost full, and, uh, we're, we're a hundred percent here in our, uh, in our administrative.
That's very good to hear. Very good to hear.
Okay, on these current budget units, um, I think that's how we're going to go ahead and will we approve these, or we're going to go through? I think we're going to do these in, in bundles, I think, because obviously separate departments are, uh, and Scott, you know, ultimately, I know we've got a lot under you, and thank you for stepping up and, uh, doing everything that you do for us and all of your workers and everybody in your department. So, uh, we know how critical you are to the, uh, success of this county, and just want to thank you and, and all of your staff for that. Um, but I think, I think we're going to go ahead and, uh, we will do these budget units. Um, so we're going to go ahead and open it up to the public at this point. Jake, can you open up the room?
Yes, I will open up the.
Yeah, go ahead, Rob. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I just had, I had one thing I wanted to add, and I, I, uh, I encouraged this after the valley fire because I saw it happen, but, um, I didn't think about Elk Mountain Road, but, uh, we, we, and I've talked to Scott about it early on, but I don't know if he recalls it or not. But what we need to do is adopt a policy that whenever we experience one of these disasters, that we automatically put a weight limit on the, the roads that are impacted, the county roads. Because i- in this case, there's not another option, but at least they would have to let us know if they were coming up there, they would have to have a permit of some sort. But luck on Red Hills Road, they were using that and they tore it up when they could have been using the state highway, one seventy-five, and, and take an extra three minutes. So, you know, at some point, we should probably do that so that we're not doing it in the middle of a disaster so that it automatically triggered, uh, it is triggered during a, um, some disaster like that.
Okay, Rob, thank you for that suggestion. Okay, any more comments from the board at this point?
Yes, uh, thank you for bringing that up, though, Scott, and, and explaining, you know, the, the, the logging situation. Um, I know that there's a lot of complaints, and I don't usually come forward with them because I, I know this, this has been discussed before, and I'm hoping that we can discuss this with the Congressman Garamendi as well.
Okay. All right, Jake, we'll go ahead and open up, uh, the room.
All right, I'll, uh, send an unmute request out to the Zoom room. Uh, if you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Hi, this is Jessica Pisca with the Coberry Council.
Hello, Jessica.
Hi, Scott, um, thank you for giving this report on the roads, and I do understand how difficult the funding is for, um, this. The, um, subdivisions in the Cobb area that had the pipeline improvement projects this summer, what, um, what is the strategy for getting those roads completed and repair, I mean, it's beyond repair now. But what is the timeline that you are considering for that? I don't see it on the budget for this next year, so, um, and we've talked about this several times, so I just wanted to check in with you again and, and see where you're at now.
Yeah, uh, the, that, that is on our radar. We've, we've kind of been waiting for, um, you know, we've been waiting for the water, uh, system and the water project to, to get completed. Uh, that is something that, um, we're, we're just going to need to do. We've, um, tried to pursue some funding, uh, for equipment, uh, to get in there and, and do that. Um, but it is on our radar. Um, you, you know, if we can get that done, um, we can, if we get that done in the next year, I'm, I'm, that, that would be ideal for us. But we need to get, get all that water system completed and all their, their testing done and everything. Uh, you know, live with it a little bit, make sure that everything's in, in good shape and, uh, but it is on our radar. I don't have a specific date for you, uh, but we'll, it, we're certainly something that we need to do. I don't have a specific date for you, uh but we'll it we're certainly something that we need to do.
Okay, is there any more cup uh public comment at this time? Okay, Jake, we'll go ahead and close the uh the Zoom room. We'll bring it back to the board for action on these budget items that we're presenting.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve budget items nineteen oh three, nineteen oh eight, thirty eleven, thirty sixty-two to thirty eighty-one, thirty-one twenty-two, thirty-one twenty-three, eighty-four sixty-three, eighty-four sixty-four to eighty-four seventy-two, eighty-four eighty-three to eighty-four ninety-two, ninety-nine oh five, ninety-nine oh seven, ninety-nine oh eight, ninety-nine oh nine, and ninety-nine eleven.
I'm sorry, Bruno, you froze up for a minute. Can you do that again?
You you can watch it, it's been recorded.
Yeah, uh is there a second? Okay, motion is second. Johanna, if you could do roll call.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall.
Hi.
Supervisor Scott.
Hi.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now the interim Community Development Department Director, Scott DeLeon, will present the building and safety, code enforcement, nuisance abatement, planning, and CSA number twenty-three benefit zone budget units. Scott.
Welcome, Scott.
Thank you. Well, as we talked about a little bit here, we're um uh you know, we're we're combining uh departments and and uh we're uh we're we're certainly excited about it. The um um the fiscal staff are changing uh changing seats here. I just threw one of them out and the other the other uh accountant just came in, so uh uh to to help me with any questions. So uh this um you you know, this this has been a challenge to to try to uh put these together. You know, with with bringing the administrative staff over to DPW admin, it's been it's been uh not difficult, but it's just been a a a pretty challenging exercise to uh distribute uh distribute the uh expenses and and overhead and the different things amongst the different budget units. Uh a- as your board is aware, I have proposed a cannabis division. Uh I I um I I think that that's absolutely critical uh for us in uh moving forward with cannabis and and uh getting getting the whole process more streamlined and and getting uh getting folks that are trained and and almost experts in the field uh working on those on on those applications and working on that program. My proposal had been got modified a little bit and uh I worked with administrative staff on on making those changes. Um it the the end result is all of the the positions that I had requested and and the way that we're gonna format this thing um is is pretty close to the way that I had proposed. Uh I did get all the positions that I that I wanted, so I'm appreciative of that. Uh I think uh you know, we'll live with uh we'll live with this uh for this year and see how this works. Um I I'm a little concerned about uh the tracking of revenue and the tracking of expenses, but um we're we're gonna work through that and and um uh see if we can um see if we can make that work and and uh I'm confident that uh uh it'll, well, I'm confident it'll work. I just I just want to see how uh I want to just see how uh how easy it is for us to work with uh at this end and and the tracking of revenue and expenses expenses. We're we're growing, we're building, uh uh we're we're uh developing a team approach up here, which uh I think we're all really excited about. Uh and with the changes and 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 those types of things, there are growing pains and there are uh challenges to overcome, uh but I think that we're tackling those head on. Uh Tokara Nicole Thomas, our our new deputy director, has just been uh awesome, uh been really a great addition to the team. Uh and we've got some new folks in there that have just brought in uh uh just great energy. And um uh we're we're making changes and and uh uh putting new things in place almost every week. And uh I I just really feel like there's some uh some synergy being created and some some energy being created up here uh in the division and 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 in all the departments and we're pretty excited about it. We're overwhelmed with cannabis, I will tell you that right now, um uh both legal and illegal. Uh it's just it's been a extremely challenging uh year uh or or uh spring and summer hasn't been a year. Sure feels like a year, but uh uh it's it's been uh a a real challenge to try to uh live with the ordinance and and um and get people uh get people uh their permits and those types of things. Um lots of challenges in the future and and we'll be bringing those uh to your board um uh as as we have the ability to do that. I don't have any real specific comments about uh the the various uh budget units. Um we um kind of resurrected code enforcement, uh which has been kind of off the off the radar for a few years, I think. Um and perhaps uh if you have specific questions about that, um Stephen Carter can address that. But code enforcement twenty-six oh three is uh has not been used for a while. Um and so we brought that back and um uh kind of working some things. Uh and a lot of the cannabis uh issues will be going into budget unit twenty-six oh three. Uh we retain nuisance abatement twenty-six oh four. Uh that will uh be specifically for uh the abatement of nuisance properties. Uh so that um that particular budget unit uh will not have cannabis-related issues with it. It'll just simply be uh for uh addressing uh complaints and issues on on properties and nuisance abatement of of those issues. One of the things I'd like to point out, and I'm gonna turn to that budget unit, um am I gonna find it? It's on uh page E one sixty-seven. You're gonna note that uh there's a a big difference between revenue and uh the appropriations for that project or for this budget unit. And um as I understand it, uh the the difference there, uh the 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 net cost, the two hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars, that's actually in uh in reserves. Uh that was a general fund contribution that your board made and uh it has not been spent. Uh and and so that is in our reserves and and um that is uh how that difference uh will be paid for. Um and I don't know if um Stephen Carter wants to uh chime in on that, but um that's that's uh that's how it's been explained to me. And um and so uh uh I know that that is a bit of a red flag when you see that that cost, but the those those dollars have already been appropriated uh and are in our uh in uh in our fund balance carryover. I don't really have any other comments. Um you know, the wildfire benefit zone, uh that is the uh that is the fund that was created for the abatement of nuisance vegetation uh related to uh the subdivisions in the Clear Lake River area and Buckingham area. Uh we uh will continue uh to um uh to abate properties. And um and to Supervisor Sabatier's uh point earlier, uh there there uh uh we can certainly come back to your board and uh make a presentation with specifics on uh what has been uh spent, uh what pro- properties have been abated. Uh there have been a handful of properties abated. Uh we have some contracts uh that uh that we have uh with uh various firms to do the work. Uh I know we ran into uh we ran into timing this year with respect to uh the abatement of properties uh with the early heat that we had in the spring. Uh it got us right into right into fire season pretty quickly. And so there were some properties that we uh we chose not to go after uh for fear of of actually starting fires uh uh in the uh the efforts to try to abate them. So um uh we can certainly do that at a later date. Uh with that, um I'll be happy to uh try to answer any questions that you have about those specific budget units.
So I I just want to weigh in a little bit. It's not, well, it's not necessarily a a budget thing um as much as just trying to correct information on that because I've heard it, you know, I heard it at a forum the other night, I heard it today. And the reality is, there's been more than eight properties abated. There's been over fifty abated, but most of them were done voluntarily on the effort of enforcement, going out and working with these folks. So we've only had eight that the county has to pay for out of that fund. And I agree with uh with Bruno, that hundred thousand dollars that was that was loaned initially should have been returned a year ago. I don't know why it's still in there and there should be uh, you know, close to a half a million dollars generated from uh from the property taxes in the last, well, the first first cycle was last year, so that should that amount should be uh updated somehow. But as far as the numbers of properties that have been abated, it's way more than eight, so just correct that.
Thank you, Rob. Supervisor Brown, I mean Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, and just to just to clarify, the only reason I brought up the number eight is because it's the only one that matters for the budget item of the amount of money that we actually spent. Granted, uh code enforcement time may have been spent to help get the compliance for the others, but that doesn't come directly from that benefit zone uh because that's only for abatement. The uh issue that I have is with the nuisance abatement. And maybe I'm looking at the wrong budget, maybe it's under code enforcement. Uh where there's the abatement funds, um I think it's under nuisance abatement, but for some reason I'm not catching it. Uh there we go, yeah, the the last one, fifty-five zero six, I'm guessing, is the um uh funding that we have for abating properties. And I'm asking Director DeLeon?
Yes.
And so right now, we're looking at a total of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars dedicated to this, correct?
Yes.
And if we look at the history of cost of abatements on properties, wha- what amount of properties are we potentially looking at with that level of funding?
That that's that's a pretty, that's a difficult question to answer because um it it depends on the level of of abatement. You know, you could get into a situation where if there was hazardous materials and and asbestos and 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 other things, you could you could spend the whole thing on one piece of property on, you know, I mean, the reality of that. So I I I don't know if I could put a uh uh I don't know if I could put a number of properties. I uh let me, do we have an average with uh ten fifteen, ten fifteen thousand? So it it's again, it's just difficult, depends on on uh, you know, if asbestos is involved with the cleanup, it's it it drives the cost way up. Uh you you know, um we could certainly put a a summary together of the properties that we've done uh here recently. Um but but I I it'd be difficult for me to give you a number of how many properties. I I would I would figure maybe fifteen to twenty thousand per property would be a good start. And then, you know, some are gonna be cheaper and some are gonna be more.
Right, I I think that uh a- and I do understand that my question is more rhetorical than it is specific because every property is different depending on what the cleanup looks like. Is it just vegetation cleanup? Is it garbage cleanup? Is it destruction of an actual building that needs to be condemned? Uh all those things make a difference, but I typically have not seen anything that costs maybe less than five thousand dollars for the easiest of the properties to deal with, and then it can go at a maximum of a a very large amount depending. And what I'm seeing is, if it is, let's just say, on average, about ten thousand dollars apiece, that's nineteen properties out of how many possible code enforcement cases that are currently being followed? And that's a huge amount that we're following right now. It's not a hundred cases, it's it's hundreds of cases. And so if we're looking at a hundred and ninety, we're looking at a very minimal. And again, I'm gonna bring us back to our Vision twenty-twenty-eight where we said cleaning up our communities with code enforcement was a priority and I don't see this budget making that a priority. Now, I know that uh anytime we move some money, we have to take it away from somewhere else, but at the same time, I think we do have money on the side and and I'm gonna probably see uh Ms. Hutchinson's eyes widen when I say this, but we have a rollover of about nine point five million dollars in our general fund right now. What can we do to at least double this number? Let let's let's be able to really clean up our communities and let's let's tell the public and let's tell our our staff, we're not just gonna push paper until we get compliance, we're gonna push paper. And if there's not compliance, we're going to actually make this happen. We're gonna take some action. And to me, out of the nine point five that's on a rollover that's still um in our general fund, asking for an extra two hundred thousand dollars is not a whole lot out of that and it makes an impact in our community and it sends a message.
Supervisor Scott?
I would have a question on that. Um I know it takes staffing when you when you go to abate a property. Um Scott, would you have the staffing if we were to give you more money to abate, to be able to abate more properties? Or are you kind of at the limit? I know we've seen a lot more abatements um recently and I'm I'm very glad to see those, but would you be able to abate more properties with more funding?
Well, our my proposed budget as uh an increase in staff in uh in uh code enforcement, um largely for uh cannabis. But yeah, I would I would say we would have the capacity uh if 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 we were asked to do that.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and 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 just, I know that that's gonna be a a a big a big lift for you uh once approved. Um I I we get a lot of calls from not just NIMBYs, but HMN NIMBYs. I say that because there's people that just call about their neighbors consistently and your your department handles that very well. But I know it's very difficult when you have cannabis on top of um regular, everyday uh business, so um yeah, I just wanted to mention uh how I've noticed you've been juggling, your department has been juggling those type of uh things.
We get we get a lot of those, yes. All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
And and correct me if I'm wrong, Director DeLeon, but typically when it comes down to the actual abatement, uh a lot of times from what I've been seeing, it's uh contracted out to one out of three companies in the area that typically do the abatements for us. I know there's one in uh Clear Lake Oaks. I believe there's one in Kelseyville and maybe Upper Lake. I forget where the the three are, but those are the three that I've been seeing.
That that's correct. We have standing contracts with with three different companies.
Right, and so I mean, the the code enforcement's already doing the work. They just can't take that last step of contracting with the the company to make that cleanup happen. We just end up at an impasse because we don't have any more funds inside the budget to be able to make those things happen. And so I think that that adding more money would not necessarily add that much more work. There's definitely a process to get those companies to take action, but what it does is it does send a message that we are here to clean up. Uh it's not it's not just a bluff with paperwork, uh we're we're gonna make it happen. Uh the other part is also, um and I've spoken with admin and I'm I'm gonna let it go for for this year, but I think that the cannabis division eventually needs to be its own budget sheet so that we can really see what money is going in and what money is going out so we can really uh keep things uh compartmentalized for the cannabis division to see how um self-sufficient it can be or if it requires other funds or if it requires fixing the the uh fees for the permits as people come into um CDD. And so I just wanna uh make that statement and hopefully by next year, we can make that happen.
Okay, Carol, did you uh?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go back and speak to the issue of, you know, whether or not to appropriate additional funds for the nuisance abatements in twenty-six oh four. Um as you can see, they're looking at the detail. Um the department requested a hundred and ten thousand. We already uh boosted that up by eighty thousand for the total of one ninety. Um we we understand that this is a high priority of your board. We we get it and the tie to economic development is is critical. to economic development is, is critical. And what I might suggest is that this is an area that we monitor, and we relook at this no later than mid-year, and if the department is able to spend the hundred and ninety, the increased amount from the, the actual request, then your board consider appropriating additional funds then. If somehow the department spent it sooner than mid-year, we can always come back at any time with a change to budget. So staff would, would be poised to appropriate additional funds when needed.
Okay, Carol. You know, Supervisor Sabatier, I know, obviously, it is a focus of ours, it's Vision 2028, cleaning up our properties, our, our applied property and everything, and, and we know setting on the board that we do have these abatements that come to us more often than not. Also, one other thing that was added into this is our vegetation abatement with code enforcement. I know that's another thing that we put into place through the county that also adds on to the tasks that are, are pushed to community development and code enforcement. And, you know, and somewhat I, I do agree completely with Supervisor Sabatier. I wonder if there's any way that we could talk about today during these budget allocations that instead of one ninety, we, you know, and this would be up to Supervisor Sabatier, but maybe, you know, a number of two hundred and fifty thousand instead of a hundred and ninety thousand would be something that would be, you know, a step in the right direction at this time. And I, I, I know a lot of work has gone into these budgets and other things, but, you know, just looking for a compromise here, one way or the other. But also what you presented, Carol, seems reasonable, but I just want to throw that out there for Supervisor Sabatier.
I'd, I'd be comfortable with the compromise. I, I think anything that moves it towards our complete end goal i- is the way to go, and making it more than what it is right now. And I, I, I agree with what Ms. Hutchinson said, which is it was increased by eighty thousand, but I know, and especially with having the conversation, that, that goes away real fast. And so the more we can add in there, the happier I will be, and I can be content with two fifty.
Ultimately, I don't know if any other board members wants to make that place.
I, I have, I have a suggestion on that.
Go ahead, Rob.
You could always do a mid-year budget transfer. I would spend the money down that you have, show that, you know, that, that it's, you know, it's being spent, there's no point budgeting it, it's just not going to be used, and then come back then. But I also think that, and I've, and I've tried to get this for a long time, but we need to go after the folks that we've already abated that owe us money, whether it be civil or whatever, but we have a lot of money out there that we've spent, it hasn't been recouped yet, so we need to work on that as well.
So we, we can do it either way, we'll, we'll just, you know, await the will of your board. We can add sixty thousand to make it two fifty, or we can monitor and address when the department has spent this down. The latest date would be mid-year, but if the department spent their way through it, it can be any time, we can come to your board any time, any agenda.
Okay, I guess when we're approving the budget units, you know, overall, I've heard a couple, you know, responses from board members, you know, and getting consensus, I think, is what we're looking for, and from my understanding, Supervisor Crandall, you give a thumbs up?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with it, either way, actually. Yeah, so if it's the will of the board to do the budget, the budget addition of sixty thousand dollars, I'm fine with that, but if it, if it's more feasible to wait, you can do that as well. It's going to be.
And, and I, I'm okay with it either way, too. The only thing, only reason I suggest that is it's, you know, sixty thousand is an arbitrary number, and, you know, if this, the hundred and ninety is used up in the first two or three months, you may want to come back and identify another two hundred thousand. So, you know, ideally, you'd have to come back no matter what, so you might as well come back with an accurate number.
So can I, can I make an offer?
Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
Director DeLeon, would it be, I, I don't think it is, but I'm going to ask you specifically, would it be a, a trouble to ask you to come back quarterly and let us know where you stand with the usage of these funds, where then we can in advance make sure you don't lose and go down to zero right away? We can make sure that it stays full however it is that we can keep it full. Because I think that six months, I want, I want to make sure your team recognizes that there's money to be used and not hold off, because when there's a, only a finite amount of money, then we wait till March to start spending it because we don't want to spend it all in the first three months. And so if you can check in with us every three months and let us know where we stand, then we can make the necessary changes whenever is needed.
And I'm totally all right with that. And I, I would actually propose just to leave the budget where it is, I, I very much appreciate the discussion and the consideration for additional funds. I, 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 I just very, very much appreciate that. But I'd like to leave the number where it is and, and let us do, just as you're describing, let us get to work and start spending these funds, and, and we'll have a much better idea of the projects and the, the sites that we want to tackle. We'll have a pretty good idea based on the prices that we're spending for other projects to know, and, and be able to make a pretty good educated estimate of what we're going to need. And again, I do appreciate the offer, I, I'd suggest we leave it alone and, and, and as presented, and we'll come back to your board, and I'm happy to do it on quarterly basis.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, then, and that's what we'll do. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know the presentations, so we will do as we have done in the past, we will open this up to public comment on any of these budgeted items or these budget units, and then we'll bring the budget units back for approval. So Jake, if you could open the room, please?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom floor. I've sent out an unmute request. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, we will go ahead and close the, the virtual room, and we'll bring back to the board for action on these budget units.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve budget item twenty-six oh two, twenty-six oh three, twenty-six oh four, twenty-seven oh two, and eighty-four seventy-five. I hope you got that, Supervisor Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we need a second on the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Johanna, go ahead with roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next, oh, go ahead.
It is currently twelve twenty-six, I know when we talked earlier, we were talking about a, a potential lunch break from twelve thirty-two. I guess on, on this item here, what we'd like to do, so we're not, we don't stop in the middle of it, and see if we could push through with these items here that we have next with Scott, and then we'll make sure to take a long enough break before your one o'clock, and then it may stretch it out that we come back at two thirty. So I'd like to, if that's okay with everybody, that we just move through and finish up with Scott, and then we will take our lunch break. Okay. All right, go ahead, Scott.
Good afternoon. I, I'll, I'll be relatively brief with this. As you know, Water Resources kind of came back to Public Works here in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And we're, we're, I think, doing a, a, a pretty good job here. We've got some great staff and, and just working on a number of different projects. Don't have any real specific issues to discuss other than, as we already mentioned, our administrative staff will be moving over to DPW Admin, and there will be a contribution from Water Resources back to DPW Admin for, for their costs. I did propose a Deputy Director of Water Resources position that will stay in Budget Unit Eighty-One Oh Seven, and that position will be handling the day-to-day direction and supervision of staff, and as part of the overall management scheme and, and program that I've, I, I want to develop for, for this large new department. We have some small flood zones that are frankly in trouble, and, and we're going to need to be coming to your board, there isn't anything that's going to get solved today, but there are some, some, some smaller zones that we're going to need to do something with, because the cost of doing business is, is exceeded what we're bringing in for revenue. But again, that'll be something that we'll be bringing, bringing to your board here in the near future, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you have regarding our Water Resources budgets.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, go ahead and open up for any questions from the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
On the Budget Unit Sixteen Seventy-four, the floor, the flood corridor property maintenance, the adjustment from fifty thousand to one million, over one million dollars, can you please provide some detail on that?
Yeah, that's, when we, when we purchased the properties in the reclamation district for the Middle Creek Marsh project, there's a, a portion of that goes into our budget for maintenance of those properties, and that's what that adjustment is.
Gotcha, okay. And then also, I, I noticed in the summary on top that it says leased land to rice farmer. Eventually, that will go away as well, based on what happens at the reclamation. What is the amount that we're getting from the rice farmers on that? Do you know?
He's thirty thousand, I believe, is the, the, the base agreement that we have with him. That number has changed over the, I mean, we, we've actually done a little less with him. There are some maintenance things that, that we are not doing that impact his ability to, to farm all of the available area. There's a pump, there's a pump that is in the district that we, we don't do any maintenance on, it's a small pump, and depending on the lake level, in the last couple of years, the lake's been too high and it's, it's rendered some of the land un-farmable, and so we've made some adjustments with him, but our, our base lease with him is thirty thousand.
Okay. And then I, I wanted to ask a question, and I'll give a, a moment for Anita to chime in and yell at me to that this is not the appropriate platform for this. But I, I do know that we, we have a situation here, and, and please know that I mean no disrespect to Napa County, but because of the fires that occurred in Napa County and what has occurred around Lake Bariessa, there is a very large chance that we're going to see an increase of folks coming this way, since it's right next door to come to our lake. And one of the things that Lake Bariessa has that we don't have are ramp fees, and I'm just looking for other ways of revenues to ensure that we can put that revenue back into our lake, since our lake is such an important piece of our tourism, an important piece of our economy. Is that something that you might be looking into in the near future, and is that something that would help you in your revenues needed to be able to do the, the work that's required for, from Water Resources?
Well, to be honest, we, it is not something that we have been looking at. We, you know, enforcement becomes an issue, and, you know, you know, I've, I've boated on Lake Bariessa, and they have the, the little things that, you know, they're unmanned, and you, you, you fill out a little, little envelope, and you put your fee in there, and, and somebody comes around and, and picks that up. But somebody also comes around and leaves you a notice that, that if you haven't paid the fee, that you need to, you need to drop the fee in before you leave at the end of the day, and, and there is, you know, there's an enforcement component of that that we don't have. That's completely notwithstanding some of the, the, the things I've heard in the past that, well, you know, we built these, we built these boat ramps with, with state grant funds, and, and the, the funding program and the funding agreements preclude us charging a fee, and, 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 you know, I've heard that, and, and, you know, I don't, I don't really know if that is still in play or, or, or not, but it's just, there's a, there's a, a number of issues that kind of complicate that, and, and those are the two that, that come to mind.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Anita.
Thank you. I would just ask everyone to remember that the, the, the body of water, Clear Lake, is a navigable body of water. It's a navigable water under the federal jurisdiction, which means it's extremely difficult to charge access fees to something that by law has to be open to the public. So you'll notice that with your quad of fees, you're, you're charging them for their recreational activity, but not for access. And the county over the years has always been very careful to tread very lightly around the navigable water issue under federal law, and only charge for things that are within its purview to charge for.
Okay, well, I.
Thank you for that clarification.
I, I appreciate the comments made, and we'll, we'll, we'll see in the future of that, what may be possible, but thank you.
Okay, Stephen, Stephen Carter, I think, Stephen, do you have a comment on one of the budget items?
Yes, in Budget Unit Eighty-One Oh Five, I need to bring a fix to your board. If you look on page E three oh seven, account twenty-three eighty, which is professional and specialized services, professional, just professional and specialized again, there's a negative five seven, five hundred and seventy dollars appropriated there. You can't have a negative, so we missed that one. So I would like to change that. I've already talked with the accountant for Water Resources under Scott, and we would like to lower account eighteen dash zero zero, maintenance buildings and improvements, down by five hundred and seventy, and then twenty-three eighty up by five hundred and seventy. So it's a net zero, just putting it in the right place.
Okay.
Could you redo those numbers? Because whoever makes the motion, they will do that during their motion, so I just want to make sure we get.
Okay, simply put, simply put, account eighteen, building and maintenance, lower it by five hundred and seventy dollars, the appropriation. Account twenty-three dash eighty, professional and specialized services, increased by five hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay. I don't know if that'd be specific or just with those suggestions, but thank you very much for that clarification. All right, if there are no more questions from the board on these budget units, and Scott DeLeon, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Jake, can you please open the Zoom room?
Yes, I will unmute the Zoom room here. I've sent that mute request out to the floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right.
Go ahead and close it up, bring it back, we'll bring it back to the board for action on these budget units.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Budget Unit One-Six-Seven-Two, One-Six-Seven-Three, One-Six-Seven-Four, Eighty-One-O-One, Eighty-One-O-Four, Eighty-One-O-Seven, Eighty-One-O-Eight, and Eighty-One-O-Nine as is, and Eighty-One-O-Five with the changes to account eighteen zero zero, maintenance buildings and improvements with an increase of five hundred and seventy dollars, and changes to account twenty-three dash eighty, professional and specialized services, professional and specialized, at an increase of five hundred and, or, sorry, a decrease of five hundred and seventy to eighteen dash zero zero, and an increase of five hundred and seventy dollars to twenty-three dash eighty.
Second.
Okay, Johanna, motion and second, please do the roll call vote.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Board, I'd just like to say thank you very much to, you know, our administrative staff, Carol and Stephen, were really great to work with, and I appreciated all their consideration.
consideration and the things that I had proposed. Also want to give a special thanks to all the administrative staff of DPW, CDD, and Water Resources. Tremendous work in preparing this new budget. Alicia Ayala, Lindsay Nolan, Sylvia Valdez, Jennifer Thorup, and Christine Hutt were absolutely amazing, and just really appreciate their help. And thank you very much for consideration today.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, with that, we are going to go to a, a lunch break. And I know we talked about going from twelve-thirty to two o'clock. I guess my question is to Carol, I guess you think we'll be able to get to stay on that same time schedule, or should we come back at two fifteen?
Uh.
Agenda review is the question, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. My request would be that we, that we take a full hour and a half, given the-
Okay, excellent. Well, go ahead. We're going to take lunch right now, and we will reconvene these budget hearings at two fifteen. Okay.
Okay, and those that are, those that are participating in agenda review, Jake is moving us to a, a separate breakout room.
All right, EJ, make sure to pass on those messages about the roads, if you could.
Yes, I will. I got it written down.
Yeah.
Then I say we hurry up and get started.
Yeah, I'm ready to get started, too. There you go, Rob. Thank you very much.
This vehicle is here, so.
All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene our budget hearings. It is exactly two fifteen is what I got, so we're going to go ahead and, and reconvene. We are currently with, we're doing our district attorney, who I see is here, Susan Cronus is on. And so we're going to go ahead and reconvene. Stephen, I don't know if you want to do the introduction like you have been doing?
So, sure. Next up is District Attorney Susan Cronus. We'll be presenting budget units for District Attorney, Victim Witness, DA, Asset Forfeitures. And the first page for that is E eighty-six. And I'll turn it over to Susan.
Okay, well, thank you so much for, especially for being in the spot after lunch. So I will try to be brief. And so anyway, so I am speaking for the units, the District Attorney, Victim Witness, and of course, Asset Forfeiture. In regards to the District Attorney's Office, staffing continues to be an issue. We've had two cases at least where we've had individuals to, trying to hire individuals for Deputy District Attorney, where they wanted to come here, but there was higher pay in another county. So that is unfortunate. We do have a current recruitment for a Deputy District Attorney, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get one on board here. I want to basically cover in a little bit of detail the impact of COVID- nineteen on court proceedings since March twenty-twenty. And I don't know, I know that you know somewhat of what's going on with the courts, because they've been asking to use county facilities, the fairgrounds, et cetera. I'm just going to go over that briefly. So as, we have not really had a jury trial, I think, in about five months. And the Chief Justice of the State and the Judicial Council of the State have ordered extensions back in April, I believe, that would extend the time limits that we have to prosecute cases if, if the person did not waive time. And then there's also a significant change for, due to COVID, in regards to a zero bail schedule that was implemented, and we're still under that limited bail schedule, still on, on locally, under local orders. So that has made a dramatic decrease in the jail population. And so what does that mean for our office? Well, we've started to do jury trials as of September second. We're doing one jury trial at a time right now. The jury selection is being done at the fairgrounds, and then the case moves to the courtroom once they have the jurors selected. Starting Octo, September thirtieth, they're going to try to start two jury trials at a time. So they're going to do jury selection Wednesday, and then Thursday for another case, and they're going to try to start that the thirtieth. And that process, I believe, will continue to the end of the year. So basically, we're reduced in the number of jury trials that we are doing versus what we were doing before. The bottom line is that the felony cases where the defendant is out of custody, or has waived time, or both, will start to stack up next year. And what I foresee is a very hectic pace next year for Deputy DAs and other personnel in this office. So trying to fill these positions as, to the extent we can this year is very important, because we're hoping to be able to train them before we're have the deluge in, in next year. Now, regarding misdemeanors, hundreds of those cases have been put off until next year already. And there's a large percentage of individuals who have not appeared on citations. And so warrants will have gone out and will continue to go out, and that will be a big caseload in misdemeanors, I think, into next year, when they start showing up, or in custody or out of custody. So I'm hopeful to get a misdemeanor Deputy District Attorney hired this year, so we can train that individual. So that's basically what's going on with the courts. We are doing a lot of Zoom meetings in the courts, court appearances through Zoom, which has been very helpful. And I do think it does save time. And I think the courts intend to use Zoom in the future, to the extent possible. I think they intend to continue arraignments through Zoom, as well as civil cases, which could impact the asset forfeiture cases. So that's one thing that will reduce a little bit amount of time and jumping around between courtrooms physically. In regards to our Victim Witness Office, I, I don't know if you want me to go through these individually, or I can just do them all at once and take questions at the end.
I think that's the way it's been going all day. If you can go through them, and then we'll open it up to the board for questions at the end.
Yeah. So in regards to Victim Witness, obviously, the increase in jury trials, I think, is likely to start next year. So our Victim Witness, Witness Advocates will be very busy. I also have a, a major case coming up in October that's going to require their, a lot of their services for witnesses. And so it's, on a separate matter, in regards to Victim Witness, it's very important to proceed now with a forensic interviewer position. So we have a dedicated trained interviewer at Victim Witnesses that is available on short notice, because the faster that we can do these interviews, the better. So our Victim Witness, they were able to get an emergency grant from the state to address COVID issues. And this money owes about six thousand, six hundred dollars. This money was used to refurbish the Hope House interview room to review, reduce COVID transmission. That was really important. We also have, were able to get other equipment to help advocates who are working from home. And so I just want to thank the, the Carol and the board for their quick approval of that grant. It came up really quick, and I, I really appreciate people jumped, jumped through hoops to get, so we could get that. And of course, Doris and Crystal as well, that worked on the grant application. In regards to Asset Forfeiture, it's the same as always. We never know when the laws are going to change to limit the amount of, the circumstances where we can forfeit money in drug cases. And so we do use the money for various things. We have contributed money to the prosecutors' diversity projects sponsored by CDAA using that money. Think that's an important project to try to get more diversity. People bring more people, diverse people into becoming prosecutors. Also, I, I think, I would think the bottom line with Asset Forfeiture is, is that we want to basically try to not spend a lot of that money to reserve it for contingencies in the future, so we, we have that money when, when it's needed. So that's my presentation. So I'm open for questions, and I do have Doris Langford here to help me answer questions.
Okay. Go ahead and turn it over to the board for any questions for Susan at this point? Supervisor Sabatia?
That too, Ken. Hear you.
There we go.
There we go.
All right. Thank you very much. Sorry I wasn't here earlier. We were finishing up our conversation with Congress Garamendi. Apologize for missing a portion of that presentation, and hopefully this was not answered within the presentation, so it's not a duplication of information. But I'm just kind of curious about, I see here you have thirty-point-seven-five staff, and twenty-two total for the Child Support Services, and wondering what your vacancy rate is for all that?
Well, we're, we're not part of Child Support Services.
Oh, I thought that was one of them that we were looking at.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And vacancy rate?
For the District Attorney's Office only?
Yeah.
I think five unfilled, five unfilled, I believe.
Which, and, and those would all be District Attorneys overall, or not District Attorneys, but Attorneys overall, not Legal Secretaries or anything like that?
Different, different positions.
Two District Attorneys.
Two, two Deputy District Attorneys, investigator, and legal secretary, one legal secretary.
Okay.
And we're just having an investigator retiring tomorrow.
Now, that makes it tough, because out of thirty, that's quite a bit. Appreciate the answer.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, any more questions from the board? For, for Susan, on these budget units she was just presenting. Okay. It seems that there's many questions or concerns, at least at this point on the budget. I want to thank you for getting this put together and presenting today, as we have been doing. We will go ahead and open this up for public comment. Jake, can you open the room?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom floor here. All right, I've sent out an unmute request. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
I don't know how to spell that.
Okay. All right, Jake, go ahead and close it up. We'll bring it back to the board. Thank you, Jake. And I did not ask, Bruno, I will just ask, there's no one in the chambers?
Still alone here with Sam.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm. All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and bring back the board for action on this, on these budget units we presented.
I just want to apologize to Bruno. I wanted to wait till you got here, but everybody insisted on just moving ahead, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm so sure, I'm so sure.
Not under oath, are you?
And you know me, it only takes three to move forward, so let's go ahead and get done.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve twenty-one-ten, twenty-one-thirteen, or budget units twenty-one-ten, twenty-one-thirteen, and twenty-one-sixteen.
Second.
Motion and second. Johanna, could you please do the roll call vote?
Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Susan, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much.
So now the Register of Voters, Maria Valdez, will present the Register of Voters' Budget Unit fourteen fifty-one, which is found on page E thirty-seven. Maria?
Hello. Good afternoon.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Oh, yeah. Good, good afternoon.
It's after lunch. So this is my first budget that I presented to the board, I'll be presenting to the board, so I just want to give you a brief overview of our department. The Register of Voters Office is responsible for conducting all federal, state, county, municipal, and local district elections in Lake County while following strict state and federal regulations. This department is responsible for all components of election management, including voter registration, poll worker recruitment and training, locating and reserving polling place locations that meet accessibility requirements, ballot creation, voting system security, ballot processing and voting, vote telling, community outreach and education, candidate services such as candidate filing and campaign finance filing. In addition, we also verify all statewide and local petitions, referendums, initiatives, recall, and candidate filing in lieu of, on, and nomination signatures. We currently are preparing for the November third, twenty-twenty presidential general election. This election will include presidential candidates from each qualified political party, congressional offices, legislative office, county supervisor, District Five runoff, candidates for both cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport, three school districts, and one special district, as well as twelve state propositions, and one local measure on the ballot. Our department is currently staffed with three full-time permanent employees, and we recently hired one half-time permanent employee. I will be interviewing this Friday to attempt to fill the fourth full-time permanent position. This will be the second recruitment to try to fill this position, because at the last recruitment, the person did not accept the position due to the wages that we pay. And I'm sure you've heard that from all the other departments. So I'm hoping to fill this before the election. During peak elections, in addition to permanent staff having to work many additional hours, it is always necessary to hire extra help employees to assist us with the heavy workload and the many tasks needed to be completed in a short period of time. Our budget is primarily funded by general fund discretionary revenues with limited reimbursement from the state and local jurisdictions. We just recently signed into a, an additional contract that the state provided for COVID, which I'm hoping to be able to get reimbursed for as much as I can for the, you know, in addition to whatever the extra costs associated due to COVID. Some of the increases in our budget is, is associated with the November election. We'll have, we'll be purchasing an additional scanner and workstation for our voting system. We've recently purchased the five vote-by-mail drop boxes, which are due to be delivered this month and in place for the November election. And the postage for mailing ballots to all registered voters and the return postage paid costs will be additional. And some of the accomplishment, accomplishments that we had in the last fiscal year were conducting two elections, a district election in November, and recently the presidential primary in March. The department successfully processed over thirteen thousand voter records, new and updates, and we received a hundred percent reimbursement of the state, for the, from the state for the voting system purchased in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Let's see. There's many challenges in our department, like always, trying to process and maintain all our voter registrations and keeping current on a daily basis. But we have to follow up with a lot of correspondence- But we have to follow up with a lot of correspondence for incomplete and missing information. We ask a lot of our workers, both permanent and extra help, because during peak elections, we ask that they work long hours, evenings, and weekends in order to be able to complete and certify within the timeframe. By the time one election cycle is almost complete, we start working on the next election cycle. I would like to thank Carol and Stephen for all their assistance in helping me put together my budget for this fiscal year. And I would like to thank the board for allowing me to use the Board of Supervisors Chambers during the two-week period and on Election Day to be able to work with the COVID and social distancing guidelines that we'll need to be following in our office. So I think with that, that's all I need to have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maria. Go ahead and bring it back to the board for any questions for Maria Valdez, our Register voter. Go ahead.
So I guess the question, I don't want to force our registrar of voters to be in a different situation that they're in, but visually, we all know that our registrar of voters department is in very tight quarters. I've experienced it during the height of the general election when I volunteered some of my time up there, and it's even tighter during that time as all the ballots come in, they got to be placed in a specific area. The mail-in ballots are being counted. It's 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 not a mess, it's organized, but it's it's very claustrophobic in there. And I know that at one point, the previous registrar of voter was seeking out another location for the department to be in and wondering if Ms. Valdez would be looking at the same thing potentially. Since nothing has changed at this point, they're still in the exact same cubicle that they they are in. And the reason I ask this is because I do not see anything on here that would allow her to do so. I see rents and leases, but that there's nothing enough that would provide her with the ability to find a more comfortable office space. Of course, COVID nineteen might have offered some opportunities, but I just want to put that out there and hear from Ms. Valdez to see what her thoughts are on that.
So I appreciate your concern for that. You know, we've always been able to manage and work. The conditions have been the same for a long time, but I just figured this time with the budget and due to COVID, my primary focus was trying to make sure that we can comply with all the additional requirements given to us by the state. I mean, maybe in the future, I might be coming to the committee. You know, the county has a committee where I could come and ask to look into spacing issues. But I think right now, at this given time, I think right now I will wait and look into it further. Maybe get in communication with Carol and, you know, the Space Committee and see if they can find a solution to it. Like I said, it's been like this for a long time, but you know, we will be able to manage this election, thankfully, by using the Board of Supervisors Chambers. We will be able to spread the, you know, the workspace.
Right.
Thank you, and Carol, go ahead, I know you did have a comment, but I think.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that Supervisor Sabatier is absolutely right. When the previous registrar of voters was here, we did have discussion with the Space Committee about the possibility of finding some alternative space. And then our office supported her in looking around at various options. There were no options inside existing county space. So had we been able to move forward, it would have been leased space. And and we haven't had those conversations with Ms. Valdez since she returned, but but we're happy to have that when the timing is right for it. Certainly, the office that that the election staff and the auditor controller share are tight. And as much as the election staff space is probably the tightest, the auditor controller could very well use the space as well. So there are certainly some good reasons to look at that again. When she is ready, we'd be glad to support her.
Okay.
Appreciate the the conversation.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions from the board for this, but these budget units that were presented from Maria? All right, Maria, thank you very much for the presentation. What we're going to do now is we're going to open it up to anyone in the public to have public comment, and we'll bring you back to the board to finalize your budget units. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and Jake, if you can open the room.
All right, yeah, I will open up the Zoom floor here. I've sent a unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, we'll go ahead and close it up, bring it back to the board for action.
Right.
Mr. Chair, move to approve Budget Unit fourteen fifty one for the Register of Voters.
Second.
Motion in the second. Johanna, would you please do the roll call vote?
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Maria, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just say one more thing real quick? It's just, I'd like to thank Dean Eichelmann from the Health Department for helping me procure some of the PPE supplies needed for the poll worker polling locations on Election Day.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
All right, so now the County Librarian Christopher Veach, sorry about that, Christopher, will present County Library Budget Unit and Library Improvements Budget Unit, which can be started on E eight two eighty one. Don't tie, sorry.
Hello, so I am Christopher Veach, the County Librarian. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. These two units, six oh two two and six oh two three, support the operations of the library to promote reading, literacy, and lifelong learning in Lake County. We were asked earlier in the year to be fiscally conservative, and that's what I've tried to do with this budget. The main library fund, one twenty five, Unit six oh two two, is primarily funded with a dedicated property tax approved by the voters in nineteen seventy four. So those property taxes make up the majority of all revenues. A very small portion of revenue is provided by library fines, fees, charges for printing, copying, and meeting room rent, and a grant funds the adult literacy program. So on the expenditure side, you will notice a decrease in account one dot eleven, permanent salaries. This is due to the retirement of two longstanding employees, and these positions were both replaced at thirty-two hours per week instead of forty, which represents a slight reduction in staffing for the library and a slight salary savings. As you heard earlier in this budget proceedings, in January, the minimum wage will be increasing. Library positions as a whole are on the lower side of the salary scale. And so I did want to point out that soon the majority of staff will be affected by these minimum wage increases. We're all getting, we're all approaching those minimum wage, that minimum wage. You'll also notice increases in twenty thirty special departmental expense. This is the account where most library materials and subscription services are paid from. And so this increase will help us replace outdated volumes in our collection of physical materials as well as support the increased use of digital materials since, that we have seen since the pandemic. Also this year, with the focus on economic development, we'll be offering a video database with on-demand job training courses that will be accessible for free with your library card. So this database will be useful to individuals to update their skills or earn certifications in our community. Also, it will be available for businesses who want an easy-to-use training resource for their employees, and that will be available for county departments as well. So Budget Unit six oh two three is supported entirely by community donations and is used to add to the collection of library materials as well. So that concludes my summary. Thank you for listening, and if you have any questions about the library budget, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Christopher. We're going to go ahead and ask the board, does the board have, go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much, Mr. Veach, for that. I was looking at the bottom of your appropriations and the account eighty dash eighty. I'm wondering if that was a situation like we resolved last time to have a negative financing uses interfund reimbursement on the appropriations? Just wondering what that might be.
I believe that represents the use of, I believe it's called the CAN grant from the county to support the purchase of, it's reimbursing the purchase of the materials for education for community resources regarding marijuana.
Gotcha.
Addiction and those kinds of things.
Gotcha, okay, thank you for that. And then the increase for the literacy grant, is that due to having matching funds needed or?
Yes, that that's an increase in the amount of the grant given to us by the state. The adult literacy program is actually receiving the same amount, but there's a division of the adult literacy program called the Families for Literacy Program, and that is receiving an additional grant this coming year.
But this says it's an appropriation, that's why I was confused.
Oh, sure, so you can see that being received in the revenue side on fifty four ninety, I believe it is, state aid other.
Gotcha.
And it's slightly higher because there's funds from last year that we have not yet spent.
Okay. Okay, that explains everything I needed, thank you so much. And and it's good to see, I don't know what, you don't have the specific numbers of what's been going on necessarily during COVID. I know you've done a great push for the digital portion of the library to really be accessible to the public, including online library cards rather than having to come into person, but just seeing that there was already a fifteen percent increase in library materials during that time period you have on your summary is, that's really good news, so good job.
Yes, and actually, our digital circulation this August compared to August last year is up fifty eight percent.
Wow.
So it is leveling off a little bit, but it is greatly increased.
That's great.
Okay, any question, any more questions or comments from the board for Mr. Veach?
No questions here, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Veach.
Thank you, yeah, no question.
Thank you for your presentation, Christopher. We're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at this point. Jake, if you could go ahead and open the room.
All right, yeah, I will unmute the Zoom floor here. I sent out an unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and close the room, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I had one more, and I apologize for that. On the, both of the professional services on twenty three eighty and twenty three ninety, there's, it doesn't show me the actuals, which might help me better understand it, but there's a total drop of seventy or eighty thousand dollars or approximately of professional services, professional specialized services. Kind of wondering what that might look like as far as what that might be dropping.
Are you looking at twenty three ninety?
Yeah, both twenty three eighty and ninety. Oh, no, sorry, twenty three eighty increased it by thirteen thousand, so yes, twenty three ninety.
So twenty three ninety is the A eighty seven plan. It's the amount, since we have a special fund, that's the amount that the county charges us for administrative fees. And it's it's governed by the A eighty seven plan, so you could take that up with the auditor who oversees that plan about why that increase or why that, why it's that decrease, but it does go up and down from year to year depending on the use, the library's use of other department's services.
Well, it sounds to me like if if it's dropped and it's only to pay for the administration portion of it, then that's not a problem. I was wondering if it was outside services that would be eligible to those who frequent the library?
No.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll bring back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approved Budget Item sixty twenty two and sixty twenty three.
Second. Second by Supervisor Crandall. Johanna, if you could do the roll call vote?
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christopher.
So now the Assessor Recorder, Richard Ford, will present the budget units for the Assessor, the Recorder, Recorder Micrographics, Recorder Modern.
Everyone hear me?
Yeah. Recorder Modernization and.
Everyone hear me, actually?
Yes. Yes.
Everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
But you must have it playing in your office, you'll need to turn the volume down.
Okay.
Sounds like you got Granicus going as well.
Yeah, if you have Granicus going, turn the volume down.
Okay.
And the last.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, I can't really hear you guys, but I'll do my best.
Well, we can still hear Granicus going, you can still hear Granicus going in the background.
So you may just want to turn Granicus off then, Rich, and just be with us in Zoom.
Okay.
You can turn the volume up so you can hear us.
Okay, give me one second.
Sure. Stephen is still introducing your budget, so go ahead, Stephen.
Perfect.
The last one, Budget Unit is Recorder, Vitals, and Health Statistics. And he, the Assessor Budget Unit starts on page E twenty four. And now turn it over to Rich.
Okay, can you hear me now as a reverb?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so I'm going to separate it into pretty much two different sections. Let's go from the Assessor and then go to the Recorder with all the trust funds. So as we know, the Assessor assesses the taxable property within the County of Lake jurisdiction, and it's all different types of property. So it's commercial, presidential, vacant land, business property, boats, and the like. It approximately is about fifty to fifty-five percent of the county budget. And it's approximately, what the county gets of every taxable dollar is about twenty-three percent, give or take. So it's, you can see it's a pretty important business unit, not just for the county, but for the county as a whole, because it funds about the schools, give or take about sixty percent of their budget comes from property taxes, well as the cities get a portion and the districts get a portion. But I wanted to just go through a few highlights, a few wins of things we've done this year. Number one, a couple of years ago, we had Prop eights, and let me explain Prop eights. I've done it a few times before, but let me explain it again. A Prop eight is basically when you buy a property, and let's use an example, you buy a property for three hundred thousand dollars. Couple of years later, the market comes down and the property is only worth two hundred thousand dollars. You can apply to get a reduction, and it's a temporary reduction, and it's called a Prop eight reduction. We, when I first took office, had about ten thousand eight hundred of those Prop eights dating back to essentially two thousand eight. We have had that all the way up until a couple of years ago. And just recently, as of this year, we are under six thousand of these. So that's a definite big win. That's a big catch-up of not just people being put on the correct value and being brought back to what they should be according to the market, but that's a good win overall for the revenue for the county. Another win that we've had is we have recently, in the last couple of years, as soon as about two years ago, we had overhang of past properties and transfers. And this is when you change ownership, you sell your property, it has to be revalued. At that point, we had about hangover of about fifteen hundred records that needed to be processed. And we had from the current year about five hundred to a thousand. This year, we, between past records and current records, both added up together, we're only at one hundred fifty. So that's a huge, you know, step in the right direction. Another one of the wins that we've had is we are closer to advanced certification in our county. On a lot of our appraisers, we have a lot of very new appraisers. Average time is about a year and a half, lacking a lot of experience, but we've been pushing a lot of training. So what that means is we have state-required certification. And when you first start off, you take an initial test, you get a certification. At that point, for the county, as far as costs, they are required to do twenty-four hours of continuing education, and there's a cost to that. But as we move the staff through training, um, we get them advanced certification, which takes four um, entry level classes and two advanced classes to get there. Each one takes about a week in Sacramento to accomplish. Um, our reduction on our cost of um, training goes down to only twelve hours per year uh, for continuing education, which is a cost savings, but it's also an improvement of the staff. Um, we have been pushing our staff in the last couple of years um, to get advanced certification, and we have now at this point about four staff that are one or two classes away from advanced certification, which is a huge improvement. When I first started um, office, we had one close advance, um, one person that was one class away from advanced certification. Um, and we had a retired person that was advanced certification. Now we will, within probably a year or two, depending on what the training schedule is this year, um, during the COVID situation, um, we are more than likely to have five to seven um, possibly at advanced level or above, um, which is good for our office as far as being able to um, do accurately what we need to do. Um, so those are some of the wins we've, we've had. Um, I wanted to call out a couple of the odd things in my budget for twenty-one, uh, for eleven twenty-three, and then we'll go into twenty-seven oh seven. The way I look at my budget, a lot of times I look at everything in total, as far as twenty-seven oh seven, eleven twenty-three kind of combined. Um, and we'll explain that a little bit. Um, one of the odd things that has come up, it has been in the last couple of years, is when you look at revenue of fifty-four ninety state aid, um, that is a grant. Um, and it's a grant to assessors to help the assessors actually improve on their accuracy, improve on their processing. Um, we have applied for that, I actually sat on a state uh, board for the CAA um, to the Department of Finance and lobbied for that for small counties. Um, and our matching went from fifty um, fifty percent to about a third. Um, and so we get ninety thousand a year um, to do a grant, um, and we use that to try and get our physical characteristics in the system, which will allow us to be a lot more efficient down the road. Um, and we're also scanning the um, records at the same time. But we basically get sixty thousand dollars, we put up thirty thousand dollars, and we've done this three years in a row. So um, that kinda comes down to the next one on the appropriation side of twenty-three eighty. You can see that there's two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars in there, and last year there was a hundred eighty-three. Um, essentially what that is, is that's the ninety thousand dollars times three, so essentially a hundred eighty thousand of that being out of period or from the last two years, and then we have spent already twenty-three thousand of that. So if you net all that down, it comes out to your two hundred forty-seven thousand. Um, looks rather large, but once we spend it, um, you know, it'll go down to zero. Our hope is that the grant continues and we'll use it for other things in the future. This expense will probably carry forward, not just from this year, but also for next year in the same manner that the um, the a hundred eighty thousand is carrying forth this year. Um, trying to think, what else is that um, that noticeable? I, I guess I can draw my attention a little bit to twenty uh, twenty-nine fifty, which is travel. Um, we put some money in there for travel, and part of that is due to what I explained about the advanced certification. When you take a, one of the classes, whether it be the minor level classes or the upper division classes or the advanced level classes, um, they require that you go to Sacramento, and essentially I'll describe the class, you show on a Monday about midday and you start doing calculations until about Friday morning. Um, and that's the way the classes are, they're not remote. Um, so it's gonna be a little different, um, what they offer this year, but our hope is to get um, the last couple of people that are right on track, um, moving along to get to advanced. And so it is gonna take some cost. I don't know even if, and they have not announced yet, if they're going to um, do it remote, if there still would be a cost, because it's very possible, it's put on by the Board of Equalization at the state level, um, not a local thing at all. Um, and that's probably the biggest um, things that pretty, pretty much call out at that point. Um, I think, let me throw the last one, we do have one vacancy. Um, we have two people sit in as interim, in our assistant and our chief. Um, we hope to have those go permanent here soon. Um, the one vacancy, and as I described, um, we have very low experience in our office, but still have been able to, you know, achieve some wins. We probably have four to five years um, still to catch up all the way to where we should be, um, which means we're out of compliance, um, but to be perfectly honest, we were out of compliance the first day I showed up. Um, so we are much better than we were the first day I showed up. Um, but we're still gonna need a little bit of help as we go forward. Um, but those are the, probably the big bogeys in eleven twenty-three. Um, any questions on that before I kinda go into twenty-seven oh seven, which is kinda wrapped up with the trust funds?
No, uh, kinda what we've been doing all day, uh, Rich, is we kinda been going through both and then um, as people have questions, we'll go out. At the end, yeah.
Perfect, no problem, so let's jump into twenty-seven oh seven. So twenty-seven oh seven is the recorders. So the recorder essentially has um, three missions. Um, and the missions that you're gonna have is we record documents, and we record um, upward to three hundred different types of documents, that doesn't mean all of them come in every single day, um, but it is a key um, economic office, meaning legal documents come through our office, um, contracts come through our office, deeds come through our office. A lot of things that make the economy go around come through our office. And our missions are to basically record those documents, um, archive it, which is a sense of indexing to prepare it, and then make it public, which basically makes the public or anybody who wants to see it have the availability, um, availability of those documents. Um, so it's a, it's a pretty important office. Um, as far as some of the wins that we've had, we continue, and you've heard me say it multiple times, we continue to do training. Uh, we continue to do training in the morning, I will tell you, it's been a pretty challenge with the COVID, um, and we're getting back to trying to do possibly even some on Zoom because we still have some people teleworking. Um, we are um, becoming a lot more flexible with our training, um, and flexible with our skills, and able to move people around when possible, um, partly because um, and some other departments described it, we have actually developed people that have moved on to other positions. While they are still within the office, um, and so if we really get shorthanded, I'm able to basically move them over and they can actually work in a very temporary basis um, in some of those positions, which really helps us um, as far as being able to cross-train. Um, goals, um, you guys have heard, and we plan on bringing it, the resolution in probably a week or two um, for e-recording, um, as I've explained before, that is about a two-year process. We are a couple of months into it, and once we get the um, resolution through, that will set kind of the pace of what's going on. Some of the challenges there is making sure that our staff can handle the technology. Um, and basically it's um, the reason we haven't taken it on earlier is, is just that reason. Uh, we definitely just weren't prepared on understanding the technology and being prepared to do it. The last thing you wanna do is go forward when your staff can't um, handle exactly what we're taking on. So the other thing I wanted to make a point of is when I took um, office, I think in twenty, twelve thirteen-ish as an example, um, recorders used to pull about a hundred fourteen thousand, issues in twelve thirteen as an example, from general fund. Uh, we currently give back um, forty-three thousand as of this year alone, so that's about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar swing, that was based on fees being woefully um, undermarket compared to what the other fifty-eight counties or fifty-seven counties were doing. Um, and that has made us fully funded, um, as well as it helps contribute or um, cover some of the cost in the assessor's office. Um, so that's, also has one vacancy, and we are looking for, um, it's actually a new position we are looking for. And it's not exactly a new position, and that's what will lead into the next three funds. Um, when it comes to twenty-seven oh eight micrographics, um, we are transferring money over to the recorder to cover a headcount, so we're not asking for any money on the additional headcount, we're asking for. Um, and how that headcount came about is we had two retired people that came in part-time to do indexing. Um, and they had a lot of experience, and they came in part-time, and we usually put in about twenty-something thousand dollars for them um, from micrographics, because that's what they were doing. Now, since they were, basically have retired officially and um, they're not coming back part-time at all, um, we cannot find another retired person that does indexing, not to that level and not to replace it. So the best way to do that is actually hire somebody and train them. Um, it will not have any um, general fund cost, and that's where you see a big um, switch between uh, twenty-three ninety-one and a, I think it's eighty-eighty, yep, eighty-eighty, um, and that's where you're gonna see the fifty-two thousand come over between those two, and that's what it's trying to do. Uh, micrographics is essentially indexing, which helps us with our missions um, to record the document, but it's our second part, which is archiving documents, indexing them, and then making ready for public. Um, twenty-seven oh nine is recorded modernization. Um, we charge a fee um, that comes through, it's done by the state in um, basically the rules that we charge a fee, and that fee is set aside to modernize the recorder's office, partly because it is such a um, economic driver as far as documents go, and they wanna make sure that we are as best we can on um, the proper technology and we're not too far behind. Um, then let's go to twenty-seven ten, we are the keeper of vital records. Um, as an example, if you um, have a baby, initially the birth certificate will be the with health department, and after a certain period of time, it will end up in our office for record keeping. Um, and if you down the road need a copy of that, you come to our office, and that's what this is provided for. Um, the twenty-seven oh eight, twenty-seven oh nine, and twenty-seven ten are not general funds. Um, they're basically um, funds that are collected, used for a very specific purpose, I can't just use them for anything. They have to be used what they're, uh, what they're called out for. Um, but they're not really at the discretion of um, let's say the board or, or anybody else to really, you know, dip into. Um, I can't even dip into them, to be honest, unless it's used for micrographics, modernization, or vital records. And they have to be used exactly for the purpose that they're collected for. I think that's about all I have to go over, is any uh, any questions past that?
All right, Rich, thank you very much, go ahead.
I had some, but you answered them when you went back and forth on the budget, so it helped answer those, so I, thank you, I didn't have, I don't have any now.
Great.
Okay, uh, any other questions from the board at this time? On the budget units presented from uh, Mr. Richard Ford? Okay, seeing none, it doesn't seem like uh, there are any questions at this point uh, from the boards. Okay, uh, Richard, thank you very much for your presentation today, thank you very much for all the hard work your office does. We realize how important it is to the success of the county, so thank you very much for you and all your employees and what you guys do. So um, and that goes for everybody, but I just have you now, so thank you very much. Um, we're gonna go ahead and open it up, up, there we go, Supervisor Sabatier?
All right. I, I just uh, had a thought, and I know that it's not necessarily just Mr. Ford's um, position for this, uh, but I know him and I have had a conversation about property taxes sent out to those who have lost um, structures or homes, and I know that we had about nine properties that were impacted by the fires. Uh, just curious if that might um, be sent out with a reassessment prior to being sent out?
Now, which fire are we talking about?
Uh, the um, LNU complex?
LNU complex.
That had some properties down in uh, in District One that were impacted?
Um, that would be not, um, not gonna happen in this season, just because um, the treasurer just extended the role. In fact, they just extended the role or are doing it basically today. Um, and so that's gonna create the bills, um, so there's, we're, we're kinda past that window. Um, as far as there, there might be a way to interject it, but we don't even have the information on it yet, to be honest. Usually we get a um, CAL FIRE report that kind of starts to let us know some of the information. Um, at least that's how it's kind of been processed in the past. Uh, we then usually, if we can and have the staffing for it, go out and visit the property. Takes a while to process it, um, and so that probably for sure will not be in the season, um, not just due to the, the timing of it. Um, so, yeah, that's-
Okay, um, I do see the auditor controller has put her hand up, so uh, Kathy, go ahead. Kathy unmute herself, Jake?
I have requested her to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so just to follow up on that, and so that Rich has this information as well, um, the LNU complex, there were nine properties impacted. Um, only five of those properties actually show up on the tax roll. The total structure value of those properties is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the tax roll. There were um, motor homes involved, and then there were unpermitted structures apparently.
Okay.
Okay, so I can get you that list for sure.
Actually, if you could, that'd be great, in fact, actually-
Absolutely.
This is a good point um, for anybody on the call, um, when it comes to this point of a fire, the sooner we get the information, and I know Kathy feels probably the same and um, because her and I on different points will interact with this, um, the sooner we get the information, the sooner we can process it. If it gets delayed, and sometimes it does um, get delayed in other channels, um, it will delay kind of that processing. So it was great that Kathy jumped in on that.
Yeah, my apologies, Rich, I didn't get that to you yet, it was fairly insignificant and so it kind of went to the bottom of the pile over here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
No problem, thanks.
Thank you both for the clarification and thanks for the question, uh, Bruno. Um, any more questions from the board? Okay, your comments, sorry, uh, Jake, uh, go ahead and open the room and see if there's any public comment?
All right, I'll uh, uh, I sent that unmute out to the Zoom floor, if you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, uh, hearing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
All right.
Chair, I move to approve budget units eleven twenty-three, twenty-seven oh seven, twenty-seven oh eight, twenty-seven oh nine, and twenty-seven ten.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second, please do the roll call vote, please, Johanna?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Okay, and Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
No problem, thank you.
So now the agricultural commissioner, sealer of weights and measures, Steve Hayek, will present the agricultural commissioner budget, fish and game, and biological community budget, and the first one can be found on page E one fifty-five. Go ahead, Steve.
Steve is here, can you make sure he has the ability to unmute? He, he's, you'll see his name in here.
Yeah, he, he's here, he sent me a dialogue, I think, I'm just trying to make sure I have everything right. Uh, Steve, I've given you co-host, you should be able to unmute? I, I-
There he goes.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Okay.
Good job, Steve.
Thanks, I didn't do anything, my staff did. Okay, we have, we have three budgets, twenty-six oh one, the act commissioner, twenty-seven oh one, fish and wildlife, fish and wildlife protection and propagation, twenty-seven fourteen is the bio, 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 bio community. I'll go over these briefly. Twenty-six oh one covers insect pest detection, weed eradication, pear fruit inspections, farmers markets, UPS inspections and plant shipments to uh, to nurseries, uh, nur- nursery inspections to make sure plants are clean. Our biggest, one of our biggest ones is the pesticide use enforcement. Uh, we issue paperwork for pears to be shipped to other countries, the organic program, the hemp program, and weights and measures includes device inspections, weighing devices, measuring devices, handling complaints from the public, like, like uh, like uh, like local home parks, does that have issues with the, with the power and water deliveries from their, from their owners? The budget for twenty-six oh one is fifty-one percent states, states, state subvention for via contract, twelve percent fees and thirty-seven percent for general fund. Twenty-seven oh one supports projects that improve the habitat of wildlife and fisheries. It's, it's connected to the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, which makes recommendations to the board for, for, for approval, and is funded by fees, fines, and penalties. Budget twenty-seven fourteen is the USDA Wildlife Services budget, which, which helps, which helps people uh, protect property and themselves against wild animals that maybe shouldn't be there where they're at, like skunks, opossums, um, those kind of things. It's sixty-four percent funded by local property tax, and thirty-six percent by the general fund. And, and, and the issues that I see for us, the, the primary issue is- the, the primary issue is hiring extra help to do the insect detection trapping. And that's because the pay is very low. And we're, we have a hard time getting people to work for us at that, at that, that level of pay, which means that we have to get licensed staff to do the work, which, which impacts the other programs that require licensed staff, like pesticide use enforcement, like weights and measures, like farmers markets, like all those things. And that's not a good thing. The hemp program is, has been reduced primarily because of poor sales, the county ordinance and the early cannabis access, access or, that's not the right word, but anyway, the early, the early cannabis activations. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Thank you for your presentations and your budget items. We're gonna go ahead and open it up to the board for any questions for these budget items presented by Steve Hayek. Are there any comments or questions on the budget? Yes, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, it's a similar question than what I had, thank you very much. Then I had for our librarian where I see that professional services increased very much. It went from approximately thirty-four thousand to a hundred and, a hundred and forty-three thousand. Especially there was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar adjustment in between the recommended and the final. Kind of curious what that is all about.
We have extra revenue from the state due to the, due to the surcharge for, for, for gas stations. And we also have money from last year because we should have gotten paid seventy thousand dollars for the hemp program. And we never got paid for it. We still haven't been paid, been, been paid for it yet. So between the, between the, between the one cent or wherever it is that the, the gas check surcharge and the seventy thousand for hemp, we, 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 we have extra money. And that money eventually goes to weed control either in the lake or on the land.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
It's state funding.
And, but it, it comes in as state funding, but it goes out
Yes.
as weed control?
Yes.
Okay. And then a quick question, I, I hadn't read through the specific titles of your revenue. What is Sales Poison Grain?
That's, we used to sell grain bait for ground squirrels. We no longer do that anymore because the, because Yolo County is where we got the bait. They stopped selling the bait, so we don't have a source except to drive all the way down to Alameda County or Monterey County, so we're not gonna do that. So we've stopped bait sales.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Steve. Any more questions at this point for our Act Commissioner, Steve Hayek? Okay, not, we'll go ahead and open it up to public for public comment. Please, Jake, if you can unmute the room?
All right, yes, I will. I've sent out an unmute request to the room. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and close the room, please.
All right.
Bring back the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve budget units twenty-six oh one, twenty-seven oh one and twenty-seven fourteen.
Second.
Motion is second, please, Johanna, please do the roll call.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now County Council, Anita Grant will present the budget unit for County Council, public liability and workers compensation. And the first budget unit, County Council can be found on page E twenty-nine. Anita?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. I, I'd like to say first off that the photo that appears in our budget documents is not something new post-COVID. It's our photo from last year. We all think we look the same, so we decided to keep it. I think there's probably only one of us who doesn't, but she's not admitting anything today. With regard to twelve thirty-one, your board's quite aware of, of my office. We presently have three staff attorneys, one with one opening, a risk manager and a legal secretary. We're, we work with your board, we work with departments. Most of the work we do is behind the scenes. We assist in drafting resolutions, ordinances, agreements, leases, policies, procedures, et cetera. We answer questions where there's a phone call that comes in and says, this is happening right now, what's your advice? And things that take a couple of months to review because of their complexity. We're involved in litigation, juvenile dependencies, conservatorships, land use matters, landfill issues. We're involved in, in everything that the county is involved in. And as new things are presented to departments, new issues, new goals, those become our goals in the sense that we offer and assist. That is essentially who we are. You don't see any drastic changes in our budget. We tend to be a very low maintenance office. We make do with what we have and just try and keep working.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead.
I'm, okay, with regard to public liability, as your board knows, that's a risk management function, handling the public liability claims. The, the county is a member of the CSAC Excess Insurance Authority. That's an insurance sharing, risk sharing pool or insurance coverage. We have begun with a new third-party administrator with which we're very happy shaking things up and also to ensure that there is as greater responsiveness to the claims that are submitted as can possibly occur. The faster claims are reviewed and responded to, the less cost to the county. I can't say, and I, I can and should have said this with regard to twelve thirty-one, that the work with regard to these claims, the work with regard to County Council, and it's certainly going to be true of workers' comp, none of it could exist without the absolute cooperation and collaboration of all the county departments. Everyone always steps to the plate and works with us and with the third-party administrator on, on all of these issues. It's, Lake County has a, has a very heightened team ethos and it's, it's wonderful in, in terms of the kind of work my office does because we rely on it heavily. With regard to workers' comp, we're continuing with the same third-party administrator. This is also part of the excess insurance authority. We have been able to, with a series of actions and planning in the last few years, claims have gone down by 1.2 million dollars and we're proud of that. It, again, without the collaboration of departments and certainly employees across the board, none of these things would be at all possible. And with that, I would like to thank Admin and the Auditor's Office because I call Kathy with stupid financial questions and she doesn't make me feel too dumb. And with all county departments, so I'll wait for questions from your board.
Anita, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you very much. All the folks and staff in your office, thank you very much for everything that you do for us. But go ahead and open it up for the board for any questions for Anita. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I know that last year when we were discussing your, your department, I believe that you were slightly surprised that you had a personnel allocation of eight. It looks like it's back down to seven. Was that one unfunded or was that a funded position?
Well, that was one with the last budget go around. In order to, to maintain our numbers, we did lose one, as did, I believe, Admin.
Okay. And you said you have three vacancies, is that correct?
No, just one vacancy.
Okay.
And we've kept it open for a little bit into, into this year on purpose because we needed a, a couple of months of salary savings to stay within net county costs.
Okay, I appreciate that information. No, it's, I know that, that, that position is an important one because your staff is, is, it's a fairly small staff department and one extra staff would make a huge difference. And I know that just about everything that we see every single Tuesday has already gone through your department for review, possibly assistance and more than that. I do want to give you a huge kudos. Your economic development portion of your summary for County Council basically begs the addition of your services to the economic development team because it sounds like you understand because you work with every single department, what is a routine thing that everybody does that we can try to coordinate together as one. And so I appreciate you having that, that worldview. But other than that, I, I do not have any further questions about your budget. So thank you very much for what you do for us.
Oh, you're more than welcome. Thank you. And we're always happy to, to help with anything we'd much rather be doing, trust me.
Thank you, Anita. Any other board members commenting?
Yeah, I got it. I don't have a question of Anita, but I'm wondering if Bruno can go out in the hallway and check on Christopher because he hasn't moved since his presentation. He hasn't even blinked.
Yeah.
And why's he got a picture of Jim Steele behind him instead of Eddie? That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Anita, you know, thank you very much. Like you said, I think your department, for all things you do and you don't have any questions on the budget, so we'll go ahead and push this out to public comment at this point. Jake, can you open the room?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom floor here. I've sent out an unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and close the room. We'll bring it back for action on the budget, the three budget items presented by County Council.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve budget units twelve thirty-one, ninety-nine nineteen and ninety-nine twenty.
Second.
Motion is second, please, Johanna, do the roll call vote.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board. I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of you individually and collectively. And again, thank you to Carol and her staff and Kathy and hers. Thank you. Thank you, Anita.
Thank you, Anita.
Okay, now the, the Information Technology Director, Shane French, will present the Information Technology Budget Unit nineteen oh four, which is found on page E sixty-eight. Shane?
Hey, good afternoon, Board. Shane French, Director of IT for the County of Lake. The IT budget this year is not substantially changed. It's pretty similar to last year's. But I just wanted to kind of touch on some highlights, some changes and then take your questions. We have ten positions allocated to our department, of which three are currently unfilled. They've been unfilled for some time. Before the pandemic, we moved to recruit for two of our information technology technician positions. And I put those on hold about the time that the pandemic rolled around because I felt that it wasn't the right time to proceed with filling those. So those are currently still not filled. So we are currently about seventy percent staffed with our current allocation level. I do not have plans in the immediate future to fill those. As far as revenue, that's probably an important spot to touch on in our budget this year. Our revenue is, I've lowered the anticipated revenue estimate for a couple of reasons. One, because I'm anticipating potential decreased revenues due to budget cuts, potential budget cuts due to COVID nineteen and, and other difficulties in the coming year. So I've actually done about a ten percent decrease in estimates based on our running average total. And then also there were some concerns with the A eighty-seven cost plan this year that were brought to my attention right before the preparation of, of budget. Basically, it appears that we may have overcharged some departments based on our current billing methodology. That hasn't been completely borne out yet, but I thought that it'd be most prudent to estimate low and have a more conservative estimate on the revenue and then base our expenditures on that lower estimate. As far as increases in the budget this year, there aren't too many, but there's one significant one and that's in Object Code twelve for Communications. You might remember that last year, about mid-year, your board approved an increase in funding for our main internet connectivity because we were just running out of bandwidth for a lot of things. And that was well timed because right about after that is when the pandemic hit and we had a lot of folks working from home. And it just wouldn't have been doable without that increase. So there is an increase in Object Code twelve, a fairly significant increase actually. But that's really the only place where we've had a very significant increase. We've also got a little bit of an increase in Object Code twenty-nine fifty-one, which is our central garage vehicle mileage. But that's offset by some decreases in twenty-nine fifty. We've got pretty significant decreases in Object Code seventeen for maintenance of equipment. A lot of that is due to another item that your board approved last fiscal year, wherein we upgraded a firewall and actually decreased our ongoing maintenance costs. So we're gonna kind of reap the benefits of that for a couple of years and decrease maintenance costs. We also just cut our general allocation for network and PC maintenance funds. That, that one, we might have to come back at mid-year and look at because we typically do spend that allocation down. But we're doing everything we can to try to keep costs as low as possible this year. As far as twenty-three eighty, we've removed all of the allocation from that unit. That's a professional and specialized services that we tend to use for vendor assistance with certain projects, subcontractors and things of that sort. We are finding that we don't really use all of those funds most years. So we're gonna cut that this year and try to make without. And then, of course, in twenty-seven, that's about fifty percent of last year's allocation. Probably the biggest place to look is gonna be twenty-thirty Special Department Services and Supplies. We, again, we're, we're reaping some benefits for some prepaid maintenance contracts and lower costs on software licensing fees and things of that nature. We negotiated better pricing on our email security solution than what we had anticipated. So that's gonna work out well for us this year. We migrated to a new e-signature platform this year that is roughly fifty percent of the cost per transaction to what we were paying previously. So there's significant savings there as well. And, you know, we have made significant cuts to staff training this year just because we're not likely to be traveling anywhere and, and doing any in-person training. So we're gonna stick to online trainings. Those actually seem to work out pretty well for most of our staff. And perhaps in the future, look at bringing back some of those on-premises trainings. Twenty-nine fifty as well is cut because we're just not anticipated, anticipating really going anywhere, traveling very far. We're not requesting any fixed assets this year. Historically, we do have fixed asset requests. We haven't this year or last year. However, I am anticipating that next year, we're gonna need to make some requests for fixed assets to upgrade some storage. That'll probably be a fair, fairly significant expense. And that's actually pretty much all I have, so I'm ready to take your questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Shane. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I have a, a couple of questions and comments. One is, y- your last statement was to increase storage. Is it cheaper to increase storage physically? Or is it cheaper to access larger amounts of storage via the cloud? Which one do you, will you be aiming for?
So it kind of depends on the use case. We already leverage quite a bit of cloud storage for things like backup archival. The reason being is that we want to have an off-site copy of certain data. And we, we pretty much have that everywhere here. But there's just some ways that cloud storage is just gonna be a better fit. But there's just some ways that cloud storage is just going to be a better fit for some of the use cases. However, I would say that for most of our use cases, cloud storage is not going to be less expensive. It's going to be more. It's just not that expensive to spin up. Basic storage space, what I would call like Windows Server Storage. It depends a lot on what you're doing with the storage, but things like archiving, it can be, it can be really good. Because if you need to keep a lot of data for a long time, and you're just not going to touch it for a long time, and you don't want to maintain it or do anything with it. There's some online services that are very good at doing that very inexpensively, and we already leverage those for those, for that reason, really.
Right. Now, and the reason I ask is because I'm really hopeful and I know we're working on a. Permanent policy for work from home. And if there is more people that do choose to in the long run work from home, then the cloud storage would be a lot more useful than. Only the physical storage here like at the courthouse or something like that, but that's that's for the future when you get to that. My other question for you was about your personnel, and and I want to share a comment before I ask the question. I absolutely one hundred percent appreciate the efforts of Jake, and I'm going to maybe butcher his last name, Rinkie?
That's right.
Is that right? Okay. He has been absolutely critical to make every single one of these meetings function properly. And and that, to me, has been a huge asset for us, but what has that done to you as far as him being an asset to you? Because obviously, like today, we're having an eight-hour meeting. Yesterday, we had an eight-hour meeting. And that's not to say he's not multitasking, and if he is, awesome, amazing, but the fact is, he's he's being taken away from your services. So I know you said you had three out of your ten that are vacant at this moment in time. But we have Jake who's helping out more in an administrative role, I would almost suggest, rather than your typical IT role. So now that looks more like you have six out of ten. And and I see that you're not changing anything within your salaries and compensations, and I just kind of feel like we're we're using. Somebody in an administrative way, and IT is paying for it. And wondering if that's something that we can resolve, something that we need to fix, or is that not a problem for you at all?
Well, so first of all, yes, Jake is doing a fantastic job of multitasking, and I appreciate you bringing this up. We've had a few discussions about it, but I would tend to agree that. Someone like Jake, a highly technical individual with tech skills, is best suited for doing tech work. And it's really. I guess it's just really hard because Jake's doing such a great job of this. It's going to be very hard to find somebody to do. That job as well as he does, tech person or not. But I would agree with you that it is primarily not an IT function. But I guess at this point, staff is maintaining this pretty well. You know, like I said, I've discussed it with Jake a bit. As I'm sure you've noticed, he's he's very willing to continue to do it and is always available. So the arrangement we have currently is fine. I don't think anybody anticipates that this will be a forever thing. I mean, at least I think we hope it's not. But I think we're managing pretty well for now, is what I would say.
Okay. And and one of my reasons I ask is because because of the amount of people that are logging in to listen to our meetings in comparison to when we just have it live. I would suggest that maybe we're going to look at making this a permanent addition to our meeting so everyone can access it from home, from their work, or from their car, whatever it is that they. They're from. And so I'm looking for a permanent solution to this rather than the temporary that was created and has seemed to be more permanent as we keep going into it. But maybe that's a conversation for further on. I just want to make sure that you're able to still do the work that we're asking you to do with. Part-time Jake rather than full-time Jake when it comes to IT, and and he has got the best attitude I've ever seen, and right now, he's probably the most well-informed. Community member and staff member out of anyone else from always being on these meetings and hearing everything we're doing. And so my appreciation for both your department and what you've taken on and seeing no changes in your budget. In fact, you're asking for less this year than you were last year, even though you're, you've been so pivotal. To making everything happen for us because of COVID nineteen and doing it in such a short time. I just want to share absolute one hundred percent appreciation for you and your department. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I think that goes across the board as far as us even being able to do what we're doing right now and the expediency that it was done. But to get this set up, and not only what you're seeing here, but also we have folks working from home, and I know your department. Just went above and beyond to get done for the teleworking during this COVID nineteen. And I also want to just encourage, I know you have those open department or those open spots in your department. And I would just encourage you, you know, thank you very much for being a conservative, but to get out and then, you know, hopefully start recruiting for those positions that need to be filled. I think that's very important as we move through this budget approval process and, you know, we can always come back and do something. If it needs to be changed in the future, and I appreciate you being diligent and looking at the future, but we know that your staff needs that support and. You know, just encourage you to move forward with it with the approval today. Hopefully, that's coming here pretty quickly. Supervisor Scott?
I would just like to agree with that. I think more and more, we are going to rely on you and your staff to be able to do the work. And and I think we have to also remember, it's not just our meetings that Jake is is doing. Jake's also doing planning commission. He's, I've seen him in community meetings. Anytime that the county is on a Zoom, Jake is there. And I agree, he is absolutely amazing. He does have incredible energy. I would love to to bottle that and take some of that. But no, we're very thankful to have Jake.
He just made a.
I agree. I think this is going to be something that it's going to be long-term, I believe, for us. I love the fact that we have more community members joining us via Zoom. And participating than we ever did before. So thank you for that.
He just needed a rock star.
And, you know, I just want to, you know, our economic development, I know when we have our economic development conversations. I think I've heard you say a couple, well, I don't know how, right, but we want to take Lake County into the twenty-first century and all of the departments. And the technology that we're going to be bringing forward. So you're a key part of that, just like everyone else, but, you know, technology. I couldn't be on some of these calls if I didn't get the help from your department, and that's just, I hope all the other people will admit that, but I will definitely admit. The support that you give just us, we can do these things. So. I just, I want to, you know, just reiterate that to you that we are going to be leaning on your department as we go over the next decade to improve the lives. And also the services we offer to our constituents. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I wish Jake did house calls.
Yeah, I just want to thank all of you, though, too. Shane, I I come to situations where my password or something goes wrong, and I have to call you up, and you guys are always. Very helpful. We were only hijacked, I think, twice out of this whole timeframe since March. And that was an interesting times, but Jake handled it very well. Your department handled it very well, and I think we haven't had anything since, and I'll knock on wood. But yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that. I I do want to mention that one of the reasons that we're able to operate at such low staffing levels, you know, I was looking at the budget. From ten years ago, and our allocations then, we, I remember we were, we were full. We had everybody staffed. And it was roughly fifty percent, or excuse me, it is roughly fifty percent of those levels, and we're just doing a lot more today than we ever have been. And I think what everybody needs to understand is that that's because of of my staff. It's just the right group of people at the right time. And they're all just great, and I appreciate the feedback on Jake. I just, everybody on this team is just really incredible. And they've just made all of this happen, and I just, I'm really thankful for that.
And and, you know, I think, thank you for reiterating that, too. We know it takes the entire staff and everything. We see Jake all the time, so that's probably why we're just throwing Jakes in there, Dave. But I know all the folks in your department are just, you know, they do a great job for us. So. No one ever thought that Lake County could be completely virtual and teleworking, and it was done by all assets of our government, you know, and all of our employees. Admin to IT to every department ad. So I want to commend everybody, but ultimately, the the tech guys and ladies are the ones that get it completed. So thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Jake, if you could open the room?
Oh, no, I don't know if I could do that right now. I'm over here smiling too much. Okay, yeah, so.
That's why I didn't say anything. I want to try to keep it real with this poor guy.
All right, probably just walked across the lake over to Clear Lake.
Not good for my ego. All right, so I sent out an unmute request to the room. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go and close the room. We'll bring it back for these budget units that were presented by Shane French or RT. Director, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and motion to approve budget unit nineteen oh four. That's the sole budget unit, right?
Right.
Second.
Hey, motion is second. Johanna, please do the roll call.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now the Auditor Controller County Clerk Kathy Sederlin will present the Auditor Budget Unit. And the Disaster Response and Recovery Budget Unit, which initially can be found on page E sixteen. Kathy?
Good afternoon. Hopefully.
Good afternoon, Kathy.
Hi.
Yes.
Okay, so Auditor Controller Budget. The total requested budget for the Auditor Controller is one point two million. With estimated revenue of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, roughly, maintaining the required net county cost of nine hundred and ninety-two thousand. For comparison, our nineteen twenty budget, our net county cost allowance was nine hundred and eighty-eight, seven thirty-one. We actually ended the fiscal year with a lower net county cost of eight hundred and three, two fifty-four, primarily because of salary savings from vacant positions. As your board is aware, this budget unit is a general fund budget that provides accounting services to a multitude of customers, including all county departments. Lake County Office of Education, all the school districts, transit agencies, first five. The independent special districts under their own board, which are the water, fire, cemetery, and resource conservation districts in the county. We also are the county clerk issuing marriage licenses and performing marriage ceremonies and all things required of the county clerk by the Secretary of State. Including Form seven hundred compliance. Our statutory Form seven hundred duties involve seventy-seven different agencies, and we currently have five hundred and nineteen annual filers. This is an automated task to the extent that the filers are able to comply with that automation. Cost recovery services for the department are approximately eighty-seven percent of net county cost. And that is accomplished through the countywide cost allocation plan as well as for the accounting services and county clerk fees that we charge. Our past year accomplishments included retooling our accounting processes to accommodate a rapid conversion in the remote workforce. Which included updating all of our policies and procedures and manuals to include the new processes to address audit requirements. We retooled our county clerk processes to accommodate additional online and remote public service, which included by appointment. And we moved many of our services to online, and we implemented stringent social distancing protocol. Our service levels remain stable even through the pandemic and the closure of the courthouse. And illustrate that it was in two thousand nineteen, we issued two hundred and twenty-two marriage licenses, and in two thousand twenty, we had two hundred and eighteen. So relatively unchanged. In addition, during this very trying year, we kept county employees paid on time. Our vendors were paid timely, and our financial reporting. Was kept up to date. We survived all this, including the pandemic and what we're going through now, with an average of a thirty-one percent vacancy rate. Which is where I will sit as of this coming Monday when I lose my one chief deputy. So highlights of the budget for the upcoming year include the cloud migration, and this will require focused and significant staffing resources. We've been hampered by that. We did start it in May of two thousand twenty, and we hope to complete that this fiscal year. And you just heard from your IT director. I I told him I'd finish it by December, so I I'm saying this fiscal year. The appropriations in our professional and specialized services were adjusted to accommodate this conversion to the cloud. Our software costs will increase for this cloud-based software versus on-premise. That's our annual maintenance will include, will increase. Other costs will go down for IT and for some of the other services in in the county. Some of the other staffing in in the county, in the Auditor Controller's office, sorry. This budget unit, as submitted to your board, in order to meet the net county cost, includes unfunding three-quarters of one of my accountant auditors. I'm hopeful that with salary savings, that I'll be able to restore that at some point. It is a needed position. However, my goal is to maintain that net county cost that's that's allowed to the department. In addition, changes since the submittal of the budget included moving the payroll division to the confidential employee group. And those salary adjustments are being absorbed within the current budget, and if anything needs to be changed, we'll come back mid-year. In closing out the discussion on my budget, this budget unit, I want to thank all the county departments for their patience and their partnership this past year. It's been, and it continues to be, a difficult environment for all of us, and yet we all continue to work toward the common goal of quality public service. So I do thank them all. And I also want to acknowledge at this time, the unrelenting dedication of the Auditor Controller County Clerk team. We lost some valuable team members this past year, and we also gained some valuable team members. And so I feel very fortunate to be able to work with them each and every day. So that is my Auditor Controller Budget Unit. If you have any questions, Supervisor Sabatier?
Supervisor Sabatier?
I do have a question, and I'm saddened to see, because I know the amount of work that your staff do. And I wish it was just crunching numbers and making sure people get paid, but it's so much more than that. And to see not only that you have three-quarter of a staff position going unfunded. You also went down one whole position because you used to have fourteen in our adopted budget of nineteen twenty. But now you're at a full thirteen if you take the unfunded with the funded. I I'm concerned about the, and and really, it doesn't matter if it's at fourteen or thirteen right now. If you have some vacancies, we need to fill those vacancies. But at the same time, I I'm concerned about how much is expected of a single department that is not just important to us. But important to so many other special districts and so many other school districts and so many other agencies throughout the county. I, all I can say is, I want to do more. We need to do more, and I'm asking you. Other than the obvious, which would probably be the the salaries, what what else we can do to provide you support?
And to kind of clarify, it it does look like we went down in position allocation, but your board last year, when I was losing a longtime employee. You increased my allocation. It was, it was normally thirteen in the Auditor Controller. So we increased it to fourteen so that we could have some crossover. It actually didn't materialize, but it was a good plan. So it's restored back to what it was pre that additional. Kind of like a succession plan. So you have been very generous with allowing us to maintain our position allocation, and I very much appreciate that. You are correct. It's part of, I mean, I don't, I don't want to belabor this too much, but certainly our, this, the salaries for the accounting. Field within the county are not near market, and so it is very difficult for us to fill those positions. And even if I were able to, I will say, it was mentioned earlier, I wouldn't have space for additional staff. So that would be an issue. So that would be an issue as well, but I definitely appreciate those thoughts because I do think that you are correct, it would be nice to have a more robust finance office.
Right, and I just, I guess my mind thinks of the days where people call in sick, people go on vacation and it's just that it makes it that much more stressful of a situation to the point where people don't want to call in sick and people don't want to go on vacation or else it just piles up and I've been there and I know it exists. I also, just as a final word, I know that you are one of our hardest working staff, including Director. I know that you and Anita Grant have a little challenge of who can leave the latest, which I wish you wouldn't do, but I just want to thank you for all your loyalty and dedication to the job and to this county because you do a whole lot.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions at this point for Kathy on the presented budget units?
Kathy, thank you for everything.
Didn't she have one more budget unit or did I?
Yeah.
Yes, I have one more. Disaster. The Disaster Response and Recovery Budget Unit. That's the budget unit that was exclusively for disaster-related costs and federal and state cost reimbursement for those disasters. And it also this year includes additional non-traditional disaster-related monies for the CARES Act that will be used for cost recovery and community economic stimulus related to COVID-19. That's that 6.5 million that's available to Lake County as well as the PG&E settlement monies received as a result of, and hopefully Anita is still on the line here. I have in my notes here, the PG&E settlement monies received as a result of the tenacity and extraordinary work of county council and the collective efforts of county administration. And that's been put into the disaster budget unit as a placeholder. The total requested appropriations in this budget unit are 13 million, 13.6, and the total estimated revenue is 10 million. The budget unit starts the 2021 fiscal year with a $9.2 million fund balance carried forward. And for 2021, we've established a $2 million reserve for audit exceptions and a 4.5 million for advances to be returned. Those numbers sound very, very large and they are and they fluctuate significantly. And so it's really hard to compare year over year because of the stacked disasters. There are a couple changes that have occurred since the submittal of the budget and that was the elimination of an accountant auditor and a switch over to a disaster program manager to more adequately address the continuing and additional responsibilities of the CARES Act, disaster closeout, and the upcoming audits. And I thank you very much, the board, for supporting and approving this change. I've been fortunate to find, I believe, just the right person, somebody who's a previous county employee, familiar with our systems and she's moving full steam ahead on it and she's working with the ad hoc committee. Past year accomplishments in this budget unit are continuing to juggle the 12, now 13, different disaster events with LNU and we received 2.6 million of disaster reimbursements last year. And quickly, the status of the disasters, none of them are complete. They're all still in progress since 2015. So quickly, the Rocky Fire, it's closed but audit pending. Jerusalem closed, audit pending. Valley, permanent road projects are pending. So it's still open and audit pending. Clayton Fire is not yet closed. It's got insurance collection project and then audit pending. Winter Storms, one and two of 2017, it's closed but it's audit pending. Sulfur Fire, it's closed except for the insurance collection project and then the audit's pending. The Pawnee Fire, same thing, insurance collection project is ongoing and we have audit pending. Mendocino Complex, it's closed except for the insurance collection project and then the audit pending. And then in 2019, Winter Storms, again, permanent road projects are pending. We have our PSPS events in 2019. We have the funding that was received and it's remaining to be spent, some of it, and it's audit ready. And now we have in 2020, we have the COVID-19, which is in progress, and now LNU complex fire in progress. So that's a real quick snapshot and that's a change from what I submitted, obviously, a month ago. So upcoming for us are the CARES Act cost compilation, the reporting and the compliance and our additional focus goal to continue closing out these disasters and distribute the funding to the applicable departments and prepare for the audits of the closed disasters. Each year I've listed this as a priority. Each year I hope that we would be closing some of these and each year we work really hard to do just that. And if we could have a break, we might actually close one of these. So that's the disaster budget unit, if you have any questions.
Thank you Kathy. Any questions for Kathy on either of the budget units presented?
I have no questions. I'd just like to thank Jake again, just because.
Probably throwing that in there. Kathy, thank you very much for the presentation. I know Supervisor Sabatier has his hand up. Go ahead Supervisor.
So I am looking at the revenue 81-01 for other settlements that we received. It's about 3.5 million. I'm not looking for the entirety of this to be pulled. I would like to at least look at maybe about $2 million. This revenue comes directly because of the aftermath of the sulfur fire and there is a community just north of the city of Clear Lake in Windflower Point, past the Goose Neck, that was traumatized by what occurred during that fire. And unfortunately, unlike the other fires, there was not really the same situation that presented itself. And so here we find ourselves with some funds because of that circumstance that presented itself. And I think that some of that money, at least the majority of that money, should be put back into that community to help them rebuild. There is damage to the roads. We can look at reduction of fees for rebuilding homes that were lost. I think that it's only right that since we somehow got to benefit due to their trauma that we helped them deal with their trauma and put some of that, if not the majority of it, back into that community that was affected by this.
Okay, bring it back, bring it back to the agenda. That's a board policy thing and not an auditor controller thing, but I think it's a good idea. Bring it back. Let's talk about it. Kathy can probably tell us what we can spend it on, but.
And I mentioned that it's there, so it is available there and it has been appropriated, so it's available. You know, that does make it available to be spent, but certainly it won't be spent without board direction. And honestly, it was a last minute addition to the Disaster Response and Recovery Budget Unit. I am not certain, and I apologize, I haven't even had a chance to really dig into it. I'm not certain how that amount was determined. So I think for me, I would go to what is the source? What, why did it end up being the amount that it is? What was submitted that made it be this amount? And that would be where you would initially look to reimburse.
Yeah, and Anita and Carol can help us with that because that was definitely part of the discussion we had initially in closed session.
Right.
Well, yes, we can absolutely have discussion, future discussion with the board about how to spend those funds. You bet.
So looking at another budget item today, we're looking at. All right, Bruno, thank you very much for your request, but I think at this time, we're going to go ahead and seems like consensus that conversation is for another time and we're going to go ahead and open this up for public comments on these two budget units that were prevented by the Auditor Controller. Jake, can you open the room?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom room here. I've sent out an unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay Jake, go ahead and close it up. We'll bring it back to the board.
All right.
Action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Budget Units 1121 and 1920.
Second.
Second.
Johanna, go ahead and do the roll call vote.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Kathy.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, now the Treasurer or Tax Collector Barbara Ringen will present Budget Unit 1122, which is Treasurer or Tax Collector, which is found on page E20. Barbara?
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, to just start, just to start, the department overview, the Treasurer or Tax Collector operates three divisions, Treasury, Tax, and Court County Debt Collection. Treasury functions include banking and cash flow management, pooled investments, depository services, warrant maintenance, unclaimed estates, and deferred compensation administration. Tax Collector functions include the billing and collection of property tax, transient occupancy tax, cannabis cultivation tax, preparation of tax liens, and coordination of tax defaulted land options. The Collection Division collects court fines, fees, and money wise debts. The Treasurer or Tax Collector's operations are funded through service fees, reimbursements, and general funding. The majority of revenue is generated from delinquent property tax fees and penalties, accounting and treasury administrative fees, and cost reimbursement for delinquent court fines. The expenditures for 2021, if approved, will be purchasing a Pitney Bowes folder inserter. This purchase will replace our current inserter, which we purchased approximately 10 years ago. The folder inserter is used on a regular basis to mail tax bills, notices, and statements for our Collection Division. Regarding our positions, we have one unfilled accountant position, which we are in the process of interviewing candidates and are hopeful this position will be filled in the near future. We are also in the process of interviewing candidates for an accounting technician position that will be vacant the first week of October. Our accomplishments, we successfully collected in excess of 98 million in property taxes and assessments for county, school districts, and independent special districts. Our office purchased and started the implementation of Megabyte TOT system, which will allow electronic filing. We successfully filled two vacancies, but unfortunately, one of the positions we filled will become vacant in October. Our goals for the 2021 year is, our first priority will be to focus on conducting two tax defaulted land sales, the implementation of Check 21 process, which will allow us to send checks to the bank electronically, update our webpage to include important information for taxpayers regarding the annual tax cycle, avoiding penalties, questions regarding supplemental bills, and the do's and don'ts related to the annual tax bills. We will continue staff development and training for our current and new employees, along with cross-training our current employees. That concludes my summary.
Thank you Barbara. Okay, we'll go ahead and is the board for any questions or tax collector? Supervisor Sabatier?
Never mind, I was looking at 80-80, the other financing, and I just read the numbers incorrectly, so never mind.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board on the Budget Unit 1122 presented by Treasurer or Tax Collector? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open this up to public comment. Jake, can you open the room?
Yes, I will unmute the Zoom floor here. I've sent out an unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay Jake, let's go ahead and close it up. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Budget Unit 1122.
Motion in second, go for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, at 4:10, what I'd like to do is take a five-minute break and then we will finish up like today's timing. We go till 5:00 PM, but we'll take a five-minute break and then come back and resume with Animal Care and Control.
Okay, so the Animal Control Director Jonathan Armis will present the Animal Care and Control Budget Unit and the Vet Medical Clinic Budget, which can be found on E174 starting out. Jonathan?
Good afternoon Supervisors, thank you. I am Jonathan Armis. I'm the Director of Lake County Animal Care and Control and the Animal Medical Clinic. Just a brief summary of the shelter and what we do. The main service we do provide for the public is calls for assistance in the field. We take stray animals and we do place animals in our care and new homes. For field services last year, we saw about 1,300 calls for service and our top calls throughout that fiscal year was loose dogs, welfare checks, which are like cruelty investigations, those types of things. And then loose vicious dogs and bites were about tied for third. Over this last year, we actually hired and trained a total of three officers and we're actually in the process of trying to fill that last vacant position. We do suffer as a county from an overpopulation problem for pets and that means that we do have to transfer animals out of the county to keep our live release rate, excuse me, our live release rate numbers high. Last fiscal year, we were able to create and fill a position for adoption coordinator and with that, we saw a decrease of 28% in the number of dogs euthanized and 8% in cats. But I want to stress that isn't our live release rates, that is just strictly number to number. And then as far as our budget, everything is very similar besides our workers' compensation. We have a decrease of $81,000, which allows us to kind of plug that into areas that the shelter has been needing some TLC for some time, like maintenance. Our buildings have had some issues and that'll allow us to get those issues corrected. As far as the clinic, if you want me to go into that, I can do that real quick because it is pretty imperative towards the shelter itself. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so our clinic, it provides services to the public through our low-income Spain neuter program, community cat program, and a vaccination clinic. But most importantly, the clinic itself allows medical care for all the animals within the shelter and that we do bring in. And that allows the shelter to provide mandated care to the animals and at a level that is generally expected by the community higher than what's mandated. And that allows it so that we can do everything in-house instead of having to go to a veterinarian where costs could be way increased. It also keeps our adoption rates low because we can perform all the surgeries in-house. The clinic's biggest change over this next fiscal year is that we're going to see a big drop in revenue. There's, the big reason for that is we are unable to perform the same amount of surgeries during COVID and we always seem to shut down during fires. We've begun performing surgeries again. We're just not going to be able to keep at our capacity and between social distancing, excuse me, social distancing and other issues. Beyond that, I think that is just a quick rundown of both of those budget units and that's 2703 and 2711. And so if you have any questions, comments, or anything, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Excellent. Jonathan, thank you very much. Go ahead and bring it to the board. Any questions from the board at this time? Supervisor Sabatier?
My mic was off, I apologize. Thank you very. My mic was off, I apologize. Um, thank you very much for that presentation. I'm sorry, I know you said what the live release rate was, wondering if you could repeat that.
So these are actually decreases between our euthanasia rates just on number to number. So, for example, um, it, it was twenty-eight percent decrease in dogs and ate and cats, but that was, let's say if we euthanized a hundred, um, a hundred dogs last year, we saw a decrease of twenty-eight over that other year. So our, our actual, um, live release rates, um, as far as the math goes, um, we changed the way that, um, the previous director was getting those numbers, and so our rates actually went to, I think, around sixties, mid-sixty percent. Um, it's on our website.
And that's both for felines and canines?
Correct, and so our canines, um, are about an eighty-five percent live release rate. Our cats is where we actually have the true problem, and that's because they are, um, the majority of them are feral, they're very hard to place in homes. Um, during kitten season, we oftentimes will get litters of kittens that are too young to care for, um, without, um, quite a bit of staff. So, um, those things do affect those numbers, and our, our live release on cats are about, um, I think, mid-fifties or low fifty percent.
Right, no, I, I appreciate those numbers, I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments from the board, board members? Okay. Alright, hearing none, moving along right now, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, uh, go ahead and open it up for, uh, for comment at this point, public comment. Jake, can you open the room?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom floor here. I sent out a unmute request. If you'd like to make a comment, please, uh, unmute and state your first and last name.
Hearing nothing? Jake, go ahead and close up the room, we'll bring it back to the board for, for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Budget Units 2703 and 2711.
Second.
Excellent. Johanna, motion and a second?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jonathan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, the Chief Probation Officer, Rob Howe, will present Budget Unit 2302, which is probation, found on page E147. Rob?
Yeah, good afternoon Board, thank you for your time. Admin, thank you for your time as well, not just for today, but for the entire process. It's always, it's, it's a pleasure to work with you guys. The, the time, availability, and pres, the patience you provide is, is appreciated. Even when you have to tell me, no, I can't have any more money, it's still an unpleasant process, but I appreciate that. I'll give a little overview of the department. Uh, the Probation Department provides services that enhance public safety. We're an arm of the Lake County Superior Court, and as such, we conduct investigations, author reports, and make recommendations to Lake County Superior Court Judges. We supervise offenders, utilize evidence-based practices in programming, testing, counseling, and assessments with the objective of reducing recidivism, and we encourage the collection, or excuse me, engage in the collection restitution and support victim restoration programs. The Probation Department supervises approximately a thousand adult offenders, one hundred and forty-one juvenile offenders, and prepares approximately fifteen hundred adult juvenile, or adult and juvenile court order reports per year. That fluctuates anywhere between fifteen hundred and, and over two thousand, and, and could increase based on some, uh, some circumstances all discussed later. A few of the accomplishments for the past year, through the application of evidence-based practices and adult probation supervision over the past five calendar years, the Probation Department has produced the following results. Uh, felony probation revocation resulting in state prison time, uh, has been kept to approximately one percent, twenty percent overall revocation rate, the one percent is obviously just those who went back to prison. For post-release community supervision, revocations resulting in state prison terms were kept to less than five percent. Those numbers are important for a couple of reasons, the, the first one is, is reducing recidivism, of course, is one of our goals, but a significant amount of our funding, specifically SB six-seven-eight is performance-based, as the, as the state calls it, meaning that the fewer people we revoke that end up back in prison, the more we can handle here, the more money we get with that program, with that SB. Um, let's see, another, another goal is during the past fiscal year, our Family Wrap preventative program. That's a, that's a program we use in our juvenile division. It was brought to a close during, because of some funding loss. DSS traditionally funds that, the loss in funding. Uh, that's been one of our most successful preventative, preventative programs. We've been able to, to assist seventy-seven youths over the past four years. That program is a program that combines, um, Department of Social Services, Behavioral Health, um, Office of Education, and probation, all combined to help at-risk kids, to try to keep them out of the system. We like that program, so we're currently working with the Office of Education to, to find a way to keep it going with our own staffing and with some grant options that they're trying to find. Let's see, uh, by employing a new streamline collection process, the Probation Department has seen a fifty percent plus, excuse me, a fifty thousand dollar plus increase in restitution collections for, for fiscal year nineteen-twenty. That's substantial for us. As I earlier stated, one of our primary goals is to support victim restoration programs. Um, our officers and clerical staff, the Probation Department take pride in providing over fifteen hundred court order reports annually. These reports provided within a rigid timeframe to ensure that sentences are completed and prescribed by statute. During the past year, reports provided with virtually zero reportable errors and with one hundred percent on-time record of reports. Probation also provides hundreds of man-hours to the courts and form of officers available to provide firsthand assistance during detention, sentencing, and violation of probation hearings. Next accomplishment I want to go over is the Day Reporting Center. Been a little challenged here in the COVID world, but, uh, our David, our Day Reporting Center hosts classes in programming and job readiness, courage to change, career point, adult education, moral recognition therapy, and alcohol and other drug counseling. We were able to add, uh, Gertrude Families Programs last year, and despite, again, you know, the challenges with COVID, we're continuing that. We're, we're learning a different way to operate this. Uh, we're using Zoom, Skype, we're providing written materials and, and going over it with, with phones, anything we can to keep this programming going. Uh, we've actually seen some benefits. Transportation's always been a real challenge for, uh, particularly our South County clientele and our North Shore clientele. Uh, we're able to, to get them to take some of these classes without having to try to find a ride to Lakeport. It's kind of opened our eyes to, to look into maybe being able to provide our clients with a device and some sort of hotspot or data program or some kind of internet connection. Um, and, and again, that's just something we'll look for in the future. Um, as far as the actual budget goes, you'll see that the appropriations revenues essentially stayed the same, not a whole lot of significant changes in any, in any of those. We, I do like to mention in our revenue section, although we're a general fund department, well over half, I think it's about sixty percent this year, of our revenues is non-general fund. So we do rely pretty heavily on state, federal program funds, um, grants, that kind of thing, and we'll continue to do that. Um, I can answer any questions about the budget that you have? I kind of wanted to spend the rest of my time going over a little bit, I guess, the concerns and challenges that we think we'll face coming up in the next fiscal year. I have a few specific that, that kind of concern me. The first one, I know you've heard it a lot today, and you'll continue to hear it, but it has to do with staffing. Uh, our, our department is currently, we have a vacancy rate of twenty-one percent overall department, and unfortunately, about thirty percent with our deputy probation officers right now. That's, um, a little bit deceptive in that we were trying to maintain three to four vacancies. Frankly, we weren't really trying hard to fill them because we were anticipating potential cuts as well as, uh, maybe classing comp, you know, resulting in, and having to, to come up with some money. Anyway, uh, the, the eight total vacancies we have now is a bit of a concern. We've flown three times for deputy probation officer in the past three to four months. Uh, really haven't had any success yet. We have four in background currently, peace officer background. Three more that we're waiting for them to turn their background in, and I believe HR has a test scheduled for Friday, which is the written Deputy Probation Officer Test, so we're hoping to get a few more applicants out of there. It's important to us because we're facing some, some potential tough times in the future, which brings up my next, uh, concern. I, I believe the board's all aware of SB ten. Senate Bill ten was the bail reform. Um, it, it was signed by the governor and then a successful referendum, uh, put it on the November ballot. If that does pass, essentially what it would, would mean is every county has to develop their own, um, pre-trial agency, is what they're calling it. In the way the law is written, that pre-trial agency will be probation. So for us, essentially, everybody who's booked into jail that doesn't get released, cited out, that would normally have the option to bail, will have to be seen by a probation officer, given an assessment, and report and recommendation made back to the courts, or a decision to release made at the time. Uh, checking in with our jail, they're averaging six bookings a day, people actually booked into custody a day, and that's low. I, I'd imagine part of that's low maybe because of the COVID thing or, or whatever, but last year they were averaging ten. So if you're looking at anywhere between six and ten bookings a day, that, that projects out to twenty-one, over two thousand to well over three thousand, uh, bookings a year. Every one of those would have to be seen by a probation officer, assessed with a, a state-approved assessment tool, and again, having this evaluation done and, and reported back to the courts. As I mentioned earlier, we typically only average about fifteen hundred to two thousand reports, court order reports, a year. That takes a staff of four full-time court reporters and a supervisor to handle that, and we're looking at certainly more than double than that. Now, these, these new type of reports wouldn't be as detailed or lengthy as, say, uh, um, a pre-sentence report or anything like that, but there's going to be a huge number of them, and that doesn't even take into consideration that after release, or being released, this introduces a whole new supervision category for us. We don't know exactly what the court's going to require for supervision, whether or not it would be, um, office visits, home visits, electronic monitoring, testing, who knows? But it, it, creating a whole new agency within a small department like ours is going to be, or could be a challenge if that does pass. Looking at, uh, other departments have handled this, other counties have handled this, and, and based on the numbers that we kind of looked at from our own jail, we think probably four or five full-time employees it would take to kind of create this agency. It is supposed to be funded, it's not supposed to be, well, it's supposed to be funded. We don't know exactly what the state's gonna provide, don't know if it's gonna be adequate. Uh, but my concern right now is with the struggle we are having to hire, whether it's adequate or not. Staffing those positions would be a challenge. Um, as far as other challenges facing probation, you know, we have the DJJ closure, juvenile realignment. I know the board, I, I believe admin's probably getting inundated from CSAC with, with this information. Real big concern throughout the state. There are a lot of large counties that have hundreds of kids in DJJ that are gonna have to find other alternatives. Uh, for a little background, Division of Juvenile Justice is, used to be CYA, it's basically juvenile prison. It's, it's where the worst offenders would go. Um, again, has a lot of, a lot of counties, a lot of chiefs panicking throughout the state. Right now, for us, we, we fairly lucky, we don't have anybody sentenced. In my time here as the chief, we've only had one, at a time at least, sentenced. Um, but it could be a challenge in the future. Uh, we're looking at ways, collaborating with other small Northern California counties to maybe come up with a hub, trying to figure out one county that would house this category of offender. Uh, again, you're talking about, um, serious violent offenders, uh, heavy mental health cases, sex crimes violations, the kind of staff that's necessary is psychiatric, full-time mental health, um, the ability to, to have max security at your facility, that kind of thing. So, again, not really a challenge at this point, but certainly could be. It's another program that, that the state is providing some funding to the counties. As it stands right now, Lake County would receive two hundred and fifty thousand based on what our population is and how many of these kids we normally have. Um, and of course, when you don't have anybody, that's more than adequate, but if we were to have an incident, a couple, uh, sentenced, then that could be a challenge as well. Thing about it is, whatever counties come up with the ability to house these people, a supply and demand thing's gonna take, uh, they can, they'll be able to charge whatever they want to charge, and it's going to be very expensive for that class. So, I don't think I have any more concerns. Be happy to try to answer any questions yet.
Okay, we're gonna go, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I'm glad you brought up, uh, Proposition twenty-five, which is the proposition that addresses SB ten. If it passes, it will be a multi-million dollar, uh, issue for, for all counties, including ours. Multi-million dollars just in our county alone, uh, and not just with probation, because what, what wasn't mentioned is the statutory timeline that those reports have to be done. They can't be put behind others, they have to be done within, uh, forty-eight, seventy-two hours. And, um, and the failure to appear rate is a hundred and twenty percent higher on those duties with those that are actually required to bail. And so then you've got other law enforcement and the district attorney bodies out there trying to serve warrants on those failures. It's gonna be a very costly if that, uh, measure passed, I brought that up.
Yes Supervisor, you're actually right, I did fail to mention that, and, and that brings up a little bit more challenge for our department in that, uh, the actual bill itself had a twenty-four hour, you know, these people had to be seen and assessed within twenty-four hours. Probation is historically at kind of nine to five, Monday through Friday, get here in Lake County. That would change. Um, part of establishing this pre-trial agency would involve, uh, at the very least, a weekend shift, if not a night shift, for us to accommodate a weekend bookings.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, as far as your budget is concerned, everything looks, uh, um, real similar, as you stated, than the previous year. Um, I know that I have not heard any complaints about your department to make, uh, any, uh, give me any belief that there needs to be some major changes. Obviously, the, uh, filling of your positions is probably your biggest and most concerning issue that you need to deal with, that we need to deal with, uh, as a whole. Um, I'm actually surprised, based on all the discussions that have been had throughout COVID-19 with the realignment funds and other things being kind of pushed around and then brought back, and pushed around and brought back, that, uh, your revenues are what they are at this moment in time. Um, and, uh, I, I'm grateful, I know you and I, as well as, uh, CAO Ms. Hutchinson, uh, had already spoken about SB ten. Um, I wanted to familiarize myself a little bit better with, uh, what was happening. I know that RCRC, uh, uh, I believe, put in a position of, uh, opposition, uh, to Proposition twenty-five. I was there during that meeting. Uh, a, a lot of counties are concerned about how the impacts will, uh, uh, w- will be for every single one, because I think it will be different depending on the types of crimes and the, uh, things like that. Um, so, now I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate the work that you do.
Hey Rob, uh, are there, uh, any other comments from the board members? Questions on the budget?
Oops, sorry, I, I was on mute.
Thank you Supervisor.
Don't have any questions on the budget, I just wanted to state that, uh, a lot of the, uh, projects and goals, I've seen firsthand how, the successes and the struggles, uh, if you will, because I know that recidivism is a big thing. And so, um, some of these things that, um, that you're talking about in, in, in your pro, in your project description, accomplishments, accomplishments, um, I'm familiar with, um, and so I just wanted to, um, you know, state, uh, that, uh, I'm grateful for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, Rob. We're gonna go ahead and open this up to the public, see if we have any public comment. Go ahead, Jake, if you can open the room.
All right, I'll unmute the Zoom floor here. I've sent out a unmute request. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay Jake, let's close the room up, we'll bring it back, uh, to the board for action. On these budget units presented by, uh, Rob Howe.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Budget Unit twenty-three oh-two.
Second.
Motion to second, Johanna, if you could please, uh, do the roll call vote.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, you know, uh, what we'll do is, thank you Rob, thank you very much for all the work that your department does. Okay, um, you know, uh, what we'll do is, thank you, Rob. Thank you very much for all the work that your department does. Thank you for presenting today. And um, we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Uh, the thought is, and I'll bring this up to the board thinking, uh, we'll finish up with air quality here. And uh, for today, we still have, I think, five more departments or divisions that we need to do budget units and um probably going to take a lot longer than uh than just an hour. So um, looking at probably three or four hours tomorrow. Um, so we schedule it for two days. Uh, we'll start again at nine AM, but would like to bring up air quality. We'll end with air quality. Um, we'll finalize with that budget and then we'll start again tomorrow morning at uh nine AM. So, uh, go ahead.
So we have air quality on the schedule um as a courtesy, but as your board knows, you did approve their uh budget during a regular board meeting recently because there's a special state law that applies to the timeliness of their budget. Nonetheless, Doug has been here with us today and is available to answer any additional questions your board might have about his budgets, but but you did already look at them in a separate agenda item in a regular board meeting.
Well, thank you for being here and available, Doug. I appreciate it. I know, as Carol said, we already have approved the budget because of timing, but um I don't, I I don't so much have questions on the budget, but uh I I just want to thank you for all the information uh that you've been putting out on the air quality in Lake County during the LNU complex fire and the other fires that are affecting us. Um, or just a comment of saying, uh, thank you for getting that information out to the public because I know it's very, uh, folks were were looking at that or calling and asking questions every day. So thank you very much on that.
Great. Well, thank you. Just real quick, uh, we do actually need to um formalize the adopting the budget. The
Oh, okay.
we had was uh, you know, the draft budget hearing and we we actually couldn't, you know, do the finalize. So I just wanted to make sure that you, we've already adopted the final, the draft, but we're good with the final and there's been no changes. So everything's good and I think we'll be fine when you do the the final tomorrow. So, so thank you.
No, we're gonna be able to finish you up today as as far as we can. We'll we'll end up with you today. So um Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much. Uh, while while we have you here, um, I I have a question. I believe in uh my original orientation with Supervisor Crandall uh, that you mentioned that you were working on your own energy uh project, that that is uh aside from what our Public Services is working on. Is that correct? And if that is correct, are you still working on that or what's the status?
That's still uh in our capital uh request to do solar for our building, but you know, we've been due to a number of reasons, it's uh, it keeps getting delayed. We, you know, we're hoping that the Public Services project will uh will move forward as well. We can kind of get a bulk discount at the same time. Um, but we've had a few building repairs that had priority over, you know, that had to be dealt with before we can do the uh solar project. So so we're dealing with a couple of those things first, then the solar project is is still on the books as moving forward.
Okay. I I think the overlap might actually work out better in the long run uh rather than doing it all separately. So I appreciate the update. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, any more questions for uh Doug Garrett, our um air quality director at this point from the board? Okay, we'll go ahead. Uh, Carol, did you have a comment?
Uh, just that when you're ready, you you would go ahead and do a motion for these budget units, like you have all day long.
Yeah, I'm gonna take it to public comment right now. So uh, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the two budget items? Or budget units uh that were presented? We did have this earlier at a board meeting uh with preliminary budgets and now this is final. Jake, can you open the room?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom room. All right, I've sent out a unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and close, close the room and we'll bring you back to the board for action on these two budget units.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve budget units eighty-seven ninety-eight and eighty-seven ninety-nine.
Second. Motion in the second. Johanna, would you please do the roll call?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Um, Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I think before we uh, thank you very much, Doug. Thank you. Uh, motion passed, so we move forward. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and wrap up today's meeting. Uh, I want to appreciate, you know, thank all the department heads, admin, everybody. What I'd like to do, Stephen, if we could just read out the the names of what we're gonna start with tomorrow, when we have five divisions, if we could do that and just uh, go from there. Carol, go ahead. Of course, Stephen.
Um, I want to check in with our technical support staff because I, since we are carrying over, I believe there will be a new and different Zoom link for tomorrow. Jake, can you confirm that? And if so, uh, we'll push that out to the community as well with hope that a lot of the public will continue to be interested tomorrow. Jake, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, um, I think we'd have, we should do a new one. Um, I'm trying to think if I could just repeat this one, but I don't know.
It's on the agenda as a different number.
Uh, yeah, we do have a separate one already established out there. That is right.
Okay, so then if the public already has that, we should be good. I just want to be sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's right. We did make one in uh preparation for uh the rollover.
Okay, thank you very much. So Stephen, go ahead.
Okay, so first thing in the morning, tomorrow morning, we'll start with the Sheriff Coroner, Coroner, OES Director, Sheriff's Budgets. And then Social Services, Crystal Markatan. And then um, Public Health, Special Districts, and then Administration HR. And that should be the rest of the the hearings.
Okay, uh, and we will start uh at nine AM tomorrow. So I want to thank all department heads, admin, everyone who put this together. I know we're about halfway. Well, say we're sixty percent completed and we'll get this done tomorrow. So I want to thank everybody for their hard work, their patience and working through with us today. So I will see, we'll go ahead and uh adjourn this meeting and we'll start again tomorrow at nine AM.
We appreciate this day with you, Board. It's been a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.